Portcypney Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of December the 5th, 2023. Introduction: Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December the 21st, 2022, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December the 28th, 2023. Would you please join me and Councilman Frank Neglia for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Madden, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Council President, Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Township Attorney Michael Labor, and Municipal Clerk Colette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings: December the 19th, 2023 at 7:00 PM will be our regular meeting; January the 2nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM will be our reorganization, and then our agenda meeting following. Mayor Barbario?
Sure. (Inaudible)
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 No.
No.
Should be on.
(Inaudible)
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 All right, Township of Portcypney Troy Hills proclamation: Whereas Mike Hatler opened Building Shop, excuse me, the Bedding Shop, a family-owned mattress and bedroom furniture store located on Route 46 of Portcypney on October 22nd, 1998; and whereas the success rate of small businesses remaining open for over thirty years is only 5%; and whereas by focus on quality products and superb customer service, Mike Hatler and his staff have served over thirty-five thousand customers, which includes three generations of family members; and whereas, to commemorate its anniversary in October, Bedding Shop traditionally holds a yearly food drive to benefit the community food bank of New Jersey, and has collected in total over two thousand pounds of food. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbaro, the mayor of the Township of Portcypney Troy Hills, do hereby proclaim December 5th, 2023 as Bedding Shop Day in Portcypney, as it celebrates its thirty-fifth year of business, and I commend owner Mike Hatler on his commitment to the community and his customers, and I wish him many more years of success. Congratulations.
(Applause)
(Inaudible)
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 Development Advisor Committee, we congratulate Bedding Shop. Bedding Shop, a family-operated store specializing in mattresses and bedroom furniture located on Route 46, is celebrating its thirty-fifth anniversary. Since its establishment by owner Mike Hatler on October 22nd, 1988, Bedding Shop has been a staple in Portcypney, faithfully serving the local community and neighboring areas. This milestone is particularly significant considering that only 5% of small businesses surpassed the thirty-year mark. Over the years, Bedding Shop has served more than thirty-five thousand customers, spanning three generations of families. The store's longevity and success can be attributed to its unwavering commitment to offering quality products and exceptional customer service. Date of Tuesday, December 5th, 2023.
(Applause)
Okay, Council President, I have a few items here. So, everybody knows my glasses broke, so I'm wearing glasses that are still difficult to read from. But thank you to all our great employees and to all who attended our annual Christmas tree lighting on Saturday. The choir was great, that's the Portcypney High School Choir, and we appreciate Santa taking time out of his very busy schedule to be here. We hope to see you at the Lake Hiawatha Winter Festival Friday from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the gazebo in Chief Hiawatha Park. Today, I had a great time at the senior holiday party at the Hanover Manor, and I'm looking forward to the Portcypney Senior Center Holiday Party. Join us on Friday, December 8th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at 1130 Noel Road, Lake Hiawatha, New Jersey. It's a celebration you won't want to miss. Happy Hanukkah! The festival lights last for eight days and eight nights, beginning the evening of December 7th and ending the evening of December 15th. It's a time of both celebration and reflection on the miracle of Hanukkah. Please join us for a menorah lighting event at Town Hall, the corner of Route 46 of Portcypney Boulevard, on December 13th at 7:00 PM. Last week, my BA, engineer, traffic division officers, and I met with the members of the Rainbow Lays Community, and I thanked them for their time. It was a great meeting, and we were putting our heads together on a timeline for realistic traffic improvements for the residents. I would like to congratulate the five new police officers who graduated from the academy in keeping with my commitment to public safety and ensuring that we get packed to the necessary manpower levels after the last administration decimated the numbers. We are getting more officers on the streets. With that, over the weekend, patrol responded to multiple smash-and-grab burglaries of motor vehicles at various hotels and residences. Our detectives have been investigating those crimes and have made arrests. Unfortunately, these types of smash-and-grab burglies have become very common in New Jersey, and similar incidents have occurred in other nearby jurisdictions in Morris County. There are crimes of opportunity when valuables are seen in vehicles. While this investigation is ongoing, we ask residents to please be diligent in taking all of their valuables, specifically purses, wallets, laptops, and key fobs, out of the vehicles at all times. We're all in this together. Please remain vigilant and report any suspicious behavior, persons, and vehicles to the Portcypney Police Department immediately. 911 for emergencies and 973263 for non-emergencies. Just give me one minute, I just need to take a drink. I want to, um... Council President, I do want to respond to the statement that was put out by the Board of Education on November 30th, publication about long-term tax abatements known as pilots. And reading this article was particularly disturbing because it wasn't factual. So I'm going to start with number one. I start with the title, "Admissible: New Residential Development Without Taxes Means Schools and Home Values Suffer." This title is both irresponsible and incorrect. In every pilot arrangement, land taxes are still paid, and the school board still gets its portion of the land tax. The statement "without taxes" is wrong, and the school board knows it. The statement that "home values suffer" is made without any basis of support whatsoever, and therefore either incorrect or highly irresponsible. Of the thirty-nine municipalities in Morris County, at least twenty-five have entered into pilot agreements. Monville, Town of Booten, Hanover Township, Morris Plains, Temple, all towns that have great schools, high home values, and share borders with Portcypney have all entered into pilot agreements on residential projects. Why do these mayors and councils approve residential pilots? Are pilots screwed in other towns but not for Portcypney? None of those towns have experienced a political smear campaign of misleading and false information from their boards of education. And in fact, I have called up several of the mayors in other towns with regards to the pilot programs. I called with my business administrator, and they basically said, "If you don't want them, we're going to take them." And I'm going to get to that later on, and I'm going to have our experts speak about that. Number two: Each student costs approximately $21,800 to educate, with the message being that such is a cost per student from new residential development is also incorrect and misleading statement. The township financial advisor, who is here tonight, will address that conceptual comment shortly. The statement that pilots bring more students, which needs more funding, is wrong as it relates to Two and Three Campus Financial Agreement that is up tonight. These developments have already been approved by my predecessor as part of Portcypney's affordable housing settlement. In fact, as I'm sure will be explained by the applicant's attorney, in this instance, a pilot will mean three schoolchildren in the area of that town, and it will be explained tonight with regards to that upside. The Board of Education also fails to point out that it receives 100% of its funding once it's approved, approves its budget, whether there are pilots or not. The not-so-substantial insinuation made by the BOE that pilots hurt our schools by cutting funding for our schools is just plain wrong. The fact is that pilots do not impact the quality of our schools or the quality of our children's education, not one bit. Any assertion to the contrary is without merit and simply wrong, and that will also be discussed tonight by our financial advisor. So why would the Board of Education in Portcypney engage in a public political campaign against matters that are wholly within the purview of municipal government, especially when such matters do not affect the BOE funding or quality of our children's education at all? The answer is politics. I'm not going to get into that tonight because I don't want to make this political. I will deal with it in the political realm in my committee meetings when I have them. I do want to say this about pilots: As a general matter, pilots are a financial tool that the legislators have given towns to redevelop blighted property. They are not the answer to all of our problems. Pilots can and should be considered for commercial property. For residential, I'm generally against pilots. However, when a pilot can produce some other community benefit, it should be considered for residential. This is what twenty-five to thirty-nine towns in Morris County have done. It worked well for them and can work well for Portcypney. Now let's face it, we are in competition now with our neighboring municipalities, and I'll get to that in a moment. As for the school board, I will always meet with them to discuss issues of concern. We have all been elected by the people to do the people's business. Okay, excuse me, I lost my sense. And I know this: As mayor, I represent all the people of Portcypney, Republican, Democrat, and otherwise. I represent both political friend or foe. As such, whether you are after me politically or not, I will work with you for the betterment of Portcypney. These decisions are not political decisions, they are decisions that are made for what's best for today and the future. As your mayor, I will make the tough decisions that need to be made. I will say this, and if and when you discuss town budgets with me, check your political hat at the door and focus on what's only good for Portcypney. Because if you lie about me, I will not be baffled to tell the truth about you. So thank you. But before we go on to anything else, these numbers here I'm giving you are factual numbers. Okay, so I'm sure you saw a lot of the misleading stuff that's on Facebook and some of the comments that are made of some members in the public that I see here tonight, that if they do come up, I will confront them with regards to the pilot program. And with regards to our police department as well, because we have one fine police department, and when people want to bash the police department, have an issue with that, and I'll deal with that. Our vacancy rate right now is 30%. That's our vacancy rate, commercial vacancy rate. It's going to go up, we know that for a fact. Everybody in this council knows that for a fact. We've had to refund $1.1 million in tax appeals. That's a lot of money. Now I'm going to give you some more figures going forward, and these numbers are astronomical. So if you think the economy is good, because supposedly we had some real estate experts that were here last week, who, I don't know them all that well, but they haven't brought one ounce of business to Portcypney. If they're such expert, Portcypney being the place that it is, that's connected to all the highways, you'd think they would bring in business to us, but they're not bringing any. We're getting it ourselves, and we're working hard to get it. So I'm going to start with, we had to refund $1,100,000 in tax appeals last year. We have approximately forty tax appeals pending, from what I understand, that still have to go through the court. Now CoStar today is a, I guess it's a publication for realtors, for commercial properties, and more office building, this just came out recently, more office building landlords are giving properties back to their lenders. High refinancing costs spurs owners to walk away. Well, that's what's happening here in Portcypney, and this is why we are looking for pilot programs, why we're doing pilot programs, because the interest rates are very high. We're not going to get any companies here if an interest rate's at 10%. When I was mayor in 2010 to 17, the interest rates for loans, construction loans, I think were 2%. So of course you weren't going to do a pilot then, but pilots now are necessary to bring the revenue in. When I get to the one number of assessments, you're going to understand a little bit better. So, that being said, our ratable history from '21 to '24, you know what we lost in ratables from '21 to '24? $124 million in ratables we lost. So when I got to hear that these pilots are evil and then this and that, and no, they're not, right now they're not, that means we lost. Now, how the formula works, if you lost $124 million, we have our financial expert here today, if you lost $124 million in ratables, you times that by the rate, and that rate is 3%, that means we lost $3,847,000 in revenue, just from lower assessments. Which means $2,423,000 of that is a portion of the school, which is 63%. The town eats that up. The town pays, the town is the one that absorbs that loss, not the schools. The schools don't absorb it whatsoever. I'm willing to sit with the school, but I had a really good meeting with them on Friday, a very good meeting with them on Friday, and I pretty much said in that meeting, "We're going to keep the politics out of it." Because if we don't, I'm just, I am, I'm a fighter, I'm not going to lie to you. I am. I want politics out of this, but politics has gotten into it, and it got through it in a bad way. We're up here, all of us, doing what's right for the residents of Portcypney, but we can't continue to sustain losses like this, $124 million in losses of assessment. And it's going to continue to decline unless we reverse it somehow. You're going to hear about the projects we have for tonight, you have Palmeroy, 249 Palmeroy Road, you have Two and Three Campus, and you'll have a better understanding when it's explained tonight, why we're going to go for it with this. So, just so you know also, you keep hearing overdevelopment, this is overdevelopment. No, these properties are already developed. They were already developed from the 80s, 90s. This is what we're doing, is we are now repurposing those office spaces. That's what's happening in town. So these, so I don't know if you've been on that Route 202 corridor and they're knocking buildings down? You know what they're knocking buildings down? Because now all they have to pay is a land tax. That's why they're knocking them down. The land tax is a lot less than the structural tax and the whole thing together. But you know what also, what they're getting ready for? That if we don't start doing things and working with them, they're getting ready for round four of affordable housing. That's what they're getting ready for. How do I know that? They pretty much told me that. So, you know, decisions have to be made, we need to bring revenues in, we're going to generate revenue with these projects, and that will be discussed tonight, how we're going to do it and how it's going to be done with the financial agreements. And Council President, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Township Council?
Yeah, I would just like to respond to what the mayor had said, and I too agree with him that it's necessary to keep the politics out of this entire process, and that's where I've kept it, focused strictly on the policy and what the impacts are on the town. The points made about the Board of Education, I see some Board of Ed members here tonight, I'm sure they will respond, but in the time since our last council meeting, I wanted to do some research myself beyond what I've already done. And for starters, this, you know, notion that these properties will be paying taxes to the school, well, I'm going to be really curious to hear that when I see that all of these pilot agreements have land tax credits that essentially zero out the land tax and school contributions that these projects will be making. Secondly, in all of these financial agreements, there's no language in there for the Board of Education. So once these agreements are voted on tonight, which unfortunately I anticipate they will, the Board of Ed is going to be completely shut out, which is why in their press release, their language was strong and accurate. And I think the concerns are important to be raised about what the number of schoolchildren that will come into our school districts are. The nearest comparable for an Avalon Bay is the Avalon in Booten. And I did some research, that's a 350-unit building, and that has 36 school-aged children, but what's important noting is there's zero affordable units in that building, whereas we have an affordable component in ours, so one can only speculate how much higher the number of school-aged children will be in those units. Additionally, I think it's really important to put into perspective who the recipients of these pilots are. It was made that this is, you know, it's almost like it's small business owners who are struggling by their boot heels to keep their properties. The reality is that these are multi-billion-dollar out-of-town developers, and I'll be specific. 249 Palmeroy is being taken over by Advanced Realty, and they are getting a pilot. They have a portfolio of 20, and this is from their website, they have a portfolio of 20 million square feet, 3,300 apartment units, and 8 million square feet of industrial. That doesn't sound like somebody who has a financial hardship that can't afford an increase in interest rates and construction costs. And then additionally, with more research that I did, if we look at how these buildings are being advertised today, that these properties are blighted areas, I want to dispel with that, there is no blighted areas in Portcypney. It was mentioned before, why do people come to Portcypney? They come here because of location, location, locations. That's what we have that other towns don't have, that's worth paying a premium for. But I'll leave you on this. Seven Campus Drive, and this is the building notes on their website, and you can tell me if this is a blighted area. Seven Campus Drive is one of 18 Class A office properties located at MacCallie Business Campus, considered one of New Jersey's top corporate addresses. MacCallie Business Campus offers an award-winning office environment situated on a beautiful 600-acre site in Morris County, home to numerous Fortune 500 companies. Tenants take advantage of a host of campus amenities, including hotels, restaurants, banking, and a childcare center, as well as nearby shopping, restaurants, and business services. Located directly off I-287, the campus is also conveniently near a vast network of major highways and just 45 minutes from Manhattan. So what I'll close with is, I think it is important to have a debate that's based on facts, that's not based on threats, and I hope that's what everybody hears from our financial expert tonight. Thank you.
If I may just add, if any of you out there have driven near these locations, it's supposed to be this high, you know, high-desired area, go in there and drive around, you'll see a lot of the office buildings are empty. There's a lot of space that's empty, and it's been empty for years. So for such a high-desired area, the people aren't coming. They're not coming. And Two and Three, like it's been stated before, have already been designated as part of the affordable housing plan for the town. So I understand what you're saying, but these businesses are just not coming to that location because there's been plenty of office space that's been vacant in there for years, and no one's coming.
Anyone else on the council have any thing to say? Township Attorney, please?
Yes, Council President, just one update on the Glenmont development, the roads in there. We had some residents that were concerned about those. I did reach out again to the attorney for the developer, he said he still hasn't heard back from his client, but he's going to follow up. I also spoke to the attorney for the homeowners association, because they're their roads, and kept them apprised of what we're doing. So as soon as we have a date, you know, I'll announce it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Business Administrator, Mr. Cryon?
Thank you, Council President. I just quickly, just wanted to point out an item that's on the agenda for resolution... Mayor had mentioned earlier, authorizing the appointment of six new police officers, oh, five, sorry, six here. It's, uh, five of our residents graduated this past week, and it's great news that we're being able to beef up the police force. And, yeah, six. So we are very excited about that. Also wanted to talk about one of the meetings that we had this week. A lot of talk about these pilots, and it's a back and forth, and some of it's, you know, some of the information is correct and some isn't, and it's hard for members of the public to understand a lot of this stuff. But we had a meeting with one of the rating agencies this week, S&amp;P. So what they do is, they're like Moody's, what they do is, they rate our product, our finances. And when we go out to market for multimillion-dollar bonds, it determines what, you know, who buys it and what rate we get. Vacancy rate came up a lot. Our location and our, how we're dealing with the work-from-home era was asked, you know, there was at least four or five questions related to that. So as you're talking about this, or thinking about this, or judging the people up here as they decide on important items like this, please remember that there are unintended consequences to all of these actions. Also wanted to thank two particular employees, our purchasing agent, Mike Hardy, and Detective Robert Lenahan. Both of them retired in the past week after over 30 years of service to Portcypney, and they are appreciated, and they earned their retirement, and I hope they get the opportunity to enjoy it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Madden, Township Clerk?
Only one item on page four of the agenda, Council President, item number 10, ordinance number 202326. When we get there, I will be asking the council for a motion to carry until December 19th. We will not be voting on that tonight. That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Township Officers, committee reports?
Nothing at this time.
I have one. The Economic Development Committee will be presenting a plaque to Cerbo Lumber. Cerbo Lumber is celebrating 75 years in business in Portcypney, and we will be giving a plaque to Kathy Cerbo at 12 o'clock noon tomorrow. The next meeting of the Economic Development Committee is on Wednesday, December the 6th, at 6:30 PM, Saks Accounting, 389 Interpace Parkway. The public is invited. You must RSVP, please, with Chairman Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. There is no correspondence. There is no bids taken. Quotations are to be taken. I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public session, please.
Make it second?
Motion is made by Mr. DePiro, second by Mr. Musella.
Musella. So motion made by Mr. DePiro, second by Mr. Musella, roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Okay, so the floor is open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on any matter. We ask that you please sign in before you speak, and once you sign in, okay, I'll provide the sign-in sheet. the sign-in sheet for you. But you can go ahead and speak, you have five minutes to speak. Once you're done speaking and asking the questions, we ask that you please take a seat, and the council will go ahead, the council or the administration will address you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Michelle Chappell. I speak to you today as a 22-year resident of Parsippany. At the November 21st meeting I attended in this room, the council shared information about the intended pilot programs, which include a residential and fitness center, and then voted to approve it. Tonight, we are hearing about the financial plans associated with that pilot program. When the question was asked during the meeting on the 21st as to why the financial details were not made available to the public before the pilot programs were approved, the response from the council was, that is not how this process works. I've worked in finance for over 30 years, where I have seen billions in dollars of mergers and acquisitions, building projects, and an array of other projects. During the almost 34 years of my adult life, I've bought cars, a home, completed numerous home improvements, as well as other costly projects. In every instance, no company or individual would proceed with finalizing a contract without the financial terms being clearly defined upfront. And rarely would they agree to financial changes unless it was in the provider's favor. What is different about this pilot program? Please explain to us. What is the sequence of steps through which a pilot program plan and finances are developed, reviewed, and finalized? And please advise at what point in that sequence key stakeholders, like the police and the fire departments, water utility, and the Board of Education, are involved to provide their input so their considerations can be taken into account? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Rich.
Yeah.
Why wait till all the questions are asked?
Yeah, that's what I would do, wait till all the questions are asked.
So, Rich Wyner, I'm at Mike Waverly's office. I'm going to answer all the questions that are addressed to the council once all the questions are asked. I got those things.
I apologize. Good evening, Mayor Barbario and Township Council. First of all, I have a question.
Excuse me, maybe have your name, please.
Oh, yes, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Debbie Nemirovic. Do you want me to spell that?
No, Ms. Nemirovic, after you're finished, if you could just sign in, please.
Thank you. The question is, I would like to know, John Iglesino is back in the picture when you promised us all, when you ran, that he would not be involved in your administration. I read that John Iglesino, excuse me for not pronouncing his name correctly, is representing all the developers receiving the pilots. I watched the last council meeting, where he introduced himself as the attorney for every developer. So if you could please explain why this is the case? Didn't John make enough off of the backs of the Parsippany taxpayers with his lawsuits against Mr. Paul Karifis, excuse me, for not pronouncing your last name right, rather, that you supported? I thought you would have learned that Mr. John is the reason you lost your mayorship in 2017 to back then, Mr. Surianno. But you didn't. The public is on to you, that you are either, our mayor now, that you are either controlled by him or too blinded by the potential self-benefit you may receive from these developers. I want to thank the town council here again for letting me speak, to use my freedom of speech, and wish you all a happy holiday season.
Thank you.
Council President, can I respond?
Please do.
Can you please sign, can we have you sign in?
I'm going, I'm going to respond. I'm going to respond. No, I get to respond, but my freedom of speech. With, with, with.
Settle down. Hey, come on, let's keep this orderly. Stop it. Hey, please, please control yourself.
She's spoken out.
You're an adult.
She actually asked me a question. She pointed at me, and I'm going, thank you, Deborah, you did. She asked me a question. You can get as mad as you want, because I'm going to answer the question. You have to speak to the developers, the developers that hired John Iglesino. That's who you need to speak to, number one. I always find it funny that when you can't talk about the issue, people attack. They attack me, they'll attack a council member, or they'll attack because they're not talking about the issue. So I guess if the developers here today that's going to do this project, you got to ask them why they hired John Iglesino. That's pretty what it comes down to. Okay, that's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. All good.
Madam President? My name is Tim Barrios, 24 Farmstead Drive, Parsippany. On December 2nd, 2023, I was on the Facebook Live with Councilman Musella, discussing the pilot programs and the impact on schools. As someone who was involved in the Board of, the Parsippany Board of Education, I am passionate about the students in this town and the impact these pilots will have on the schools. This is something I wish more members on this council would share. In the Facebook Live, I stated that I considered the mayor a friend. And although I disagree with these pilots, my disagreement is not personal. I also said that I voted for most members on this council, which is true. And I can remember not too long ago, walking the streets on behalf of James R. Barberio, something I was proud to do. Well, on December 4th, 2023, Mayor James R. Barberio went live on air on Bill Spadia's show at the 8:00 AM hour to discuss his annoyance with the pushback of his proposed pilots by Councilman Musella and some current and elected Board of Education members. At the three-minute and 10-second mark of that on-air live interview, it was to my dismay that Mayor Barbario, the mayor of Parsippany, New Jersey, the town that I have called home for over 30 years, the town that I have volunteered my time in, and the town where I have worked to get him elected, threatened me and several others on live radio, saying that he will deal with them politically. I am going to play that segment, it's about 47 seconds.
There really isn't show and tell here, is there?
Yeah, there is.
We do this. So it's not like, they're not a taxpayer just because you got all this everything. It's not like, they're a taxpayer because they budget, has to be a hundred percent paid. Yeah, so, yeah, they're a taxpayer, and it's true, they're a Board of Education, and they're a volunteer, and they're very, very, many, many, many members, and they don't involve in politics, I mean, if I sit in there because, um, true, like, Parsippany Republicans, you know, they're not voting to become a taxpayer, and it seems to be a danger, and I don't think they're a politician, and trying to keep politics out. That wasn't too clear, you can actually go to the 101.5 site to get that.
I am requesting you to publicly explain that statement, Mr. Mayor. How will you deal with us? What did you mean? Do I need to get my affairs in order? Just because I do not agree with you, you are threatening a taxpayer and citizen and a volunteer in this town? Mr. Mayor, I am not one of your devotees who refuse to question things you say and do. You are talking about our tax dollars, our livelihoods, and our schools. So yes, I will question what you are doing, because that is my right as taxpayer. Over the past years, I have worked my tail off to get you elected to the council and the mayor's office, as well as Councilman Grignani, Karifi, Neglia, and DePiero. So because I, as a taxpayer, disagree about serious topics like pilots, and how it's affecting the school districts, which is the Board of Education's responsibility? Instead of having a discussion, or perhaps listening to what all these people are telling you.
30 seconds.
You go on Bill Spadia's show and threaten us. This is not being a leader, and I will not be threatened publicly and made to feel unsafe by the mayor of my town.
Okay, Council President, I'd like to respond. I'm definitely going to respond. First of all, first of all, I didn't, I didn't.
Mr. Barrios, whip it, Mr. Barrios.
What I basically, what I basically was saying is that it's political, and you know that, Tim. You know it very well, it's political, and it's going to continue to be political. Just go look at the Parsippany Republican Committee, and how that race turned out. And, and that's what I meant by it. Just so you know, I'm going to be on Bill Spadia again. So if you want to listen, I'll give you the time.
Here, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Espajo, I live at 80 Brooklon Drive. I would like to know why Attorney John Iglesino is being allowed to represent developers to this council, pushing for the pilot program, while at the same time, his firm is under a contract with the town of Parsippany? His firm does work on Oprah requests and tax appeals for our town. It is undoubtedly a conflict when someone requests Oprah information about these projects, and the attorney and law firm representing the developers may be the one reviewing these requests and determining when and how much of the information is released. Also, it does not seem ethical that someone working for the town, who is essentially your colleague, is here in front of you, asking you to vote for something that benefits him in a, in a personal, financial way. John Iglesino has already billed the town nearly $60,000 this fiscal year for Oprah and tax appeal work. How can he be representing the town at the same time he's representing the developers against the town presenting in front of you today? He is literally billing Parsippany to work on tax issues, the ones you were talking about, and advising and working on developers, with developers, on ways to pay less taxes to Parsippany. And we, the taxpayers, are footing his bill. This is similar to having the same attorney as both the prosecutor and offender. What really disappoints me is that it is no secret to any of you sitting up here right now. In fact, this council and mayor voted for his contract. Yet, with this knowledge of him representing both sides, here he is, with nothing being done about it. Loving Parsippany, as we often hear being said in this room, does not mean loving your buddies that you grew up with and giving them handouts. It means loving the town and doing what is best for its citizens. I ask that council and the township attorney either terminate his contract with the town, or exclude him from testifying or representing clients in front of the same chamber that he is billing us taxpayers to work for.
Well, I'm sure this won't be popular, but, I mean, he serves as special counsel, there's no question that they review Oprah requests, and they're permitted to do that. And as, and as to the develop, he's a special counsel, there's a difference between township attorney being a special counsel, and.
So you don't see a conflict?
There's no, there's no back and forth. And, and developers are free to hire whoever they think is the best person to do the job for them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Waverly. Next, please.
There's no corruption, don't use that word. There's none. You said that years ago.
Hi, my name is Jack Ray. I am a member of the Parsippany Board of Education. My comments here are not on behalf of the Board of Education, but are solely in my capacity as a private citizen. Before I start, I want to acknowledge the Parsippany Police Department. My experience with them has been very, is that they are very professional and very well-trained. That is also due to sound political leadership, as far as the police department goes. Okay, however, regarding my comments, whenever I come across a good maxim or a piece of wisdom, I like to share it when appropriate. Two years ago, when I ran for the school board the first time, a wise person said, always put the schoolchildren in Parsippany first. That was always my intent, and once elected, I served with that thought at the forefront. The person who shared that wisdom with me was Frank Neglia. And while his role has changed since then, it still holds true, and I wonder if he shared that point of view with the mayor and the town council. If he had, perhaps you might be pursuing the course, you might not be pursuing the course that the town, that has the town so upset. And let's be clear, the town is not happy. It is especially important now to have the welfare of children at the forefront. We are closing in at four years from the initial COVID lockdowns that began, and only a year ago, we went back to normal. The combination of lockdowns, lack of social contact, and especially insidious mask mandates had a traumatic impact on the learning process for the children of Parsippany. They don't need another challenge. If the, one indicator of this impact is the drastic decrease in reading and math proficiency across all grades. And there's no question, there's been an emotional impact as well. We see numerous examples of students across the country behaving in ways they never would The article published by the Board of Education two years ago, and cited by Tim Barrios at the last town council meeting, points out that the New Jersey Department of Education does not allow school districts to build a new school or expand a school building based on an anticipated increased student enrollment. That means there could be chronic overcrowding in schools for a minimum of two to three years. Last week at the town council meeting, the term misinformation was used to describe a flyer put out to the public. Unfortunately, that is a word that is used to cycle discussion. A far more appropriate way to describe the flyer was, there were points that were incorrect or that are disagreed with, especially since not much information at that point on the pilots had been provided. Free speech is a vital reason for the success of this nation. Free speech welcomes alternative viewpoints in an effort to get to the truth. The word misinformation is a dismissive word elected officials should avoid, as it impairs free speech. I'd like to point out that Parsippany is blessed with one of the most centrally-located highway systems in the country, far more so than the neighboring towns mentioned earlier. When we moved back to New Jersey from Long Island, and I'd take my wife to dinner, she'd ask, how far is it to the restaurant? And I joked with her, my response would be, it's 10 minutes, everything is 10 minutes away, because we have such a centrally-located highway system. You could go to dinner, you could go any, you could go to Montclair, to Bedminster, to, to Mendham, and be, and be there in 20 minutes, because of our highway system. We have 80, 287, Route 10, 280, Route 24, Route 78. You could be in Pennsylvania in less than an hour, or New York City in 30 minutes. I mean, we shouldn't have to say this, but apparently, it doesn't seem to be part of the discussion. The point is, accessibility is a very attractive quality for business in Parsippany. We shouldn't be negotiating with developers from a position of weakness. Back in 1979, I came home from college for Christmas break, and I noticed massive construction going on over in the farmland at the corner of Route 202 and Route 10, where sip and sup used to be. Some of us might remember that place. Obviously, companies recognized back then how attractive Parsippany was at, as a location. And somebody noted the last meeting how high interest rates in the last two years diminished the town's attractiveness. Despite the rise in interest rates, my house is valued significantly higher than when I bought it in 2016, despite mortgage rates more than doubling since then.
30 seconds, sir.
And back in 1979, mortgage rates were 13%. Yet, there's a huge development happening here. It's obvious that citizens here feel ignored by those they've elected. While there are times decisions are made by officials with more knowledge, it's worth listening to the public, because a wealth of knowledge is already there. The mayor painted a picture of evident economic doom, but I'm far more optimistic. Sure, there will be some repurposing, but that is an investment that developers can make. Parsippany will remain short after now, for decades to come.
Mr. Ray, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Di Giovanni, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My intention tonight is to make everyone aware of some important issues again, without going into a lot of detail at this time. I am stating my points again for the town meeting plus. Note to the pilot project, giving any tax breaks to companies with all the facts and analysis and the studies on the table.
Yet, there's a huge development happening here. It's obvious that citizens here feel ignored by those they've elected. While there are times decisions are made by officials with more knowledge, it's worth listening to the public, as a wealth of knowledge is already there. The mayor painted a picture of evident economic doom, but I'm far more optimistic. Sure, there will be some repurposing, but that is an investment that developers can make.
Mr. Ray, I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you.
Alicia Di Giovanni, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My intention tonight is to make everyone aware of some important issues again without going into a lot of detail at this time. I am stating my points again for the town meeting plus. No to the pilot project, giving any tax breaks to companies with all the facts and analysis and the studies on the table. With so many issues outstanding of Parsippany, should the town add huge projects such as pilots? These tax breaks for big companies usually don't help community pockets. Taxpayers will be absorbing more government, jobs, school expenses, police, town hall workers, roadway maintenance, which will increase our taxes. By the way, weren't we putting our senior housing possibly in this, and that wouldn't affect the school budget? Was this considered as an option? Many options to invest in the growth community without giving a pilot. Why are we kept in the dark with all this and then have to pay for this? I truly feel we ought to wait for a new blood to come in and get a new perspective on all on the same page and strengthen this community economically and fair. Taxpayers don't get a break like pilots. It is capitalism at its best. I think it's wrong that the former town attorney is representing all the developers making millions against off-the-backs of the Parsippany taxpayers. This reeks cronyism. I am going to give you the facts that I best can for perspective. We go back to the little place in the sliver of Parsippany, Rainbow Lakes, with the new Wabon Mountain Lakes off 46. This area is a small fraction of the total township that seems to be selective enforcement, violations of property rights, and more. Let me refer to town meeting, Mr. Mayor, at 11:923, which you stated that we're going to have a meeting. Still hasn't been scheduled, what's going on with that? By the way, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the last town hall meeting, 11:21. It took care of the mosquitoes. I don't know what you meant by that, because that's, nothing really got affected there. This is a lot of unrest in this community. I have sent several emails that I decided not to print and willing to review in person with you, Mr. Mayor, or summoning in town hall. You're not answering emails or the action line, nor most of the town hall members, employers. Few and far between any written response need to hound down for answers. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy if we can meet with a cup of coffee and discuss these concerns. To print them out, you already have this email, and it's a waste of time for me, and I am not a town hall employee. Also, it's quite embarrassing of all the letters I wrote and my emails continually not getting answered. I, I'll be flexible to try to iron these out. Well, Rainbow Lakes meeting you mentioned prior hall, well, again, when? This is a bird's-eye view of what I'm dealing with at Rainbow Lakes. It's alarming and disturbing that this administration that you are is not copasthetic. And you want to give pilots, and this is a sliver of Parsippany that's not addressed? You know, you have to remember who's paying your salaries here. We are, and your pensions. I'm not, I'm not going to go into all the details as far as property rights, taxes, health, uh, health departments, zoning, all these umbrellas that make this an entity is not copasthetic, or we're not talking or giving and delivering information. So I'm very concerned as a taxpayer. If we're not handling a sliver of what's going on Rainbow Lakes, and we're pushing it and dumping, and we're having unrest, how are we going to continue to build any further than we are right now? That's an alarming factor. And I'm just wondering, was this deal already made and it's behind closed doors? It is quite questionable. And I, I, I thank everybody here that's up here and concerned of where we live and make it to be a safe place to live, in an environment that our children will be happy that they are a part of Parsippany, and truly in part, in fairness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just sign in, Mr. Giovanni? Alicia, did you sign? No, it's okay. Yeah, it's a pleasure. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Andy Chaffo. Before I start my little speech, I just want to say that I'm struck by the composition of the room. There's Republicans, there's Democrats, there's Conservatives, there's Progressives, there's capitalists, there's environmentalists, and they're all united in the same cause. They don't like pilots. So recently, there's been much said about the residential developments of Parsippany that were awarded long-term property tax exemptions by the mayor and council members Neglia, Kree, Fede, Piro, and Gignani. The payment-to-lua tax of the pilot program allows cities to exempt developers from property taxes on buildings and improvements. The developer would instead pay a much smaller annual service charge to the city. The purpose of the program was to give cities a tool to encourage development in distressed or blighted areas, initially only intended for cities, and I keep stressing that word. The use of the program has since expanded into the suburbs of New Jersey. It's clear why a developer would want to utilize the program. The big question is why would a town be willing to accept less in property taxes? While improving actual distressed areas would have benefits to any town, there's even greater reason. Under a pilot, the town will collect a smaller amount of funds. However, the mayor and town council will be able to keep a larger share of these funds and end up with greater revenues compared to the typical property tax allocation. The reason for this is that under a pilot program, a town keeps 95% of the annual service charge, with the remaining 5% going to the county. Without the pilot, the typical property tax allocation in a suburban district like Parsippany provides approximately 65% of property taxes to the town's public schools, with the remainder going to the municipality and the county. Mayor Barberio has said that Denville, Dover, Mount Olive, and Montville have used pilots to their advantage. So let's see how things are working out in Montville. Well, Montville is already seeing the effects of overdevelopment put upon by the pilots. And by the way, Avalon Bay and Mill Creek are the two primary developers for Montville, similar to Parsippany. The school district has a proposal for capital improvements to the schools to deal with the influx of school-aged children and the decrease in developer-paid taxes caused by the pilots. To offset the loss of developer-paid tax revenue under the pilot, the Montville School District is proposing, and hold on to your hats, ladies and gentlemen, $70 million referendum. This is to expand and improve schools due to the influx of children and the decrease in tax dollars by the developer. And if you don't believe me, check out the Montville School District website. The public vote scheduled for December 12th, a week from today. If the referendum passes, who will pay for the school improvements? Residential taxpayers, not the developer. Public schools in New Jersey are constitutionally mandated to provide a thorough public education. If the referendum is voted down by the voters, the Montville School District can ask the State Department of Education to intervene and allow the district to raise taxes for school improvements. Who pays? You guessed it again, residential taxpayers, not the developer. In either scenario, residential taxpayers take the hit. And this may happen over and over to all the towns the mayor has spoken about. In Parsippany, there have been no meaningful discussions between the school board and the mayor and the town council. Yes, there was a meeting recently. It was fruitless, and from what I hear, a bit frustrating. Not my number, as published by the New Jersey State Department of Education, it currently costs to educate one child for one year in Parsippany $21,800. So, Mr. Mayor, I would call upon you to enter an agreement with the Parsippany Board of Education and allocate $25,000 per school-aged child per year for every child that's in a pilot development. I think that's only fair. But I would implore you...
Thirty seconds.
Do not, do not let the children be the big losers under your pilot programs, because they will be. Thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Lesz, Jeffrey Drive, Parsippany. There's an old saying that goes something like this, when you find yourself in a hole, stop digging. From my perspective, our mayor is in a very deep hole, and he just refuses...
I disagree with you, Dennis, but I had...
I reserve my time. Would you please advise the mayor to be quiet?
Continue, Mr. Lesz.
Thank you. I'd like to address two issues in my remarks. First of all, the significant crime problem, which hasn't been brought up tonight, that we're experiencing.
Mr. Lesz, if you could, if you could just...
Is that better? Hello? Someone turn it off?
No.
Okay, I reserve my time, Paul. Bear with me. I want to talk about the, the crime problem, the significant crime problem that we're experiencing in Parsippany, and I'll also talk briefly about this pilot program, although I think my friends out in the audience have done a fairly decent job. First, let's talk about crime and safety, subjects I know something about, given my almost 50 years of experience in the fields of law enforcement, threat assessment, corporate security, and crime prevention. At a council meeting on July 25th of this year, our business administrator and the mayor stated that the local media was exaggerating the problem and making Parsippany look like Newark. If you want to check the video, you can do that. Yes, they blamed the media for the perception amongst Parsippany residents that we were experiencing a significant increase in crime. The police chief came in that evening and addressed the council. He suggested all is well, despite the fact that just prior to the meeting, Parsippany experienced multiple residential break-ins and vehicle thefts. On November 2nd of this year, last month, the PPD issued a statement on their social media page suggesting a two-month...
Jim, could you stop? Let him speak.
A two-month downward, downward, downward trend in residential burglaries and vehicle thefts, as if you can actually measure a trend in only two months. Their social media coordinator once again encouraged residents to take advantage of Mayor Barberio's home security assessment, which we all know he had nothing to do, which, by the way, apparently has also become their go-to response to these residential burglaries. They said nothing about their strategy to deal with these ongoing crimes, at least publicly they haven't. Over the course of a five-week period beginning in late October through the month of November, mostly after the announcement of this two-month downward trend, the following incidents occurred, and I'm not including all of them, but an attempted burglary of a residence and a vehicle in Powder Mill, no arrests. Three homes burglarized and two BMWs stolen. There was one arrest of a suspect, but the others were able to escape. A burglary at a home on Patrician Court, in which two males broke into a home occupied by a single female, no arrests. 28 vehicles broken into at three Parsippany hotels, no arrests. Attempted vehicle theft in Glacier Hills, no arrests. Home and vehicle burglaries on Dartford Road, no arrests. Now, I'm sure there's much more, but it's been challenging to try to keep up with all that's been happening. Last week, multiple vehicles had their catalytic converters stolen on New Road. And just last week, excuse me, last week, two vehicles belonging to one of Parsippany's finest citizens, Tom Wall, the owner of Wall Landscaping, were burglarized while his employees were doing work just a few feet away. A BMW with tinted windows was seen pulling up. Two males get out, wearing masks, they rifle through these two trucks and took all of the personal belongings of the hard-working men that worked for Tom Wall, including their credit cards, which were later used in Newark. Now, I should point out as an aside that I've been in touch with Mr. Wall, who I've known for years, and he has yet to hear from the police department despite his multiple... Don't shake your head.
It's not true.
Well, I spoke to Mr. Wall this afternoon. He has not heard from the officers in, in response to his emails, nor has he heard from the mayor, someone he has faithfully supported for years. And just last night, a resident returned to his home in Powder Mill to discover that it had been broken into. I don't have the details as to what was taken, but it was shared on Ring. The videos of those two intruders going into this man's house were chilling. So the two-month, two-month downward trend by the, touted by the PPD has been turned upside down, and yet we have not heard from the chief, or the PPD, or the mayor as to what their strategy might be going forward. They seem to like hiding behind the excuse that we cannot comment on an ongoing investigation, which is code for we don't have any strategy. I have made many suggestions to you, Mr. Mayor, directly and indirectly, and none of those suggestions have been taken, as far as I know. Residents should take note of the fact that these criminals are now routinely breaking into homes while residents are sleeping for the purpose of stealing vehicle keys. And you can bet that they are armed and that at some point, someone is going to get hurt as the mayor continues to dig that hole deeper. Yesterday, on that Bill Spadia show, I listened to it, I was stunned, I was shocked at the things he said. He openly mocked Councilman Musella, saying that he's been in Parsippany for only 20 minutes, as if to suggest that he is a duly-elected representative of the people.
Mr. Lesz, your time is up.
Oh, really? You can stop me now with about 30 seconds left?
He was interrupted.
I was interrupted multiple times. Thank you very much. Jamie stated that, that if he was against pilots...
Mr. Lesz, it was stopped.
So you're actually going to cut me off now?
Please, please, thank you.
There you go. This is the mark.
Mr. Lesz, if you could just sign in, please, sir.
Kenneth Malamud, H. Southwood Drive in Powder Mill. Firstly, I want to apologize for previously shouting out to the council that was incorrect. But from the purpose of those sitting in the gallery, it is frustrating that those of you behind the dais decide what you're going to respond to immediately and decide what will just sit out there unanswered or to be answered sometime in the future. You are indeed correct that this is confusing for the Sigerson tree. I hear the mayor talking about buildings being ripped down to cut down on the taxable basis, but I hear that we are here dealing with Class A office buildings, and I am not sure that I have ever heard of a Class A office building being ripped down. I hear that the need for these pilots is the increased construction costs. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, weren't pilots approved during Mr. Barbiero's first term when the interest rates were low? Now, as to the attorney issue, while it may be technically legal, when I was in practice as an attorney, the standard was the appearance of impropriety, and this certainly has the appearance of impropriety.
You're not, you're not going to like this. They've since changed that standard, but...
Continue, sir.
Okay.
Continue, sir.
I do not know what this council's moral or legal standards are, but I would say this. A proposal introduced two days after the election and being rushed through before the end of the year certainly has the appearance of impropriety, and I would urge you to use that standard in determining what you were doing. And lastly, I heard the mayor say in his presentation, "That's why we are proceeding with this program." I understood the decision to proceed or not to proceed was that of the town council. And unless that decision has already been made, what are we doing here?
Elaine Givalius. I'm going to finish that man's, what is his name?
He didn't sign in, but his name is Dennis Lesz.
Okay, I'm going to finish his statement, statement. Thank you. Madam President, the mayor seems to think I have an angst against him. Notwithstanding the misuse of the word, the fact is I have nothing personal against the mayor at all. We've been friends for years. We've broken bread together, and he's been in my home many times. I just concluded after years of observing his behavior that he is simply incapable of effective leadership. Those who oppose his policies are not enemies and should not be subjected to his childish antics and verbal threats. I have also lost confidence in his judgment and am particularly concerned about why he decided to pursue massive tax breaks for developers connected to his old friend, John Inglisino. We've all heard about the Roman Emperor Nero who fiddled while Rome burned. Not only did Nero play music while his people suffered, but he was an ineffectual leader in a time of crisis. I can't help but draw comparisons to Jamie, who plays the drums in his office while the rest of us are left to deal with the crime wave. I remain open to working with the mayor should he decide to get serious about dealing with this new and evolving crime problem. With respect to his pilot proposals, I strongly encourage this council to reject them, not for political reasons, but because they are just not good for you. Thank you. And I have my own question, and my question is, would any of you have the courage to say no to government welfare for billion-dollar companies and to listen to the will of the people?
No.
Good evening. My name's Mark Philhauer.
Was born in Mount Tabor. I now live, catacory on from the old high school.
They're asking you to talk a little louder.
I'm sorry?
Go closer to the mic, talk louder.
Talk louder and closer to the mic, please.
Yes.
Much better, thank you.
As I've learned more about this project and pilot agreements in general, I found myself asking a number of questions. The Parsippany municipal build and budget may get more revenue from the pilot than from the real estate taxes on the assessed value. Possible. It sounds great, except currently, 25% of the taxes collected go to the municipal budget. 63% go to fund our schools. With this pilot, 95% goes to the municipal budget, 5% to the county, and there's nothing to fund the additional burden that these apartments will place in our schools. At the last meeting, Mayor Barbario said that after the agreement was signed with Avalon Parsippany Two Campus Urban Renewal LLC, then he and the council would negotiate with, not for, the school board about any additional funding. What assurance can the mayor and the council give that the schools will be supported when the enrollments increase? Pilot agreements are meant to encourage development by reducing risk to the developer. Is this land formerly occupied by offices really unlikely to be developed if we don't subsidize one of the most successful real estate investment trusts in the United States? They're number 16 overall. They're number two or three, depending on who you believe about residential trusts. After Avalon Parsipony Two and Three Campus Urban Renewal LLC completes this project, Parsipony will only collect 10% of the gross revenue for the years 1 through 10. Okay. Success isn't guaranteed. There are some unknowns, there's some risk. Going into years 11 through 20, is there still such risk that the payment only increases to 11%? And in the last 10 years, 11.5%? The law says a minimum of 10%. It doesn't set a maximum. Chatham Borough voted for a pilot for a building, 259 apartments on River Road, just short of Summit. The pilot payment was based on gross revenue minus the tax on the land. The original land valuation seems to have been less than $3 million. It was then reassessed at over $14 million, which meant the town would lose a great deal of its payment. The Chatham Council unanimously voted to exempt the developer from its tax obligation. To make up for this loss, they increased every other household's taxes. Are you sure that some surprise like this isn't in store for Parsipony? Some developers structure a master lease with an affiliated entity in order to artificially lower the revenue and overpay expenses for management and maintenance, thus artificially lowering the profits on the pilot and also its payment to the town. Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated of Arlington, Virginia, delivers, quote, "outsized, risk-adjusted returns to shareholders." That's what they're all about. Avalon Parsipony Two and Three Campus Urban Renewal LLC seems to be an affiliate for this national company. Can you be sure that Avalon Bay isn't going to do this? Before you vote yes on these projects, can you assure us that you have asked and answered
30 seconds.
all of our questions? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sam Lopkovsky, 83 North Field Road, Parsipony, New Jersey. During the last two meetings, a lot of residents actually spoke about pilots and have a very strong argument against this project, even today. And, but I have a feeling that Mayor Barbario and others, except probably one council, Musella, already made a decision in favor to developers. These meetings are just a show. Let's ask residents, it only after that mayor can make decisions about the project, because this is financial, and we pay for all this stuff. I know that Mr. Inglesino, sorry if it's like, I'm not right for him to say his name, has his own interest in helping his clients pay less taxes, which is actually nothing wrong. But I'm not sure why our mayor wants to help him to do this. This meeting actually reminds me of what was happened one year ago when PLA was discussed. Year ago, mayor ignores petition which was signed almost like 1,000 residents against PLA. After that, I saw the letter from the union administration, where administration asked union members to send a thank-you letter to Mayor Barbario. What's happened? I don't know why. I read Mr. Inglesino letter on Parsipony Focus. It was really impressed his 32 years' experience as mayor, councilman, township attorney, and other positions. But I'm not sure if Mayor Barbario and John Inglesino are professionals with pilot project. If I'm not right, please provide any success story about pilot project from your own experience. At the end of the last meeting, after 9:00 PM, another client of John Inglesino made a presentation. It was like after 9:00 PM. The company is planning to build a gym and around 250 residential units. I don't know current status of this project, but who knows? It could be additional pilot as well in the future. Okay?
Thank you very much, it's coming up. Next, please.
Hello, John Von Aiken. So, I have a little bit of a novel approach here. I was looking through the published documents that you have on the, on the website. There are two tables shared on the website. Sorry if I keep shaking around the mic. On those tables, the first, the first set of tables is a summary. This is something you all have access to, as well as the public. The other one is a schedule. What we see on the summary page is that under the pilot taxes in the middle section, where it describes the amount of property tax that the municipality will get, it states correctly that the number is $1.017 million. That is also on the, on the schedule. However, when you go down to the full term of the 30 years, those numbers no longer agree. Your documents are inaccurate. Also, in the projected ad valorem taxes, you show that the amount of municipal taxes, let me make sure I've got this right. There seems to be about $122,000 missing, which over the course of 30 years amounts to $5.4 million. So, you have another amount of money missing. And finally, the county portion, which is on there, is identified on the summary as $25,000, but on the schedule as $69,000. This also adds up to a significant deficit. All in total, you have about $7.3 million, which is incorrectly accounted for on these documents. This alone should require you to relook at your numbers and review this program as a whole. Now, it's not too often that I get to stand here and say that I agree with Mr. Barrios, with Mr. Chaffo, and Mr. Rea. But I find myself in exactly that situation today. Because like them, I think that these pilots are causing great concern. Not necessarily just for the tax money that the schools will get, but it's about our taxable base in the future. You're taking money away, and in the case of Sylvan Way, Two and Three Sylvan Way, that's $61 million of taxable base from current year's income, which we won't be able to grab for future taxation in the future. So, as the others have said, that means that we're gonna be paying it out of the residents' pocket, because these properties are already accounted for. The only portion they're gonna pay in increases is based on the land portion of their tax, which, oh, by the way, they get a tax credit for. So, I'll leave it at that. And please review these documents before you make any decisions. They're wrong.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Chaffo. Jamie, I too heard you yesterday morning on the Bill Spadia Show. To my dismay, you personally began an assault on current Republican committee members, as well as Board of Education members and Justin Musella, councilman. I, who unequivocally supported you in numerous elections and called you my friend, am saddened by those actions. Recently, I've seen you threaten librarians in town, council members, Board of Education members, and your own committee members because they don't agree with you. So, I'm going to bypass you and not listen to your bully tactics, and I'm gonna go to the councilmen who have to vote on this, and women. I'm asking Councilman Musella, Naglia, Karifi, DePiro, and Councilwoman Graziani to vote no on this pilot and yes to the children of Parsipony. Councilman Naglia, you of all council members knows the harm your vote will cause to the children of this township. I'm asking you to also stand up and vote no for the children of this town. Thank you.
Carl Journey.
Hey, Carl.
Hi, everyone. James, I've had your banners on my front lawn forever, so we're always good.
Can you hear me?
Okay. I sat in on the last meeting, and I'm glad I did. I'm not an expert like a lot of these people here in who you hire. I'm just using maybe a little country's common sense, as they say. And I was curious, and I would just like to ask some questions. Because, I'll tell you what, it affects everybody. And my kids are out of school, your kids are out of school, Frank, your kids are out of school. They played ball together, they grew up together. I know your kids, you know mine. Anyway, it just seems like the town of Parsipony always comes up on the short end of the deal. And I'm gonna give you an example, and James, I talked to you about it a couple times. I'm not singling you out about it, but that ramp that was built on 80 was supposed to be gone during like your first administration when it was completed. It's still there, they doubled the size. I counted 20 trucks there today. You talk about urban blight? Take a look at 202 Littleton. Just as you're ready to leave Parsipony, get onto 80. Holy crap, well, can't say that, but anyway. And it was supposed to return to its natural state. It wasn't, and like I said, they expanded it. I talked, actually, that's why I came here last week. Mr. Musella contacted me through a friend, said I heard, and they stonewalled him, they stonewalled me at DOT. Time for the big dog, time for you to go get him. And I know you can. But that's a different matter. Mr. Mayor, like I said, and council, we all have kids about the same age. They like it in this town, it's a good town. They're probably gonna settle in this town. Do we really wanna saddle them with a 30-year tax credit? Not to be morbid, but most of us are gonna be dead in 30 years. Let's face it, I'm 68 years old, I ain't making 98. All right? Hopefully, I'll see my grandchildren go to school here, I love Lake Park. And the other thing is, I wrote this out, but I'm jumping. Anyway, if companies weren't going to make money here, even, you know, without the pilot program, they wouldn't be looking here. I mean, pilot isn't guaranteed, correct? They were probably gonna make money here coming without the pilot. This is just giving them more. And, like I said, if they feel that they need to have that pilot program to develop, make it non-transformable, transferable. You want it for 30 years, you stay here for 30 years. It, it's not like a prenup. Oh, I'm gonna bail out, I keep this? No. You stay here, you want it for 30 years, you stay here for 30 years. If you bail before 30 years, you pay your back school taxes, whether it's five years, 10 years, 20 years. And I think everybody would benefit if they really need that pilot. Also, what about the infrastructure for the sewers and everything else? I mean, the office buildings obviously didn't put out as much sewage and waste and water requirements as all these units. Can we handle it? Can our water treatment plan handle it? I mean, you guys are the expert, and we elected you. And believe me, I have faith in you. And I know you guys will do the right thing, but we have to look for our kids' future. Like, there's an old saying, we only borrow the planet from the kids. Basically, we're only borrowing our town from our kids if they wanna settle here. And our grandkids need a good school system. Believe me, I went to a very tough school. I probably had as many fights as I did tests. So, when you have a strong school system, you have strong city. And if I bored you, I'm sorry.
Never bored.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Council.
Excuse me, may we have your name, please?
Richard Suarez, I'm sorry. What is the rush to force this measure through during a lame duck session of the council? Is the administration worried that the new faces on the council may not be as easily persuaded into buying into this project? By far, most of the information that was available on the town website was mostly boilerplate legalese that you can find on any such agreement. Did you know the definition of blighted in the state of New Jersey is "land that is dilapidated, hazardous, or unattractive"? A condition of blight can happen for a number of reasons, such as neglect, faulty construction materials, failure to repair, abandonment of, of the property, et cetera. None of those buildings meet that, that criteria in any way, shape, or form. Just because a, a building is unoccupied does not automatically make it blighted. And that's what's being implied here. Oh, it's unoccupied, so it's blighted. No, it's not. It's unoccupied, it's not rented, but it's not falling down. Why was, why wasn't the person that deemed the properties blighted a licensed appraiser in the state of, of New Jersey? Why wasn't a structural engineer that has no affiliation to the current administration or the developer preferably someone from a different county? Also, was there a traffic impact or environmental study performed? The financials information on the last five subsections of the pilot document were blank. Those sections referred to the financials. The two sections that had dollar amount were hard to understand as far as I was concerned. The developer stated that every dime that is owed to the school board will be paid. That is true, but it won't be paid by his, his clients. It's gonna be paid by the existing homeowners here in town. You know it, I know it, everybody here knows it. Also, we were never told who owns Number Seven Campus Drive. The, the other areas, they, they were forthcoming with, with who owns it. Who, who owns this piece? I was employed in Jersey City for decades. Jersey City had a number of pilot programs. Every day, the people that I worked with would complain about them, saying how their taxes were out of control, while the pilots were making out like fat cats. Come on, this is simple. The president of the Parsipony School Board stated that new students will cost over $21,000. Who's going to make that up? We are. We are. Also, during the meeting on November the 9th, the mayor and council were told that there would be so many units dedicated for handicap or special needs people, which is a good thing. What they didn't mention was how many studio apartments or one-bedroom apartments would be built within this complex? Studios and one-bedroom apartments will not add students to the schoolroom. and you would be getting a nickel on the structure. You're going to be getting a nickel on the dirt that the structure sits on. Anybody who votes for this, shame on you. Shame on you. Also, this is an agreement for 30 years. Like everybody said, we'll be dead and gone. Mayor, you said the taxes will rise if the pilot is not passed. You know what? Yes, you did. They will rise whether it's passed or not.
Mr. Suarez, your time is up, but I'm going to ask-
But I didn't get 30 seconds. I did not get a 30-second heads-up.
Sir.
I gave you 30.
We're giving you extra time to just finish your sentence, please. Thank you.
Are the tax challenges by the present owner going to be more than $2 million per year? Because that's how much it's going to cost to put those kids through school in Parsippany.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too.
Hey, Rich. Rich, you had asked who owns 7 Campus Drive, so I too also did some research from CoStar. For those who don't know, CoStar is the leading provider of commercial real estate information, data, and analytics. It's a great tool for people to be informed about what's going on in commercial real estate. So the owner of 7 Campus Drive is the Birch Group, they're based out of Jersey City, and your pilot is going to a landlord that has 6.5 million square feet of institutional-grade commercial space. And they bought this property in November of 2020 for $12,750,000.
So, Rich, also, with regards to the redevelopment plan, and you said the blight studies, professionals were on it, in front of the planning board, this is one of the redevelopment plans for a blighted study. You said there was no study done, yes, there are studies done. And all this has been heard through the planning board, so you know. So thank you. Thank you. These are licensed planners, professionals in the state of New Jersey. And I've been through those buildings, and some of them are dilapidated inside. Got your own photographer, Nick.
Say again?
You got your own photographer over there.
I'm not hired by you.
I know. Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. The Patch had a recent article on the pilot deal, and they had a 30-page report, Examination of Municipal Tax Abatements. I suggest you read it, and everything that's been said here tonight about the public is true. We have no disclosure, as Councilman Musella brought forward, we have a blank sheet, and it, from the 30-page report, these financial arrangements can create tax inequity. It should say they do create tax inequity in a already unfair tax system. Because to pay more, when the rich pay more, it's not necessarily their fair share, and it's way out of line. The working and middle class in this country are paying for a way of life that does not benefit them in the least. We get a military-industrial complex, we get war as economy rather than education and housing and healthcare. That is a disgrace. It also warns of historical evidence of corruption in the process. Now, I want to tell a little story about what I witnessed when Mr. Inglisino was in the service of this town during the Water View, and a developer took the town to court because he couldn't have his shopping mall. It was voted down unanimously, grassroots movement, years of sticking up for the community in that landscape. They went to court in Morristown. The developer said, if you don't let me have the mall, I'll build affordable housing. At the time, affordable housing was suspended, but the issue was the mall. The judge in Morristown should have dismissed the case then and there as a judicial estoppel. You go to court for one thing, and you present something else. Then Mr. Inglisino had the opportunity to dismiss the developer with prejudice while he was in the service of Parsippany. That meant he can't come back with any more lawsuits. He dismissed the developer without prejudice, the developer came back and threatened a lawsuit, and the town threw in the towel. So the promise to preserve the land for open space and important landscape was thrown in the trash can by an attorney that we hired with our tax money. He betrayed the community, I witnessed it in Morristown. And he should not be representing these pilot deals, he already had three in the past, enough is enough. So that's all I have to say. And thank you, Councilman Musella, for having your head screwed on straight about this.
Council President? Council President? Council President? Can I just respond to what Nick said?
Please, ma'am.
Let's talk about Water View, because that's one subject I'm very well versed in. On March, I think it was October 1st, 2013, there was an overlay zone vote to overlay zone that piece of property over there. And that would give it the retail that it needed to go there. Well, it was voted down. So what happened was, I applied for an open space grant with the county. The reason why, because we knew at that time, where you didn't get the right information, that the Supreme Court of New Jersey was going to come out with a decision on affordable housing. So we went to the county to get a grant to purchase the property for $7.5 million. And who was one of the objectors there? The gentleman that just spoke, he was one of the objectors.
That's true.
It is true. So that's beside the point. So what finally happens is, we don't get the grant money, we don't get the grant money, then on March 10th, 2015, the Supreme Court came back with a decision on affordable housing, and that the township was subject to a certain amount of affordable housing. So that property's value went from 7.5 million to 25 million, but the township could not purchase it for 25 million. Then the applicant did put a 100% affordable housing application in. So what does that mean? That means inherently beneficial use, you can't stop it. So the only way to stop it was to go back to the developer. What we had to do to stop it, which the gentleman did not allude to or tell you what we had to do, we purchased 11 acres in the back with open space trust fund money, we got some money from the county, we had Green Acres money to purchase that property, which means we preserved 11 acres out of the 26 acres. So, anyone's worried about having tax money for the schools, you got some school board members come there today, and I'm going to answer some of their questions with regards to that. We were receiving, I think, $128 a year on that property at the time. Okay, so 60% of $128 goes to the schools. After, we had an agreement with the developer, we purchased 11 acres in the back, we preserved that, the council voted unanimously, and now you get $1 million in revenue, $630,000 goes to the schools. That's a fact. That's a fact. And that's what happened over there. Because you can't stop people from suing. And they were going to sue the town, but we came up with a deal that worked out for the town. So if you want $128 in revenue, then we'll give you $128, well, that's not what we were looking for. So who gets the benefit from that? The residents of Parsippany. That's exactly what happened. And Councilman DePiero, that night, said, now, if any of you were there, you're going to regret what's coming later. Everybody likes to clap, because we had a lot of applause and a lot of claps that night, but once the developer came back with a 100% affordable housing, nobody was clapping anymore. Nobody was.
667 units.
So, that being said, that project was a good project for Parsippany. Nobody wants to see it get built, nobody wants anything to get built. But, you know, we talked about a lot of stuff, and I'm going to answer some of the questions tonight about the pilot program, that you think that, you know, you're hearing all these big numbers coming out. Believe me, you don't want to be under the end of it in a year or two from now. So thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Sir, you're welcome. Sir?
Hi, I'm Toby Anderson, 1128 Tabor Road. I think I might be the only person that I've heard speak tonight that actually has kids in the district right now and will for the next 15 to 18 years. So for over half of this time period that we're talking about, I do appreciate all the people speaking for those kids in the school district. I think that one thing that was kind of pushed here, and a point was made about was, more time should be considered for this. Whether it's right or wrong, there should be more time. This was done too quickly, give it 60 to 90 days. Why not? It's not going to affect the 30-year timeline. So why not delay it a bit so that there can be a bit more debate and investigation, so that the citizens who may not understand some of this stuff have a little more time to pour into it and understand it? So that you can lay out your arguments on the website maybe more readily, and lay out some of the explanations of how we will avoid some of the pitfalls that other programs have. Because with every program, there's pros and cons. So what I think the town council and the mayor should probably do is put out there, here's some of the cons, here's some of the risks we're looking at, here's what we think the benefits are. Just saying it up here isn't good enough, we need to see it. Let the town people see what those pros and cons are. Additionally, I'd like to say that the fact that the pilot programs are represented by an attorney who's also employed by the town, the reality is, to simply lay people like me and the rest of us, it looks like corruption. Whether it is or not, I'm not saying it is, there's no allegation out there, but it looks like a backroom deal, it looks corrupt, rushing it before the end of the year gives it that appearance. So get rid of that appearance. Get rid of that appearance and dispense with that argument by giving it more time and more One of the things that I haven't really heard talked about is the number, the percentage of school district revenue that's being denied by this program. So under Table 1 of the document, the Table 1 that was put up on the website, 69 million would have been the revenue over 30 years without the pilot program on this property if it was developed in the same way. It's down to 12 million. So 82% of the revenue that would have gone to the school is being written off and would not go to the school district. That leaves the 12 million, which I didn't realize there's land credits, so if there's land credits, that means there's zero. I'm guessing a lot of it is not going to be there. So maybe it's 80% or more of the school district's revenues that are not going to be there over that 30 years from this property. But the town's revenue is going to go from 25 to 47 million over the same period of time. The town council and the mayor's ability to use those funds, why not give that money to the school district and the town council and the mayor's administration goes without those funds? That's another way to do it. You still give the tax benefit to these developers, they still have the incentive, but you're not robbing from the kids, and from my kids and other people who might have kids in the district, to pay for it. Instead, maybe we have to do a conservative thing and cut the budget, cut some of the town budget, find ways to save that way. I mean, why take from the schools? The schools add value to the property. I mean, the better the schools are, the more people want to move here. That's why we moved here, was for the schools. There are a number of things, if you look up on the web, there's a number of things that are pros and cons about these deals. Those should be turned into the FAQ. The FAQ that's on there is cursory, and it just addresses pros. Give us some of the cons and why they aren't an issue in these deals. That would be helpful, that would be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bernie Clark in here. I think I've heard a lot of very well-thought-out comments from a lot of people today. I'm going to just focus on a couple details that I brought up, one of which I brought up at the last meeting. And Mr. Lavery, I pointed out that the Campus Drive project already had an approved site plan without a pilot back in 2021, and based on everything I've learned, including talking to attorneys, once you've got that, you should not, cannot, you can do, you can do anything, I guess, but you should not allow for a pilot program to be put on that property. I asked you to look into that, and I asked the council to look into it at the last meeting, and after I make my other comments, I would ask you to answer that question, what did you find out about that? Another thing that has, it's a detail, but one of these pilots is for a warehouse over Off 287. Now, granted, no students are going to live there. However, if there's one thing we all know about New Jersey real estate and value, is that companies want to build more warehouses. So why are we giving a pilot program to a warehouse location? I think they would very happily build that project at that site, which I driven by, without having a pilot. So I'd like to hear answers to those two questions.
Well, first of all, the 2021, or whatever the prior approval was, was before there was a declaration of blight there. So there's a statutory process. So the council first, you can smirk at me, Mr. Clark, but this is the law, I'm going to tell you what the law is. You can like it, you can hate it, I don't care, but the council makes a recommendation to the planning board to check and see if this is an area that in need of redevelopment, to do a study. The planning goes down to the planning board, they discuss that among themselves. If they decide that they think it should, they assign it to their planner. The township planner then does a report. There's statutory criteria that you have to meet in order it to meet a declaration of blight. So despite what you heard earlier, there are statutory prongs that have to be proven. You have to prove X number of them. Once that happens, if they can prove that, the planner develops a report. That report then comes back to the council, and then the council decides to pass an ordinance. So whether it received approval in 2021, 2020, 2018, it doesn't matter. There was no buildings built then, the declaration of blight was after that time. And you might not like that answer, but that's what the-
I don't like that.
And Rich, no, and I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what the statute requires. And that's what was done here.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavery, the process you just described, from the request from the council to investigate if it's an area in need of redevelopment, to where we are tonight, how long you think that process is? Because somebody says, why are we doing this overnight?
It's been-
Three months.
A long, because I know that you had to have hearings at the planning board on it.
It's at least three months.
I think it's more like a year, but yeah, three months is fair.
So this didn't start this week or last week? Or the week before?
August of 2022 it started.
Well, it was approved by the public meeting. How about the warehouse question?
Hopefully, some of those questions that have been brought up this evening-
Yeah, the financial planner is going to explain all this. You can ask the financial-
Are you going to be able to ask him questions?
Sure.
I don't know, I thought he was-
No, he's in the back, yeah.
We have him here. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Are we going to be able to ask him questions?
I have no, I don't believe so. I believe he will answer the questions that have been presented this evening. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
He's writing the questions down now.
Right.
Good evening. Hi, Judy Hernandez. I do have to go back to Campus 2 and 3, just because I was on the planning board when that whole thing happened, when we had the land. Oh, I'm sorry, it sounds loud to me here. Okay, can you hear me now better? Okay. This Campus 2 and 3, we approved that application for development, it was ahead of zoning. So how in two years do you go back and say it needs, it's in need of redevelopment?
Well, I didn't go back and say that.
Oh, not you, but how did the-
The township's planner did a report, and they have to look at the statutory criteria, and if the planner determines that it meets the statutory criteria, they make a recommendation.
So is that because the buyer pulled out and a new-
I do have to go back to Campus Two and Three, just because I, I was on the planning board when that whole thing happened, when we had the land. Oh, I'm sorry, it sounds loud to me here. Okay, can you hear me now better? Okay. This Campus Two and Three, we approved that application for development, it was ahead of zoning. So how in two years do you go back and say, it needs, it's in need of redevelopment?
Well, I didn't go back and say that.
Oh, not you, but how did it-
Township's planner, the township's planner did a report, and they have to look at the statutory criteria, and if the planner determines that it meets the statutory criteria, they make a recommendation.
So is that because the buyer pulled out and a new developer came in and they wanted the pilot? Was it, was it that, that, that's what people are concerned about? And having worked on the land use plan with Councilman DePiero in two thousand nineteen, we had a lot of open discussion and transparent conversations with the departments and the public, and I think that's what the people are missing now, because it is the residents that are going to feel it in the infrastructure, in the schools, water, sewer, the environment, quality of life. And there are many other ways, I hope, to do development in town. We are at a crossroads of many great roadways from one part of New Jersey to another, from one state to another, and the Parsippany Green Team had been wanting to do that. There are ways other towns are doing this to bring in development with EV infrastructures, other kinds of warehousing. And my next question is, how is warehousing ratables? Because we talk about ratables giving us the town more money, but we're talking about well-so industrial and warehousing. By the way, the warehousing and industry development is booming, it seems, from what I've read, I've seen it on Bloomberg, they're not suffering. So why are they giving these developers a break? And the residents need to understand, have that transparency, the process needs to be a little bit longer than just a few months, or two months. Thanks.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, I'll answer your first question. This developer came to us, did the affordable housing unit, twenty percent affordable housing unit, at Campus Two and Three.
Right.
Okay. He's worked out a deal with the Fair Housing Council. We're getting, the twenty percent was for affordable housing units. He's, he's gotten permission to call that affordable housing bedrooms. So we're getting three times as many credits for each unit than we would have had before.
Yes, I, I understand, because you, you did mention that, and that's great.
So that's a, that's a big hit.
However, it just, it just doesn't make sense in my mind how we got from approved plan, where we talked, you know, to death about parking and whatever, the whole development, to then being rezoned, and it does this set a precedent that most of the development now going forward is going to be pilots, or people are going to wonder, in fact, in Parsippany, we don't even have environmental reviews.
Thank you, Judy.
You know, I'm, I'm five minutes away, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
And one more, one more thing, if I may add.
Thank you, Judy.
You ask how other towns are doing it, they're doing pilots. That's how they're doing it.
Bob Vmedzie of Parsippany, because of the five-minute rule, I had to break up my talk, but I'll come back and finish it when the Campus Drive ordinance comes up. Pilot agreement was created by the state of New Jersey as a tool to be used by a municipality in order to encourage development in blighted areas. Instead, it has grown into a weapon that developers use to extort generous tax abatements from local governing bodies by threatening to either totally abandon their project or to move it to another municipality. Every developer, without exception, asks for a pilot, whether they need it or not, because they have everything to gain and nothing to lose. Over a thirty-year period, pilot projects typically save the developer tens of millions of dollars in taxes. The properties at Two and Three Campus Drive do not need a pilot. They were purchased just a short while ago, in October, by Avalon Bay, a multi-billion-dollar company that buys and sells properties as its business. The idea that Avalon Bay would need a pilot after owning the properties for only one month is either an admission that they made a mistake, or it's an indication of corporate greed. There's also been a little commentary from the council or the administration about specific clauses in the pilot agreement that may not be advantageous to Parsippany. I believe that the developer does not expect a municipality to sign a final version of a pilot that contains all these clauses. However, if the governing body is not paying close attention to the language of the pilot, then the developer will happily accept the extra benefits that these clauses bring. I had a very difficult time reading the legalese version of these agreements, but if I read them correctly, all three pilots scheduled for a final vote tonight contain several boilerplate clauses that I find objectionable. For example, in my opinion, the inclusion of a land tax credit, which has been mentioned several times before, does not belong in any pilot agreement. The land tax after the pilot should be no different than what was paid before the improvements and, and the pilot. For example, I see no reason for rebating over seventy percent of the land tax back to the Campus Drive developer. Furthermore, any alteration of the land tax could seriously impact Parsippany if the pilot development ever failed and becomes vacant in the future. Without a land tax, there will be no tax whatsoever on the vacant property. Without the monetary pressure of a land tax to sell, the owner can hang on to the undeveloped property indefinitely. The clause that allows a developer to sell the entire development and the remaining pilot abatement to any owner it chooses should also be removed. Once the property is sold, the incentive given to the original owner to develop the property, uh, property no longer exists. The pilot should end, and the new owner should pay normal property taxes just like everybody else. In the Campus Drive pilots, the clause that allows Avalon Bay to sell individual apartment units as condominiums and pass along a pro-weighted portion of the pilot tax abatement to the new owners should also be removed. A condominium owner should be assessed and taxed just like every other homeowner in Parsippany. The clause that allows a developer to retain excess net profits above twelve percent in their reserve fund before distributing the excess to Parsippany should be changed. Any excess over twelve percent should go to Parsippany first, then the developer can, can fund the reserve out of his remaining profits. If the developer is allowed to put excess net profits in their reserve first, the chance of Parsippany receiving any of the excess is zero. In my opinion, none of the pilots coming up for final vote tonight can even be considered for approval until all of the above clauses are removed. As representatives of the taxpayers, you cannot give away tens, tens of millions of property taxes without having performed complete due diligence on the contents of each pilot, and I'll see you later.
Good evening. My name is James Mascar. I'm with the Board of Fire Commissioners, District One, in the township.
I can hear you.
My name is James Mascar. I'm with the Board of Fire Commissioners in District One in the township. I have a couple of questions for the council. First and foremost, a lot of really good things have been said tonight. With that taken into consideration, there's been a lot of new information, I think, presented to you that you may not have considered prior to tonight. I feel it would be prudent for you to table this vote tonight, reconvene in private session, and discuss all the options and suggestions that have been brought forward tonight. I think there are very, very intelligent suggestions that have been made tonight, and I can't see how a vote can be made at this point in time in such a short amount of time. Now, from a fire commissioner point of view, nothing has been discussed in terms of the tax. Under taxes, we have county, local, library, fire. At no point in time, I believe, when this initiated, did you approach fire, library, or school and say, this is what's going on in your district, this is what's going to happen with the taxes? And you basically just took money out of certain people's pockets for protection? An example would be, the Board of Fire Commissioners is an elected body in the township of Parsippany that raises its own tax to protect their district. District Six in this particular instance is losing out fifteen fifteen to Three Campus Sylvan. We're talking over seven hundred apartments that they now have to protect with no tax coming to them. I feel that there should have been a point in time where the council or the mayor had come forward and said, this is what we're looking to do. What is it going to take to protect this property properly and correctly for the taxpayers of this town? Because if there is a fire at Two or Three Campus, there's going to be a lot of resources expended there, and it's all basically coming out of everybody else's pocket. So, in closing, I think you need to really think about the vote you're going to make tonight. Is it what's best for Parsippany? And there's no rush to victory here. We have all the time in the world. These buyers are not walking away. They bought the property. They own it. What's the rush? We had them on the hook, they own it. Let's negotiate a deal that's good for Parsippany.
Jimmy, just so you know, I did speak for District Six. I did speak for District Six, because that's, but, no, not after the fact, I spoke today, I'm not going to say, because he's not here, but I spoke today, and we're going to discuss what the township can do for that district.
But why isn't it that be done upfront in writing? Because when you leave at some point in time in the future-
Well, because it would be a lease agreement, that's, it would be an agreement, that's why.
Right, but why would-
Just like we did the agreement with District One.
Correct. Upfront, before we did.
Yeah, so we did that with, as well. So, yeah, I did speak for District Six. So, I'm just letting you know, Jimmy, that's all.
Okay, it's just, I think, you know, pause needs to be made tonight, I really do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I, I think Mr. Mascar makes a really- I think Mr. Mascar makes a really big point here that is central to this whole discussion is that we can debate the pros and cons of pilots, we have all the time in the world for it, but the process here, which clearly did not engage the Board of Education, the fire districts, I assume, were an afterthought, and based off of the feedback that we've been given here, I think the council should hit the pause button. There is no rush. These pilots will be here in January when a new council comes in, which would be the right thing to do, because we're still learning facts and figures. And the most important thing is, on the final vote for these three pilots, we're talking about the financials with a financial expert. So I don't know what kind of process here was followed, because clearly, a lot of people feel the same way.
Mr. Masters, I'm sorry. Once your five minutes are up, you know-
I, I didn't think I used it up.
Yes, you did, we have-
Once, once you're done.
Yeah, you're finished.
All right.
Thank you.
Finally?
You're finished, thank you.
Why is it thirty years?
Why is it thirty years? Okay.
Gonzalo Macedo, I'm, I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiments that was said here tonight.
Say your name, please.
Gonzalo Macedo, I said that before. I'm going to echo the sentiment of most of the folks here. It's great to see-
Speak into the mics, speak into the mics so they can hear you.
It's great to see Democrats, Republicans, sit here together, united as one, and in politics, that usually doesn't happen. So, round of applause for everybody for coming out and standing up. Second thing is, we're saying this is not political, it's very political. Cramming something in at the last minute is political. So, we should hit the pause button and reassess. And I'm going to leave that back, because all the points were made already.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Amy Canog. Thank you, guys, for answering all our questions. This is my very first meeting I've ever attended, and it's because of the pilot program. I'm just trying to understand it and wrap my head around it, so bear with me.
You gotta speak up.
Sorry. Is that better?
Better.
Is it not a very sensitive microphone? I have to get right into it. Okay. So I have a few questions, just, I'll list them. First of all, why thirty years? It seems like a long time to not collect taxes, especially because it's a fixed rate, it seems like, maybe I'm missing something. And we all know that there's inflation, so that's just going to inevitably eat into the taxpayer budget. We moved here because the schools are excellent, my husband grew up here, we're raising our daughters here, I'm from Michigan, he pulled me all the way from Michigan to live in Parsippany, New Jersey. Yay. So, shout out to Lake Interveil, because it's an awesome community, I really love it there. I'm really happy with the school, the school's been awesome, our daughter's in it, she's in second grade. We have a little one who's four, who will be going into Interveil in a couple of years, and I am looking forward to it. So my questions are, how many, I guess the properties purchased, I was going to ask how many bids were for this, but it sounds like they came to the table and purchased and then came to the council? I don't know. How, how did this deal come about? Like, did you guys approach them, or did they approach you about the pilot program? Because they purchased the property, so why are we giving them money? Also, how much is it per child to educate? I think we're throwing numbers around, but what's the official number that Parsippany spends on per child, according to you guys, the council, and your budget? Also, let's see. So, I ran some numbers, maybe they're wrong. So, in the, according to the pilot presentation, Table One, in the first stabilized year, the taxes that you would get without the pilot program would be one million, five hun- this is just, by the way, this is just for the, um, "school district," quote unquote. One million, five hundred seventy-four dollars, uh, one million, five hundred seventy-four, twenty-nine dollars. With the pilot program, it would only be two hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred thirty, and that's for thirty years. I did some quick math, so it sounds like twenty percent is affordable housing, so assuming that each of those units has one child, that's eighty-two children, that's one million, six hundred forty thousand dollars at the twenty thousand dollar per child rate to educate those children right now, today. So where, where is the extra money coming from if we give this pilot program? Because that, that's just the numbers, I'm not understanding, so maybe you guys can help me and help the rest of the public by extending the time, adding some more information on the website, and giving us a chance to digest this information, so we can all feel good about it.
Anyone else like to come forward?
My name is Stanley Crone, Sixth Am, Little Way in Parsippany. I've been living here in Parsippany for over forty-eight years. This is only the second time I've got up to say something. I find this whole discussion very interesting. It's an area I don't have any knowledge about. I asked the council, who's been advising you with regard to the contracts for these pilot programs? Because it seems to me, companies like Avalon and the other big developers have very, very creative lawyers about, who know about this very well. A lot of people have brought up a lot of information. I think if, if we haven't had somebody of the same level of education and knowledge as Avalon Bay, we should get somebody to really go into the contracts and show us the pros and cons. I think that would be very helpful.
Mr. Crone, we have somebody here that's going to do that tonight.
Well, not tonight, I mean, it's-
Well, that's what he's here for. He's going to explain the pilot program, he's going to explain the benefits, he's going to explain all that.
But the pros and cons seem to always sneak up when you don't expect it.
Well, that's, we, this is a gentleman the council hired to, to actually, you know, answer all the questions tonight.
But I also agree that something like this, because of the objections brought up by so many people, which should be delayed, and think about it, as, there's no rush to get it done, it could get, be done next year, but I think you should delay it.
Nancy Snyder, Two Twenty-Six North Everett Road. Just a real quick question, Mayor. In your introduction, you mentioned Booton has a pilot program too, right? Okay. Jim Lynch is now mayor. He was voted because he was anti-pilot. I just want to make that clarification as you went down. I think Andy Chapo brought up a-
What town was it?
Montville's example, but, you know, we, they have an incoming mayor because- Montville's example. But, you know, we, they have an incoming mayor because of the pilot programs, because that community is anti-pilot, and he is too. Thank you.
Well, just so you know, I know Mr. Lynch very well. I went to high school with him with regards to that. So, all the other mayors I've talked to are in favor of him, not because they want him, not because I want them, but because they see how all the revenues in the townships are diminishing, and how companies are leaving because they're going to go where they're going to get the best profit for themselves, especially with the current rate. And you just had, this lady there just said that the inflation rate is extremely high, which it truly is. Costs are higher and stuff like that. So, the towns and those companies that are coming here are trying to come here. If they don't want a pilot program, and our taxes get hit, the school boards get nothing, then that's basically how it's going to be.
Erin Smithers. I live in Lake Intervale as well. I grew up in Parsippany. I went to CMS. I moved out of state, because I don't know if you know this, but New Jersey's very expensive to live in. My husband grew up in Parsippany as well. His mom taught at Parsippany schools. We're all back in Parsippany now. It has that lovely feeling that a lot of people love, but the reason we came back was the schools. A lot of people I have interacted with, because I have a son who will be entering schools next year, also moved to the area because of the schools. So, if you are taking money away from the schools, the people that you pride yourself on having in this community are going to have to leave, because we are putting our children first. And if that is not with Parsippany schools, it's going to be with the school district that puts them first as well. Thank you.
So, I have to say this, because I've heard this many times. The schools aren't going to be affected. The kids aren't going to be affected. The school has the ability by state statute or state law, but they're limited to revenue. They're limited to 2% tax increase. That's what they're limited to. But, that being said, whatever we negotiate is outside that, and it's, whatever we negotiate to give the town, that's a bonus to the school board. So, that's the negotiations we're in right now. But to continue to say that our schools are going to suffer, you know, what's going to suffer is that we don't have any tax revenue coming in. That's what's going to suffer, the town.
Okay. Anyone else like to come up and speak, please?
Good evening. Hank Heller, 10 Fenwick Place in Parsippany. I just...
I can't hear you.
Hank Heller, 10 Fenwick Place, Parsippany. Is that okay?
Yeah.
That's good. Thank you.
I just want to say that, in looking at the documentation that's been provided, we still do not have a full accounting of the entire proposal. And that's something that, before you, before this committee, this town council votes on whether or not this should be passed or not, I think it's imperative that not only you have that documentation, but the citizens of Parsippany have too. I haven't heard one person come up here tonight and say that they were in favor of the pilot programs. Not one. Okay? I've been sitting here from the very beginning, and this isn't the first meeting. And I'm telling you, I think, I think that if you're convinced that this is the right thing to do, then put all of the information together so all of your citizens can, in fact, look at it, understand it, and ask what questions that they have to about it, and then perhaps come to some sense of satisfaction. But the way this is going right now, this is, this is saying, please trust me. Please trust in me. And I want you to, you must understand, the people are telling you, we are not trusting in you. We are angry. We are upset with you. Okay? And it's a terrible mistake that's being made politically. The mayor has used the word politically many times. I'm not speaking politically. I'm talking about what it is that you folks owe to yourselves and to the rest of us, to give us a clear picture of exactly what it is that you're signing us on for, and help us to understand why it's good, not just because you tell us it's good, because that doesn't cut it. Not because we don't want to trust you, but it's because none of us are trusting politicians at this point. And we haven't heard anything from you over the last few months that causes us to believe that, in fact, you may be more right than our fears are telling us we should be concerned. And I'm urging you to please rethink this, not because I say it, but because everybody is asking you to put this aside, give us the full picture, and let's all look at it so that we can be in agreement, as opposed to, as you see, have everyone be very, very unhappy about the potential of what we are believing might happen tonight. Don't do it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up and speak? Seeing no one, entertain a motion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Corrifi. Roll call Mr. Corrifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Negria?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
I think before we go on, I would just like to put a motion onto the floor. I think it needs more debate, and we should let a new council review all of these pilot agreements. So, therefore, I'd like to make a motion to table Ordinance 2023:39, Ordinance 2023: 27, Ordinance 2023:28, and Ordinance 2023:29.
Mr. Musella, this evening...
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm sorry, council president.
We have several individuals. We have a financial individual that will come up and explain our pilot. We have a gentleman from Mr. Lavery's office, Richard Weiner, who will also come up and speak to us. And if you'd like to put your...
We have a motion on the table. We're going to need a second at this time.
There is no second.
Okay, so if there's no second, at the time for a vote, if you'd like, you could remake that motion. It would need a second. If it doesn't get a second, it would die down. So, right now, do we have a second for the motion? Okay, we do not have a second, so the motion dies.
Okay. Mr. Lavery, Mayor, would you like Mr. Richard Weiner to speak first, or would you like the individuals from Inlosino's office to speak?
Well, should the developers, the carni come up first?
Are you able to ask questions?
Answer to my first question. I've never had answers.
Rich, you want to just go through the process?
You're going to get answers.
Can everyone hear me without the mic?
No. You have to use the mic. Because it gets recorded.
Only for the record, Rich.
So, the question that was asked by the gentlewoman in front was, what was, what was the process?
Rich, my name is Rich Weiner. I'm an attorney with the Lavery-Silvaji Law Firm, here on behalf of the township.
Do you want to turn around?
No, no, no. He's at my firm. He does redevelopment law. He is here on behalf of the township. I, no, 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 no. We don't represent the developer. Please. Let me explain something. He does redevelopment law from this side of the table, from the township side. He does not represent the developers. We do not represent the developers.
Continue, sir. Thank you.
All right. So, thank you. The question that was asked was, what was the process for evaluating a long-term tax exemption? We heard about, called the pilot. The process starts way back in the beginning with a referral from the governing body to the planning board to undertake the preliminary investigation. You heard Mike talk about that process. That's the first step in the redevelopment process that enables a long-term tax exemption to be offered to a redeVELOmer. Process number one, referral to the planning board. Planning board undertakes an investigation pursuant to the criteria set forth in the redevelopment law as to whether the property in question constitutes an area in need of redevelopment under the statutory criteria. We heard the word blight discussed tonight. Blight is not just economic blight. There's a host of statutory criteria that has to be evaluated. That's done on the planning board's side. The planning board retains a planner, someone who's licensed in the state of New Jersey, to undertake this sort of discussion and evaluation. And then a report is generated by the planning board. There's a public hearing on that, as to whether there is a need to declare, or whether the property meets the criteria of an area in need of redevelopment. The planning board then makes a referral to, back to the governing body, saying, this is what we found. And if the property does meet the criteria of an area in need of redevelopment, then the governing body can say, great, we're going to go ahead and adopt a resolution declaring this property to be an area in need of redevelopment. That resolution gets sent down to the state. The state has 30 days to review the resolution and the determination by the governing body as to whether it meets an area in need of redevelopment criteria. If the state says it does not, then it does not. If the state doesn't respond or gives an affirmative yes, then it does. Now, it's an area in need of redevelopment. That's not the end of the process. Then there's a redevelopment plan that has to be developed by the township governing body, adopted via ordinance, first and second readings, with a referral to the planning board for review to make sure that the redevelopment plan that's adopted by, or proposed to be adopted by, the redevelopment entity, which is the township council, is consistent with the township's master plan. One of you women, you have in the back, sat on the land use board. I'm sure you were, at some point, maybe you've heard about that process, or were, in fact, involved in that process. So, it's a collaborative effort between the planning board and the governing body as to, A, whether a property meets the definition and the criteria of an area in need of redevelopment. And then, B, if it does, and the governing body decides to designate that property as an area in need of redevelopment, what the redevelopment plan should look like. Once that's all done, now you have a piece of property in the township that's an area in need of redevelopment, and that has a redevelopment plan, which is basically overlay zoning, setting forth the uses which that property can be put to, that's in effect, in place for the property. That's all great. Now, you need a redeveloper. Redeveloper comes before the council. Council is the redevelopment entity. In the state of New Jersey, you can have a redevelopment entity, which is the governing body, or you can have a redevelopment agency, which is a separate independent body politic. We have a redevelopment entity. A lot of people up here are the redevelopment entity for the township of Parsippany-Troy Hills. The mayor is not. He's not part of the redevelopment entity. It's the township council. They're the ones that make the decisions. The mayor, however, as the chief executive of the township, is involved in the process. Mayor's involved with negotiating contracts on behalf of the township. That's your standard form of government here. That's how it works, whether it's redevelopment, whether it's the PBA, whether it's whomever. The mayor negotiates the contracts. Mayor puts the contracts before the governing body. Governing body approves, rejects, passes, and modifies. That's the process. That's how your government works here. As it relates to redevelopment, developer comes typically to the executive branch, the mayor, the business administrator, and presents a project that they want to undertake in the township in an area that's in need of redevelopment pursuant to the redevelopment plan. You asked about the pilot, the tax exemption. As part of that process, there is an application that the redeveloper submits to the mayor pursuant to the statutory criteria in the long-term tax exemption law, which some of you have cited here tonight. It's NJSA 20-1. And there's an application. The application sets forth minimum criteria, project, project description, land acquisition costs, proposed plan for the redevelopment of the property, along with a proposed financial agreement. Financial agreement is what we've been talking about here tonight. That's going to be up for debates very soon. The financial agreement is the end result of the financial application and the terms that the developer is putting forth to the township requesting for the tax exemption. It's not an automatic thing. It's not something that has to be given out, but it's something that can only be given out if there's an area in need of redevelopment designation. All right? So, these are, these are not activities that are undertaken by the municipality unless the property that is impacting, that is being impacted by them is, in fact, located in an area in need of redevelopment. So, I want to make that point clear. It's a very important point. And again, the long-term tax exemption, the pilot, doesn't get going unless an area is first declared to be an area in need of redevelopment. So, the application is made to the mayor. The mayor sends it to the council. The council weighs in on it, evaluates the cost-benefit analysis for the township. Question was asked about stakeholders, I believe you asked, and what stakeholders were included. That's all part of the administration's calculus. I don't know personally what, you know, what stakeholders were consulted with, but I'm sure, as part of the process, you look at what the revenue is going to generate for the township if it's built, and if it's not built, what's going to happen with the property. That's the policy decision-making. It's not a legal process. It's a policy process that the governing body and the mayor, because they both have a part in this, engage in in determining whether this makes sense for the township. Once the financial agreement is adopted, again, by two readings of an ordinance, it goes into effect. Question was asked by someone, the most recent gentleman, or the woman over there, why thirty years? Thirty years, because that's what the statute says. It's thirty years. Thirty-five years in the date of execution, thirty years for implementation of the tax exemption itself. All right? So, it can't go any longer than those two timeframes.
Can it go shorter?
I'm sorry?
Can it go shorter?
No. There are, there are, not in this context. There are tax abatement programs that are five-year for residences of rehabilitation that don't require the area to be an area in need of redevelopment. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about a long-term tax exemption process. So, that's why it's thirty years. The land tax credit, I heard a couple people ask about the land tax credit, and now the developer is not going to be paying land taxes. That's not how the land tax credit works. The land tax credit is taxes that are paid by the developer for the land. Again, we're not, they're not paying on improvements. They are paying on improvements, but they're not paying taxes on improvements. That's why you have the school board conversation going on, and the fire district, wherever that gentleman went, somewhere, there yours, sir, why that conversation is being had. But the land taxes are paid by the redeveloper. And they're paid, 63% goes to the school, 20...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-two percent to the municipality, and the balance goes to the county, just like it ordinarily otherwise would. However, the redeveloper gets a credit for those land taxes that were paid against the pilot payment itself, against the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes as to the improvements based upon the schedule that was agreed to. That's how that works. Now, it's important to know, in the state of New Jersey, in the long-term tax exemption for affordable housing, you don't even have to get that. The land taxes, the land itself can and is permissible to be exempt from taxation. It's for affordable housing. It touches on the residential development projects. That's not in the agreement that's before you. That's not something that is being contemplated or was contemplated. So, the land value of the property is being assessed against the developer. Those taxes, the land taxes, will be paid. The portion will go 63% to the municipality, 23% to the, I'm sorry, to the school district, 23% to the municipality, and the balance to the county. That's how that works. That's what the process, the question, oh, those are all the process questions that were asked.
Clarification. If the financials are approved tonight and without the negotiations with all of the other stakeholders, can that financial agreement be modified after tonight? Or are we locked in?
So, you can, no, the answer is no, you're not locked in. You can do...
Question?
So, the question was, if the criteria that was discussed earlier about the stakeholders not being involved, the fire, the fire districts, the...
Water sewer.
Water sewer school, if that's not included in this, or addressed or accounted for in this agreement, can that be accounted for in a subsequent agreement? Can the financial agreement basically be modified or amended? That was the question. The question is, yes, you can do an amended financial agreement. However, it's not, I think the topics that you're bringing up and the questions that you want answered would be more appropriately addressed in a redevelopers' agreement. It wouldn't be appropriately addressed in the financial agreement, because, again, the financial agreement is a tax, long-term tax exemption that says, per the statute, 95% to the municipality, 5% to the county. Mike, any... Hold on. Did you want to jump in on that?
There's more people presenting.
Who are we going to have first?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Would you please complete, and then we will have the financial.
Yeah. Well, I have some questions. I have some questions myself, Rich.
Sure.
So, were you the person that was charged with negotiating with the developers to represent the town?
Charged with, I was, yeah, our firm was involved in, as the redevelopment council with these agreements, yes.
Okay. So, you, how many times did you meet with each developer?
I didn't meet with a developer at all.
I see you're speaking to the mic.
I typically, I would never personally, but I would meet with a developer as council. I would have conversations with the council for the developer.
And who's the attorney for the developers?
John Inlosino.
Okay.
My chief communications were with Keith Wollington from John's firm. I'd have some conversations with John as well. And that, again, is just standing. We don't negotiate with the developers.
So, so what amendments on behalf of the township did you make, if any, to these financial agreements?
Well, there was a host. There was, I mean, going from the top of my head, land tax credit, valuation of the land... There was, I mean, going off the top of my head, land tax credit, valuation of the land, the annual minimum tax payment for 249 Pomeroy, there's minimum annual service charge. Again, and Mike, we're going to discuss the minimum annual service charge, what that means, but it's an important term to understand and how it's calculated, and we'll talk about that. For 249 Pomeroy, the minimum annual service charge was renegotiated instead of the prior year's ad valorem taxation that was paid by the owner of the property. It was that or the greater of a $2.50 per square foot of total build-out, subject to a 3% escalator.
Okay. So you had mentioned the land tax credit, and that's something I want to talk about. So what is the sense in giving them a land tax credit against the taxes they pay? Help me understand why we have to do that.
You're not, you're not getting a, it's not a credit against the taxes they pay. The only tax that's being paid is the land tax. That's it. It's a credit against the pilot. It's a credit against the payment in lieu of taxes for the improvements.
Right, but why does the township feel the need? What is the sense in rebating them on the taxes that they pay to the land?
Because the, I'm having a hard time with this mic, so you can all hear me.
Just face me, face me, I'm talking to you.
You want to touch on that?
What are we doing?
So the...
State your name.
This is Mike Hanley. Mike Hanley from NW Financial, I'm the principal at NW Financial. I'm representing the town of Parsippany. So the land tax credit exists as a concept because you are trying to come to an agreement of what is appropriate for a developer to pay. And that is the total payment, which is both land taxes and the balance of the money that's paid in the pilot. So if the agreement is... Sorry about that.
Take it out.
Yeah, if you'd like to take it out.
Yeah.
Just speak into the mic, please.
Make yourself comfortable. You might be here a while.
So that's the only way to ensure stability, which is an incredibly important part of the pilot process. You're trying to create stability that allows financing and development of a project that would not otherwise be developed in the same way.
Okay. And can you, can you state for the record when you were hired to be our financial consultant?
I believe I was hired at your last meeting.
Okay, so you came in after the negotiations had taken place, after these pilots had been placed on our agenda, after the financials were already presented to us. So is it fair to say you played no role in the negotiations of these pilots?
I have been working with the developer and their team between the time I was hired and now to determine if the assumptions made were reasonable and to negotiate points that were, some points in the terms, like we added the $2.50 minimum per square foot in the Pomeroy pilot, escalating at 3%.
So you didn't start last week.
What's that?
The impression was you started last week.
Well, we hired him last week.
Yeah, yeah.
But you were negotiating prior to that.
The, no, I mean, all of my work has been done in the past two weeks.
Yeah, so in other words, you were hired after this process had already been jump-started, correct?
Yes, I believe that the administration has been working for months to achieve a number of policy goals, right? The, in the context of what you're doing, you have two large problems that are being dealt with, and part of that solution is providing an incentive for the development. The two large problems are, you have an obligation to produce affordable housing, and you are facing continued loss of revenue through tax appeals, lowered assessments, because Parsippany was incredibly successful for decades with a use that was super important to this region and this state, and that was office space, right? But over the past 10 years, millions of square feet have come out of the 280 corridor because they weren't needed, and there was no demand for them. And the, you know, it has certainly got worse since COVID because even fewer people are going to the office, but this is 100% a pre-COVID problem. The, you know, I mean, you read the part by Matt Calley about Seven Campus, right? The, Matt Calley was one of the largest office owners in the region. They've completely divested themselves to build residential because office space is a bad business to be in. The marketplace has told us that by eliminating the millions of square feet and by the vacancies that exist, I'm told by the assessor, there are 17 empty, currently empty buildings. So, you know, when we're talking about caring about the children and caring about the taxpayers, a constantly declining revenue stream associated with uses that are not economically viable means that you are lowering your assessment base on all those properties and you're spreading the cost to the existing taxpayer. The solution to that is to generate new revenue with uses that are valuable and that the marketplace needs. And you unsurprisingly have landed on the two uses that are most important in the state right now. We have, we don't have enough market rate housing, we don't have enough affordable rate housing, and that's why it's super hard to find places to rent, it's super hard to find places to buy. I mean, anyone who has a friend who's tried to buy a home recently, right? They're going up against five or six bidders at prices way over asking, because we have a housing shortage, so this is part of that solution.
Right, no, sorry, go on.
And the other use is warehouse space. There is a huge need for warehouse space, particularly new warehouse space, because it's more efficient than the old warehouse space, but it is a competitive environment, and much of it is being produced with the use of pilots.
Okay, well, I appreciate the real estate overview, but I'm more concerned about the role that you're playing in these financial agreements. And my question is, is it common for you, and how long have you been doing this?
25 years.
Okay, is it common for you to be brought to a governing body the night of the vote for a pilot to discuss financials?
I mean, I'm almost always at the night of the adoption because it's a public hearing to handle questions.
Right, but is it common for you to be at the night of the vote discussing the financials with us and the public as we are now? Is that common, or does it generally happen before any pilots are even on a municipal agenda?
No, it's more, more often than not, it's at the adoption. Sometimes it's at both the introduction and the adoption.
Mr. Hanley, you've been, you've been helping Parsippany, I'm going to use the word helping, Parsippany previously when we had our affordable housing mandates. So you're not new to Parsippany in coming before us.
That's correct. I worked on...
I don't want it to, I don't want the public or our fellow councilmen to feel that you're here just now, which you haven't been.
No, that's correct. I've done work for the municipality over...
Thank you, thank you.
Probably 10 years.
But, but you are essentially being parachuted into the latest stage of this process. As you have just stated, you were hired after the pilots were on the agenda, after the financials had been presented to us by the developer, and here we are, being asked to make a decision on the first three of six pilots. Don't you think it's a little strange?
There is no normal process in the world. I mean, you know what the timeline is, and I answer that.
Let me ask you another question. So since we've hired you, how have you changed the financials that we are basing our decision off of, that's been provided to us by the developer and their attorney?
I mean, the only significant financial change is in the Pomeroy, adding the additional minimums.
Has that been given to us? Were we given these new financials?
I believe the most recent financials were emailed to you guys today by the administration.
Mr. Hanley, I believe you mentioned the, the square footage of Pomeroy and what that amount is going to be.
Yes, it's in section four of the agreement, or it's in the definitions of minimum annual service charge, and it states that the minimum annual service charge, in addition to the normal calculation, will be not less than $2.50 a square foot, and that minimum will increase at 3% annually throughout the term of the pilot.
Okay, and the square footage of the building that we're talking about at Seven Pomeroy, I believe, is 110 square feet?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
When it comes, are you able to talk about school-aged children that will go into residential buildings?
Absolutely.
Okay. When we talk about Avalon Bay, 430 units, in your professional opinion, how many school-aged children do you think will come from there?
From the market units, I would expect there to be between 20 and 30 school-aged children. The, as it relates to the affordable units, you're probably in the 60 to 70 range.
So almost 100 kids?
Yes, but I would, in the context of the conversation, it's important to note that you have to get the affordable units no matter what.
Right.
Those children are coming. So what you're really talking about is the 23, or the 20 to 25 that will come out of the market rate units.
So what happens in these current financial agreements? There's no revenue share for the fire districts, for the board of education. These will pass tonight, clearly. What happens next for them?
I mean, the, let's talk about the way schools are funded, right? Schools are funded by sending a bill to the municipality, and the municipality pays that bill, right? So $0 are not available to the school board by virtue of having a pilot on this property. They have not been harmed financially. They don't have less revenue than they would otherwise have. But we're bringing new revenue into the municipality, and we're preventing a continued decline in revenue on properties that have already declined significantly. So we're trying to recover revenue that belongs to the taxpayer and make it available to provide services. I mean, it is a, it really, like, nothing's happening to the school board, but we're putting more money in the municipal pocket to either provide more services, better services, mitigate tax increases that would otherwise have to go to the residents of the town.
Sir, I have a question for you. So the, the Pomeroy location, which is the warehouse, I believe it was stated at our last meeting that right now we're collecting about $100,000 to $120,000 in taxes right now, and no one wants to go into that building. The real estate professionals have said no one's going to rent that building the way it is right now, and that if that new warehouse were to be built, we would then collect about $900,000 in taxes from that location?
It's, no, the, the existing taxes are about $170,000. The land tax portion of that is like $45,000. So when the building's demolished, that's what we would receive, $45,000.
$45,000, okay.
Right. The, the pilot will be $275,000 minimum. If they get more revenue than expected, then we will get more.
As the owner's revenue goes up, so does our, the amount of money we get.
Correct, and the developer has agreed to continue to pay the $170,000 until completion, even after the building is demolished.
So instead of paying 45, they're going to pay what they're paying now?
Correct.
Until the building's done.
That's right.
Following that train of thought with the, the fire commissioners, the fire departments, they got a tax too. They, they have their budget, and it's approved by the voters in their, one of their six districts. They get that same money anyway. That has nothing to do with the pilot either, does it?
The, yeah, I mean, they, no, it's, you get bills from the other taxing entities, and you mail out the checks to those taxing entities.
So they're not losing any money either.
Right.
So when it comes to Two and Three Campus Drive, the financials that we have, and they're posted online under transparency, over 30 years ad valorem, that's normal market taxation, $110,771,780 over 30 years. When it comes to the net pilot revenue, I see a number of $67,247,97. So that is about a, you know, $42 million loss. So who makes up that difference?
Well, again, you're not making up a difference, right? You don't have the development now. You have land taxes. You're generating additional revenue. We're not subtracting revenue from the taxpayers, we're adding to it. So there is not, nothing to be made up. This is in fact a makeup for replacing a use that's no longer valuable.
So I guess my last question would be, what if these pilots fail? And what if what the developers are telling us is wrong?
I, I mean, the pilots make failure less likely, but I think rental, residential, and warehouse are highly unlikely to fail. I mean, I can't imagine a set of circumstances in the near term that would cause us to not have a need for rental housing. The developer could lose money, right? Like, the, if they're not able to rent at the levels they're looking to rent at, they could get a lower return or lose money. But that actually doesn't do us any harm. The marketplace is what it is, and, and the, you know, we will still be generating additional revenue that we don't have today.
So who protects and ensures that these pilots are in compliance with their agreements from the township?
The, I mean, different towns handle it different ways, but...
Who would in Parsippany?
I'm not sure what the existing mechanics are, but here's the way they work. They have a legal obligation to provide audited financials to you on an annual basis. Those audited financials are there to ensure that you know what their revenue is, because that's what, you're charging them based on their revenue. And if we don't charge enough, we can true it up and charge more, and, you know, a licensed CPA has to provide an audit that gives us that information. It also tracks profits, so in the event that there were excess profits, it would tell us, and the developer would have to rebate those profits back to us.
And will you be back for December 19th to talk about Two Sylvan Way, the 240-unit building, the Lifetime Fitness Gym in Seven Campus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I just have one question for you, Mike. I know we've spoken. So what's the guarantee that these properties are there now that they're going to stay? You keep hearing, what if the pilot fails? Well, what if these properties go? Can we guarantee they're not going to fail?
I mean, no one can guarantee over decades that something won't fail. I mean, you had super valuable properties here, right? The offices that we're replacing were great properties, but markets change, and we have to respect the marketplace, and when a use is no longer valuable, we have to modify the uses to things that are valuable.
And that was my point. My point was just that, we can't even guarantee that these companies that are here today are going to stay because of the current market. So, and this is why, you know, when they come to the township and they ask for a pilot, and not all ask for pilots, because you kept hearing they all ask for pilots, they don't, but with regards that, when these companies leave, because we didn't negotiate it, whatever way, so, you know, this is the dilemma we're in right now. But Mike, I appreciate working with you. So, you know, I've worked with you on many occasions, I worked on UPS, and you did a great job with that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, if I, just based on those numbers you gave before, so the Pomeroy location, they knocked that building down, we're going to get $45,000 a year.
Correct.
For land.
If they get the pilot, they've agreed to continue to pay the $175,000.
$189,480.
Okay, so there you go. It's another $140-plus thousand a year in taxes, revenue that we're getting while they're building the new building. And then once the new building is up, it'll go up to, you said, $275,000?
Correct.
So that's a, that's a difference of $230,000 in revenue right there.
And also, I believe you... And also, I believe you said that...
And no schoolchildren?
Yes, there's no schoolchildren, yes. The ongoing Palmeroy project, while it's in development, we still will receive the $187,148 and the $45,000 of land. Is that correct?
The, it's the total number, the 45 is inside the total.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Should we have the developer come up?
Yeah, the developer should come up.
Can I answer some questions?
All right, Mr. Hella has a question.
I'd just like to know if it's possible, if the current developer that we're negotiating this pilot with sells that property for any other use, does that abatement have to go along with that sale?
It can't be sold for any other use. The abatement is connected to the redevelopment agreement, and the project is defined, so it will have to be the project that is defined in both the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement. That's what the redevelopers has to build.
You know, there's going to be a public portion for each of the developments where they can ask...
No, they can sell it. They...
There were several questions. There was, can it be another use? And the answer is no.
Okay, Mr. Hanley, excuse me, madam, excuse me.
Another question.
All right, go ahead, but there will be a...
Follow the sale?
Yes, of course.
So the next developer then will also get an abatement, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to be a purchaser, they're not really a developer anymore. They have sold a building, and you, we wouldn't be able to ever do projects if they were unsalable. If there was no liquidity in them, no one would be able to finance them.
The person that purchases that warehouse, that apartment complex, whatever, that abatement goes along with that purchase?
Correct.
So they get the same tax break?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hanley, at this time, if you could just take a seat. We have three items on the agenda that will have their own separate public hearing, where members of the public may ask questions on each one of the pilots if they so choose.
Yes, but I think we'd like to have the developer come up first, please.
Okay.
And after the developer, we will have...
And we will have our financial advisor here available.
Right. And after each one of the ordinances, we will have an open session for the public to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You want water? You want me to get water for you?
You're going to get it?
He's going to go and collect to get bottles of water.
All right, go ahead.
Want to recess?
Ask the council president if she wants to have a recess.
Leave it up to the public.
Yes, Mr. Inglesino, may we have a five-minute recess?
Sure.
So that we may do...
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, do what, yes. Inglesino, please?
Thank you, Madam Council President. John Inglesino from the law firm of Inglesino Taylor.
John, we should have a roll call first, though, we reconvene.
We never did a motion to go into recess, but if you'd like, we could do a motion to roll call. So go ahead, we have, we're going back, back on the record. Could I please have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Ms. Gugniani?
Yes.
Okay, we are back on the record.
Thank you, Madam Council President. John Inglesino from the law firm of Inglesino Taylor here in Parsippany, representing Advance, and talk about 249 Palmeroy. I heard reference to another John Inglesino earlier in the evening, I don't know who that person is. I'm John Inglesino, representing Advance. I just want to address one question that came up, that I'm not sure was addressed, and that is the question of what happens if the property is sold? There's a provision in the agreement, which is pretty boilerplate, that says that if the pilot agreement, financial agreement, is not transferable unless the council approves of who the buyer is, of who the transferee is, of the financial agreement. So I just wanted to make that point clear, so that people understand that. As the council is aware, and with me tonight, by the way, is Mr. Bill Bummer of Advance, who will be making a very brief presentation. As the council is aware, 249 Palmeroy Road is a blighted, vacant, and antiquated printing building of just under 100,000 square feet, which backs up to Interstate 287. In August of 2022, the council authorized and directed the planning board to conduct the study to determine whether the property was in area in need of redevelopment. Now, so terminology here, blighted is a legal term. It comes from Section 8, Article 3 of the New Jersey State Constitution. Area in need of redevelopment comes from the New Jersey redevelopment and housing law. They are synonymous terms. Legally, they mean the same thing. So when the council declared this property in need of redevelopment in April of 2023, it deemed the property to be blighted, as that term is used under the state constitution, and it declared the property being area in need of redevelopment as determined under the New Jersey Housing and Redevelopment Law. So you can't say, you know, it's just wrong to say that property's not blighted. The council unanimously determined that it is, and it was done after a hearing by the planning board, all of which is done on public notice. None of this is done without public notice. These are all public hearings every step of the way on this process. And the planning board recommended unanimously, as I recall, that the property satisfied several of the statutory criteria for the blight determination, or area in need of redevelopment determination. They are the same thing. Now, later in April, the council, so the council unanimously declared the area in need of redevelopment, and unanimously adopted a redevelopment plan that establishes use of the property. Again, the redevelopment plan is adopted by ordinance. There's a lot of public process here. There's the ordinance introduced, then went to the planning board, the planning board did a master plan consistency review, and then came back to the council on notice, public hearing, and adopted the redevelopment plan. So this process has been going on since August of 2022. There have been multiple steps, multiple public hearings on notice throughout the course of this process. The council introduced the financial agreement, and we're now at the public hearing and second reading. There was a question earlier in the evening about why was the pilot agreement adopted and then, you know, coming after the fact? Well, it hasn't been adopted. Tonight is the vote for the adoption of the financial agreement. It has not been approved yet. As discussed at the blight hearing, the property has been vacant for a bit less than two years. And by the way, under the statute, if a commercial property is vacant for two years or more, that is blighted as a matter of law. That's what statute provides. This property has been vacant for a little less than two years. And as you know, from the JLL letter that I read into the record at the last meeting, there is no adoptive reuse for this building. So I think it's fair to say that the building is going to be demolished, there's nothing else they can do with it. Now, currently, as was said, and I want the numbers to be precise, this building pays $187,148 in taxes. I think, Mr. Karifi, you were thinking about Six Sylvan, different... So that's what this building currently pays in taxes. That's land and improvements. The land tax is $45,837. Now, the property owner candidly could have filed a tax appeal. I think it's hard to say that a tax appeal would not be warranted. In consideration of this process, they did not file a tax appeal this year. I want to point that out. But if the owner were to demolish the building, which I think it would, you know, kind of have to do, because it's antiquated, Mr. Karifi's correct, you know, the total tax revenue from this property to the township would be $45,000, $45,000 and change. That's what you get. Now, based upon the first year of the pilot stabilization, referenced in the pro forma, and Mr. Hanley can speak to his opinion as to whether or not the pro forma is accurate as it relates to the anticipated rents and so forth and so on, the town would collect about $275,000 in revenue. And that's based upon rents at about $18.57 a square foot. Now, there was a realtor here at the last meeting who opined that, you know, you could probably get $20 a square foot. If that's the case, then the $275,000 would be more. It wouldn't be less, it would be more. And as was also pointed out, when the rents go up, then the revenues to the town also go up. That's one of the things about pilots, is it aligns the interests between the property owner, redeveloper, and the municipality. So as they do better, you do better. Crazy concept, right? And I might also add that when there's a pilot, there is no ability to file a tax appeal. Can't file a tax appeal. Unlawful. So, again, I think the real comparison here for putting numbers together is $45,000 as opposed to $275,000, and that's aggregate revenue, right? That's aggregate revenue. There was negotiation here on some of the business terms, as typically happens, and what this redeveloper has agreed to do in consideration of the financial agreement, first of all, they've agreed to continue to pay the current taxes until the pilot takes effect. What that does for the town is, number one, it ensures that a tax appeal will not be filed on this property. Number two, it assures the town that even if the developer were to demolish the building, which it will undoubtedly do, that even if the building is demolished, you're still going to get, under the terms of this agreement, that $187,148 until the redevelopment project is complete and the pilot takes effect. And then your revenues will go up from there. So the idea was to minimize revenue loss exposure to the town during this period, and to assure the town that it is quote-unquote "made whole" from what it receives today from this property. That was all negotiated as part of this agreement. And as was alluded to by Mr. Hanley, the redeveloper has agreed to a floor, or minimum tax, of $2.50 a square foot, which is something that he insisted on. In addition to the foregoing financial benefits, this will enable the township to realize the other benefits of redevelopment. Financial benefits of redevelopment are important, but they are not exclusive. The other benefits of redevelopment still exist. One, you're eradicating blight. Blight that you've already determined is blight. Number two, by bringing a state-of-the-art facility like this, and warehousing and industrial next generation is pretty cool stuff, and you'll hear about that from Mr. Bummer in a moment, you're providing local jobs. You're helping the local economy. You're doing the things that governing bodies should be doing, which is creating those cascading effects, positive effects, that come with development. And you're doing it at a location in an area of town where you've already unanimously determined, every person on this council has already determined, that this is a great use for this particular site. But you're accomplishing not just the financial benefits, but you're accomplishing and gaining these other benefits as well. Now, I would like to turn it over to Bill Bummer for a moment. He'll give you his title with Advance, it's very fancy, and he has a lot of knowledge about the industry, and I think he can, you know, put this into perspective in terms of, you know, as you get more industrial, you know, projects like this, you know, what that could mean for the township.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Bummer, and I'm the Managing Director of Industrial at Advance. And so I'm here today in representing Advance Industrial, which I know there was some talk about the firms that are here tonight representing these different projects. Just want to let everyone up here know that Advance is a New Jersey-based company. It was founded roughly 40 years ago by Peter Cacozziello Sr., who happens to be my boss, and we all live here in New Jersey, we work here in New Jersey, and we develop here in New Jersey. So we're not, you know, from out of state, and, you know, whether or not that's popular, I don't know. I just wanted to let everybody understand that that's what Advance is, and that's who we are. So basically, the facility that's located today at 249 Palmeroy Road, it is blighted, and it's in disrepair. I think if you were to take a ride by, I mean, everybody would agree with that. So we took a look at this project, and, you know, we tried to figure out if there was a way to adaptively reuse it, we tried to figure out if there was a way for it to be repurposed, and economically, and based on what a modern logistical warehouse user wants today, it's impossible. The facility's also roughly about 60 years old, and it looks, it was a heavy industrial use, printing for quite some time, and, you know, to get to what today's modern industrial customers are going to want, it just, there's really no residual value left, including the configuration. When you look at these warehouses, industrial logistical facilities that are being built all over the state of New Jersey right now, there are some that are, say, very successful, and there are some that are not. And one of the things that we do with our developments is pay very, very close attention to the logistical flow, the layout, how people will get in, how people will get out. People meaning the people who will work there, the jobs that will be provided, how trucks will be segregated from how those people will arrive to their job every day. You have to put a lot of careful thought and attention to this, and again, looking at the existing building, the existing site, existing configuration, we couldn't, it couldn't happen. So for us, the only way to move forward is to use the tools that are available and propose a redevelopment, and that's what we're proposing. So if you consider the site conditions, demolition, planning, redevelopment, it takes considerable resources. I think that goes pretty much without saying. Market conditions today, the overall state of the state, again, we have to turn to the tools that are available for us to redevelop, and one of those would be a pilot. The pilot provides us with a financial benefit, but that financial benefit is really the certainty of the dollars that are going to be paid via taxes, via the pilot. So when we look at this, and we're trying to chase down that Class A tenant who you're going to want here in Parsippany for the long term, they're looking for things like that too, financial stability. So when we look at the pilot, we are able to project for them over a long term, which usually leads to a longer-term lease. These are not tenants that are going to typically show up and lease a facility for 24 or 36 months. They're going to lease for a longer term because they know and they can fix what their operating costs are going to look like. So those are just a few of the, from, looking at it from a developer's perspective, those are just a few of the reasons why we think redevelopment here at 249 Palmeroy Road will be successful, but we do think that one of the things that needs to happen here is the pilot as well, to attract tenants to the site. Also, looking at what the total and overall redevelopment is going to take from start to finish, and the dollars and cents that are going to have to go into it, a pilot's necessary. I mean, this project is basically, it's a perfect example of utilizing the New Jersey redevelopment law and benefiting from it. So I think, you know, the opportunity is here. We're looking to present this project to you all, and, you know, why not put this property back to use like it was once before? Let it benefit the municipality.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, just one more point. I know we're happy to take questions, and that is that the pilot here is necessary to attract best-in-class to redo this, to redevelop this property in the way in which the town council has already decided that it wants to see the property redeveloped. I leave it to Mr. Hanley to say whether or not these terms are reasonable or corporate welfare, but pilots are used, frankly, by most municipalities, because the municipality looks at what's the benefits to them. the town council has already decided that it wants to see the property redeveloped. I leave it to Mr. Hanley to say whether or not these terms are reasonable or corporate welfare, but pilots are used, frankly, by most municipalities because the municipality looks at what's the benefits to them. Obviously, everybody's going to benefit from an agreement. That's the nature of the agreement. Uh, but I don't think you can just look at the fact that your redevelopment partner is going to benefit some way, we believe in a very appropriate way, and ignore, ignore the significant benefits to the municipality that we've just attempted to outline. And if it is a goal of the municipality to really attract best-in-class redevelopers and companies to come to Parsippany, uh, then this is a tool that I think has to be considered if you want to accomplish that objective.
Question. In my simplistic way, John, today, interest rates are high, cost of material is high. So if they were to build today, the, their fee for the square foot that they would have to charge to get their, their investment back would be very high, and be unattractive for them to do that today with high interest rates and high building rent costs. So the pilot stretches that out, so it's attractive for them to, to still do it even though the costs are high and the interest rates are high. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes, and I, I mean, I would defer to Mr. Hanley on that, but...
Would you agree to that?
Yes.
For Mr. Bummer and Mr. Hanley on it.
They both agree.
Continue, John.
Um, that's really all that I have.
Yeah, um, for either your client or Mr. Iglesina, which do you prefer, ask you or your client?
Depends on the question.
Okay, well, the first question is, do you think Parsippany is a desirable location?
But Morris County is a desirable location, uh, for the right costs and the right circumstances. I mean, we're fortunate to live in a great place of the earth, right? I mean, Morris County, New Jersey is a terrific place to live. I've lived here my entire adult life. I've served, uh, in government. I'm a champion for every municipality in Morris County, including Parsippany. It's a great place to be. It's a great place to live. But that's not the question, of course.
Do you think that, do you think that industrial's in demand in our market?
Again, is there a demand for industrial relative to the market? The market speaks to that. And what the market has been saying to you is, with the vacant buildings given, taking the mayor's point, is what the market is saying is that it needs incentive in order to perform at an optimum level that would enable, would enable Parsippany to enjoy the benefits of more revenues, uh, you know, new projects and those kinds of things. You know, just letting the market play out, um, has not worked so well, right? That's the fact, because you have a 30% vacancy rate, and that rate's been getting worse. It hasn't been getting better and is projected to get worse. So it seems to me that the market needs a little medicine.
Okay, so let's talk about that medicine. I pulled up some information on the Eastern Morris submarket, which is where Parsippany is located, specifically to focus on industrial. Right now, in our submarket, the current vacancy rate is 4.3%. It's down 1.9% from last year. The leasing activity is up 32.3%. The submar, the sales activity, last year, $199 million of volume for industrial warehouse was done. This year, up to date, is $407 million. So can you please explain to me why we need to incentivize anybody for something that's in demand?
Well, there's a lot of things that are in demand. Everything's in demand. The question is, you know, does a deal pencil at a particular location? And again, we have submitted the financial proformas, both in terms of costs, in terms of anticipated revenue, what that means in terms of financeable yields and cash-on-cash returns and all of those things. They've been evaluated by Mr. Hanley, and Mr. Hanley will give his opinion as to whether or not, uh, this is a good deal, a reasonable deal, a fair deal, whatever, however you want to characterize it for the town. I, I'm not going to provide you with, with that answer, because I'm, that's not my, that's not my role. You have a financial advisor to provide you with the answer to that question.
Right, but I, but I think the central premise here is, aren't we throwing away money by giving money to your client, incentivize them for something that people want to do? They want to buy industrial spaces in this area, and those taxes that they are not going to pay to the school and to the fire are going to be made up by the people in this room and the ordinary taxpayers in this town.
Look, nobody is saying that the redeveloper isn't going to benefit. Uh, they are.
Of course, we get that. It has to be mutually beneficial.
But you've heard from Mr. Bummer that without the market, without an incentive here, um, this property is, is not going to likely go forward anytime soon. I'm never going to say never. Um, and, you know, that's going to leave you the next year, two, three, five, whatever you put on it, timeframe you put on it, with either a tax appeal or demolition of a building or likely both, and that's going to decrease your revenue.
Or affordable housing in 2025.
Well, yeah, and I was going to say that that's going to, in the immediate term, again, when I say immediate term, one to five years, that is going to cause a significant revenue reduction, uh, on what the property currently generates. So, so if you want to wait and say, you know, we'll just take a wait-and-see attitude for five years or 10 years, you can do that. I mean, that's a, that's a policy decision that you could make. But we have provided you with some numbers. I went to law school, I didn't get an MBA, so pretty limited as it works the numbers, but even I understand the numbers that I described, right? $275,000, a lot better than $45,000, right? So if you want $45,000 over the foreseeable future, then, you know, wait for the market. But the market is, uh, is not producing the desired result, uh, at the moment and is not forecasted to.
So over the weekend, I received a call from, uh, a very prominent, uh, industri, real estate investment company that does industrial, and I'll leave their name aside. Um, they were actually looking at 249 Palmeroy, but what they told me is that if a pilot is now on the table, they would prefer to go to a pilot because it benefits them a lot more than paying normal taxes. So what do we start saying to landlords and investors who see what's going on in Parsippany that we're giving out six pilots, three to apartment buildings, two to warehouses, and one to a gym, Lifetime Fitness? What do we start saying to those other people who want to pay their fair share but will now do things differently?
Well, first of all, I don't know who called you, what means they're looking at it, um, because my, my client's under contract to buy it, so I'm not sure what they're looking at. I find that a bit hard to believe. It's not a property that's on the market, it's a property that's under contract. But let's assume what you're saying is, is correct. I mean, look, these financial agreements are all done on a case-by-case basis. Uh, you know, that's, that's the way they're done. They're done on a case-by-case basis. And so, you know, in terms of what the general policy is of the municipality with regard to financial agreements, that's up to you, um, but they are done on a case-by-case basis. And I can tell you that most municipalities, um, entertain pilots, they consider them, uh, and many of them adopt them. Not, not all of them, but many of them do get adopted.
Let me ask you a question. Why do you think in the two meetings that we've had about pilots, not a single resident has advocated for a pilot?
Because I think there's been a lot of misinformation. I mean, when you send out emails that say, when you, when you send out emails that are entitled "stop overdevelopment," that was in the ray line of your email, it, it creates this impression that, oh my God, you know, we're, we're building on virgin territory. We're, we're, you know, you're not. I mean, and in the case of Two and Three Campus, these are developments that are in your affordable housing plan. You're not, pilots aren't being used to, to create overdevelopment. You've already made the policy decision that you want this property developed, and then you send out an email that says "stop overdevelopment." So when the residents receive that kind of information, that's misleading. That confuses people. That's what happens, and that's what's happened here.
But isn't it also true that when you vote for a property that's in need of redevelopment, a pilot is not the sole outcome? You can be creative about the zoning, about any environmental regulations. There's other alternatives, that a pilot is not the sole reason to declare an area in need of redevelopment?
In many, there are two primary reasons why municipalities embark on a redevelopment process. One is because they, they have an idea that there will be a pilot at the end of the day, or it may be that they want to create, I'll call it, legal spot zoning. In other words, there's a piece of property that has, uh, you know, they want to create a unique, uh, zone for inner zone, and they don't want to affect the rest of the zone. So you can use a redevelopment plan to create spot zoning. That was never contemplated yet. So, you know, it's not a guarantee. Obviously, there's a vote.
Right.
Is there, is there an expectation, uh, on all sides that that's, you know, kind of that we would be here tonight? Yes, there absolutely is.
So some of these landlords purchased these properties recently, as in 30 days ago, two and three years ago?
Well, we're not talking about Two and Three Campus. Save that. You, you just got, you just got handed a piece of paper with questions about Two and Three Campus.
No, this is the data from CoStar.
I, I understand, but we're not talking about Two and Three Campus. We will, but I don't think it would be fair to, to your colleagues or to the public to conflate two different, uh, applications here. So I'm happy to discuss Two and Three Campus when we're discussing Two and Three Campus, but right now we're discussing 249 Palmeroy.
Okay, I guess my last question then would be, moving forward, once this pilot passes, how do we say no to other industrial investors that want a pilot?
You're going to look at each case on a case-by-case basis. You know, that, that's what you do. That's what governing bodies do. They evaluate projects, areas, applications. I mean, look, you know, we're, we're here talking about a warehouse development, right? Um, there are a lot of places in New Jersey where warehouses aren't popular. Um, it's a great industry from a revenue perspective and a job-creating perspective for municipalities. Um, Parsippany is, is actually a pretty interesting, uh, place in that regard because of your access to highways, you're very attractive to, to this type of use. But you got to look at the location. You got to look at the location. I mean, you know, there are areas in town where you wouldn't want a warehouse. There are areas in town where you do. So it's, you know, similarly here, you're going to look at the circumstances of, of each project, of each proposal, of each deal. You're not, you're never saying, agree to one, agree to all. That you would never do that. No, no municipality would ever do that.
But don't you think what we're doing right now is unprecedented? Six pilots in 30 days with minimal amounts of information? Don't you think what we're doing right now is unprecedented?
No, and, and frankly, you, you don't have limited amounts of information. You have, you have the proformas, I, you know, we, we have confirmed with Mr. Hanley that he has the information that he needs or needed to do his evaluation. I mean, you know, and, and these projects have been in the pipeline for a long time. Uh, they, they, they run their course. Um, you know, that's what happens. And, and, you know, I think the other thing too is when we talk about Two and Three Campus, while they are two separate financial agreements, they are related. Um, and I'm going to point that out when we get to Two and Three Campus. Two Campus, Three Campus, and Seven Campus are all related. On Six Silven, those two pilots on Six Silven are related. They relate to one property. So you say six pilots, it's really three projects.
Okay, so let me, I guess my last question, and this is the multimillion-dollar question. Why do you think every developer has used you as the attorney?
Every developer? You mean every developer that's here tonight?
For the pilots.
Well, what do you mean by every developer?
Well, you're the attorney for every developer getting a pilot, correct?
I don't know who else has applied for what and have received what. I can tell you this about my credentials. I've probably done more financial agreements in Morris County than any other attorney, both on the developer side and on the municipal side. Uh, I've done on the, on the, uh, on the, on the developer side, I've done them in, in, in Monville, in Newton, in Denville, uh, in Hanover Township, in Mount Arlington. Um, you know, I've, I've done them, and I'm sure there's others, I'm just not remembering. I've been redevelopment council in Maristown for 14 years, as you know. All of the redevelopment that has occurred in Maristown over the last 14 years, I've been the attorney for it, we've done multiple financial agreements there. Uh, I was the attorney for Nutley, uh, for the redevelopment of the Hoffman LaRoche site and the development of the medical school, um, you know, down there on the, on the old Hoffman LaRoche site as well. So my office, that's just what I've done. My office has done an awful lot of financial agreement work. I just completed a very significant, uh, project also in Perth Amboy. So we've done, we've done a lot of work in this area, um, and I would have to say I've done more in Morris County than anyone that I know.
Mr. Iglesina, you mentioned that you have the developer here. I think at the time...
Well, for Two and Three Campus. We've heard from Mr. Bummer on 249 Palmeroy. I don't have any else on 249 Palmeroy.
Just one, one, one more thing. Whatever commercial railtors are reaching out to you and saying, you want to come here, send them my way. I'd like to meet with them. We have a lot of vacant office spaces, and possibly I can get them a, a home here.
That's not going to happen.
Would you like me to proceed with Two and Three Campus?
To be heard now, Two and Three Campus?
Or how do you, however you want to proceed.
Do you want to wait with Two and Three Campus until it comes up, and then we will have...
It's up, it's up to you.
Yeah, he was, he's, your developer is for Two and Three Campus?
Mr. Liddell is here for Two and Three Campus.
Okay, let's hold off on that. Like, you don't want to wait until we go through all of the ordinance specifically for that, or do you want to hear from them now?
He's already here. Why don't we just...
You want to hear him now?
It's not up to me. I don't want to...
How does the council feel? Do you want to hear from him now?
Let's have him.
Okay, sir?
All right, let me, I'm going to, a few, first of all, I passed this out, right? This is the illustration. Hopefully, everybody in the public has the illustration. Picture's worth a thousand words, so I want to, first of all, we've had some discussions in the past, uh, but this is, you know, this is the night of the vote, so we wanted to make sure that everybody clearly understood what we were talking about, and I want to make sure everybody understands the interrelationship between Two Campus, Three Campus, and Seven Campus. Now, there's a color code on the left. You'll see the purple, uh, area shaded on Campus Drive on the left, that's Two Campus. You will see the reddish shaded area on the right, that's Three Campus. The green area is Seven Campus. There is no Five Campus. The addresses go Three Campus and Seven Campus. The blue area between the red and the green is an easement that the owner of Three Campus has for its benefit on Seven Campus. That easement area is about one, little over an acre, it's 1.1 acres, and it comprises 82 parking spaces, okay? Just so everybody understands the lay of the land and the geography there. Both Two, a few points here, because again, we talk about overdevelopment, um, and I think that's not, that's not right. Both Two and Three Campus, a few facts. Both Two and Three Campus are part of Parsippany's third-round affordable housing settlement, um, which was done under the prior administration. That's neither here nor there. It's just, that's what it was. These, these have been in Parsippany's third-round affordable housing plan for a while. Both projects have already been zoned for multifamily housing with a combined, uh, affordable housing unit count of 82 affordable housing units, which of course equal 82 affordable housing credits. Those 82 affordable housing units, which we'll hear from, from Mr. Liddell in a moment, should generate about 51, uh, school children. Um, now, properties, and, you know, there's, there's, I'm going to say that Avalon Bay has site control of both properties. The MacCallie, and this was part of the MacCallie Center at one point, a MacCallie affiliate, uh, obtained site plan approval for 410 units total. Two and Three are technically two separate projects, but I'm going to talk about them as one, and you'll see why in a moment with affordable housing. So talking about those as one, even though they're technically two separate projects and technically two separate pilots, which is why, that's why we have more financial agreements. So you have 82 affordable units, 328 market rate units between the two. Again, that's already, that's already been established years ago. That's not new. We're not stopping overdevelopment here. not stopping over development here. So none of the market rate units have three-bedroom units, I wanna point that out. The number of bedrooms in the affordable units are established by state law, that's, nobody has control over that, there's regulations that address that. Now, as I said, recently Avalon Bay obtained site control of both two and three campus and went back to the planning board for amended approval. And one of the things that Avalon Bay did was to reduce the 82, is what Mr. Peril was getting to before, they reduced the 82 affordable housing units. Now, you gotta follow me here, this is gonna get a little, everybody still awake? Gotta follow this. All right. Reduced the 82 affordable housing units to 51 affordable housing units. And created 11 supportive housing units with 31 supportive housing bedrooms. Now, supportive housing is basically housing for challenged adults. If you're, I represent an autistic school, and, you know, children with autism, they go through the system, once you get to be about 21 years old, you're on your own, you know, your family's gotta tend to you, and that's the way it is. Supportive housing is a concept that is recognized under affordable housing, and you can provide housing for this very underserved segment of the population. And we did this, Avalon Bay did this, with the support of Fair Share Housing Center, that is, reduce the number of affordable housing units, okay? Now, we made up the credits with the supportive housing beds because supportive housing, and this is the point, they count the credits by the bedrooms and not by the units. So at the end of the day, Parsippany still has the same 82 credits that it's obligated to have, but it has 82, it has 50, 31 fewer, 51 fewer affordable housing units, okay? So the projection is, and you'll hear from Mr. Liddell, but I have a feeling he's gonna tell you that that's gonna be a reduction of about eight schoolchildren from what was previously approved. Supportive housing, of course, provides no schoolchildren at all, so to the extent that reducing schoolchildren is a policy goal, I don't know whether it is or it isn't, then Avalon Bay and Parsippany's planning board has already furthered that goal. And the financial agreement will help facilitate that result. So when I hear, when I read statements out there that pilots bring more students which will need more funding, that's just not a true statement. I wanna talk about seven campus, and as this relates to that. So you remember seven campus is the green area. You remember that we have the easement for three campus, we'll call that Avalon Bay property, has an easement over a portion of seven campus. Now, seven campus is owned by the Birch Group, that's a distressed property, that is a vacant office building, that is distressed debt, that building is unoccupied, vacant, and not going to be occupied as an office building again. Okay? So that building is, is not coming back for what it was. So if you're Avalon Bay, you know, that's a pretty enticing place for another multifamily apartment building with an affordable component. And it's a distressed property, my guess is Avalon Bay could get a pretty good deal on it at some point. Now, why do I say that at some point in the not-too-distant future, it's likely to be another multifamily housing development? Well, you know, Parsippany settled its third-round affordable housing obligation, but it did so without accounting for all of its third-round obligation. In fact, Parsippany has, and this is a fact, 462 units of unmet deed for round three. So whatever Parsippany's affordable housing obligation in round four, which as you all know starts July 1 of 2025, about 16 or so months from now, increased that round four obligation by 462 affordable units. Again, that's the fact. So, and this is where the policy comes in. The owner, the owner of seven campus gets an industrial plan, yes, and a pilot, it has agreed to preclude residential development there. This is an opportunity for you to take seven campus off the board for residential development, you know, the multifamily and the whole bit. And in return, the owner of seven campus would get industrial plan, they will be coming for it with a pilot, that is their expectation, and Avalon Bay would get a pilot on two and three campus. We believe that that creates a win-win-win. Again, the win for Parsippany, and this is a policy call, you taking seven campus off the board as a multifamily site. Seven campus, Parsippany gets a state-of-the-art industrial facility, yes, with a pilot, but you're also taking a vacant building and you're turning it into a revenue-producing entity now, a revenue-producing property now. The owner of seven campus, you know, we're just negotiating, just about done with the redevelopment plan now, and they are highly motivated to move on an expedited basis because we have a distressed property here financially. So that is, you know, that's basically what the story is between two and three and seven. And as the mayor indicated, I think he indicated this, is that, you know, for residential pilots, you decide your policy. I could tell you what other towns that I've been involved with typically do when it comes to residential, they typically say, there's gotta be some other benefit for the township before they consider, you know, a pilot on a residential. That's, that's typically the policy. Here, the benefit would be, if you see it as a benefit, is that there's gonna be, never going to be residential on seven campus. Now, what I've just described has been agreed to between Avalon and seven campus, there is an agreement, sent that agreement over to the town attorney's office. You know, if they, it's been signed, but if they have comments or tweaks that they need to ensure that the agreement does what it needs to do from Parsippany's perspective, you know, we'll do that. What I'm outlining for you is, is the deal, you know, that's, that's what's been agreed to. So at this point in time, I'd just like to introduce Ronald Dell for a moment from Avalon Bay, have him tell you a little bit about Avalon Bay.
Thank you, good evening, as late it is in the evening, I've met most of you before, and it's a pleasure to be here. I wanna just describe Avalon Bay for a few minutes to you and the public behind me, and then respond to a few topics that have been raised, because I'm confused about a few things that you'll hear about. Let me start by Avalon Bay. We are a public company, we're large, I didn't think that was a bad thing. We are a REIT, it's a term that people are throwing around, REIT is a real estate investment trust. I don't know why people think there's something negative about that. What that means is that 90% of the money we make every year get back to our shareholders, which we have hundreds of thousands of shareholders. 90% of the money we make goes back to the shareholders, that's what a REIT is. There's private REITs, there's public REITs, we're a REIT. Our home office is in Arlington, Virginia, we have operations in 12 states and DC. The office in New Jersey is in Westfield. We have over 200-plus employees in New Jersey. I'm the senior vice president in charge of everything that happens in New Jersey with Avalon Bay for over 21 years. And just from a perspective of geography for a minute, while I'm no longer a Parsippany resident, when I first got married, I did become a Parsippany resident. I grew up in West Orange, I now live in Livingston, where my wife grew up. I am not this out-of-towner that some people have associated, at least I'm perceiving it that way, tonight and two weeks ago about what happens in Parsippany. In fact, and I've talked to the mayor about this and others, I've been trying to find an opportunity in Parsippany for Avalon Bay for decades. And this opportunity came about a few years ago, when as you heard, I think Mr. Handley said, that MacCalli, now called Verus, failed. Largest office owner, operator in New Jersey, and their properties did not make any more sense, and sold many properties, including this in Parsippany, and by the way, for me in Roseland too. Avalon Bay acts as their own general contractor. We hire subcontractors and GCs. We have built about 25 communities in New Jersey, we typically employ 300 to 400 people in each one of our communities. That includes local employment, union and non-union laborers all the time. We manage every one of our properties ourselves, we don't do third-party management for anyone, we operate our own properties for ourselves. So what I say to the mayor, the business administrator, the construction official, if you have any problem with Avalon Bay, you call me, and I'm in Westfield, and I'll come and solve that problem. You're not calling a GC, third party, we're responsible for what we do. And in addition, because it came up in a different context from some members of the public, we are not merchant builders. Merchant building is a company that operates, gets entitlements, builds the project, usually even during lease-up or in the first year, sells the property. We don't do that. We own property for 10, 20, 30, 40 years. We've been in New Jersey in one property in West Windsor for oh, close to 40 years at this point. We redevelop properties over time. We don't flip properties. We do sell about 2% of our portfolio a year. So sometimes we do sell, but very, very rarely, and people I think should understand that. We partner with the local community. So whatever that particular town's needs are, for some, it's Memorial Day parades, others it's July 4th fireworks. I'm not a Parsippany resident, you're the experts, and the people behind me are the experts on what's needed in Parsippany. We wanna be a part of that, we wanna be your community partner, and that's part of the reason why we're gonna be with you, if we're successful here, for decades. That's an elevator speech at Avalon Bay in a few minutes. I do wanna refute, and I do wanna talk about demographic, demographic, who lives with us, but I'm perplexed by one of the public members who, two weeks ago and tonight, said something that is completely false. We do not own two campus, we have not closed on two campus. So when people come up to you and tell you, paraphrasing, "Hey, these companies already own this property, you don't have to..." We do not own two campus. We do own three campus. We are under contract to purchase two campus. Just wanna set that straight, it's confusing to me why someone who I think checked the deed records thinks I own something I didn't pay for. So I just want you to understand it upfront. School-aged children. Before you talk about school-aged children, I think you should understand who lives in an Avalon Bay community. Now, Avalon Bay has a lot of units. I have over 7,000, 7,000 units in New Jersey, over 90,000 units countrywide. We kinda know who lives in our, in our, in our communities, and we're proud of it. In New Jersey, in suburban communities, and I'm in, as the mayor's alluded to in other contexts, Wharton and Booton and Florham Park and Bloomingdale and Roseland and Maplewood, that's Essex, Morris, and a Passaic County town. Generally, we have a barbell situation. I'm 62 years old, I'm an empty nester. People like me wanna get out of their home and go to a high-quality, best-in-class apartment community. It's not what has been built 30, 40 years ago, which many people live in, whether it's in Parsippany or in Livingston or West Orange, it doesn't matter. But when you come to an Avalon Bay community, you're what's known as a renter by choice. You have a household income to buy a home or a condominium. Generally, the people who live in our communities have a household income 50% higher than the residents elsewhere in town. 50% higher. So they're choosing a rental lifestyle because they find the amenities attractive, they want flexibility, they're downsizing maybe before they go into a senior citizen facility. The other side of the barbell is young marriages. Now, many cases, there, and some members of the public said this before, in a different context, people that grew up in Parsippany or Morris County, they wanna come back to this area because their doctors are here, their family is here, they understand the area, and they wanna then come to our community, stay for a few years, and in many cases, after they're done leasing, buy in Parsippany or Hanover Township, or whatever it might be. Those two demographics, which are a significant population of our residences, don't have school-aged kids. Yes, some of the young marriages have toddlers, two and three years old, but what they typically find, because our units are not that large, is they need more space when that two and three-year-old becomes five, seven, nine years old. They wanna buy a home or a condominium. We are a feeder at some level for Parsippany, for people that wanna buy into the home market or the condominium market, as it might be. So when you talk about school-aged children, there's been a lot of studies that have been done. And thank you, Councilman Mazzella, you actually looked up my Booton numbers, and I appreciate it, I wrote it down, and you're generally correct about that. But something you should know about Booton, while it doesn't have affordable, it actually has three-bedroom market rate units. And to Parsippany's credit, and I don't take any responsibility for this, because I bought an entitled, or I'm about to buy an entitled community, you didn't allow three-bedroom market rate units. There are 34 three-bedroom market rate units in Booton, which you should all understand, the more bedrooms in a unit, the more likelihood of school-aged children. And for affordables, I don't cast any aspersions one way or the other, but there are many more school-aged children in affordable units than compared to market rate units. How do I know this? Because, you know, wearing a different hat, on the chair of the Rutgers Center for Real Estate, we've done studies of 40,000 apartment homes throughout New Jersey. Now, you should distinguish, by the way, when you do this, both on bedroom distribution, market and affordable, the age of the community, because that dictates really who lives there, and at some level you even do it on an income basis. And I was surprised to see the Board of Ed, who has their own demographic study, June 2020, which did a very detailed analysis of at that point your school-aged children population in for-sale environments and in rental environments. So I was really surprised when I saw the Board of Ed press release, which completely contradicted the Board of Ed demographic study. The press release says that the, I'm reading, historically, there's been an average of .4 students enrolled through each such unit. Yet their own demographic study says it's .211, almost half. And the one comparable community in their own demographic study is the Mark, which is even lower, .13. Why is the Mark the only comparable community at this time? Because it's the only one built in the last 20 years. So if you look at it from a demographic, aesthetic point of view, the Mark is more likely comparable to Avalon Bay than anything else. Now, I don't know why those numbers would be so off, so I'm gonna reiterate what Mr. Inglisino already indicated. Based on the appropriate Rutgers multipliers, which is what your planning board uses, which is what every planning board in the state of New Jersey uses right now, the, we estimate that we're gonna end up with 43 school-aged children because of the reduction in the affordable units, which Mr. Inglisino explained, 82 down to 51 plus 11 supportive housing units. I have nothing against school-aged children, that it's not a policy decision for me to make, I'm not an elected official, but we wanna serve the underserved population, that's why we're doing it. I live in Livingston, there are six or eight group homes for special needs adults, and that's wonderful. In fact, one's across the street from me. But in those special needs group homes, what happens is, and while there's care for those individuals, there's no amenities that they share, there's no community around them, it's a separate group home. In an Avalon Bay community, and our first one that we're doing with special needs is in Princeton, we're gonna be able to provide to the special needs adults with supervision, and in there we use Arkham Mercer County, here it might be United Way, we haven't made that decision yet, but we wanna provide a different environment for special needs adults that heretofore has not been provided to them. And we're very proud to be able to do that, if we can move forward with this tonight, in Parsippany. So I wanna understand why I'm committed to provide that type of housing with special needs. It really relates to a godson I have who is on the spectrum in Massachusetts and has the ability to live in housing that we don't often provide in New Jersey, and that's the background with regard to it. So that's really, I can talk more about school-aged children, I think Mr. Handley may cover some of that, because we provided him all the information he requested with regard to that. The only other topics that I, I wanted to cover very quickly, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, I came to the meeting two weeks ago, I listened to the meeting four weeks ago, so I think I'm up to date about what's been said. And mayor, and Mr. Cissé, and Mr. Handley, and I know Mr. Karifi said this also, it's not just Parsippany that's as office building environment is occurring. The two community, two sites I'm building or under contract for in Roseland, office buildings, Saddle River Office Building, Wayne Office Building, Princeton Office Building, Booton Office Building, Wayne 2 Office Building, that's just Avalon Bay. Every one of those sites is a vacant office building that 20, 30, 40 years ago was a Class A office building. And in every one of those towns, and I hope it is tonight too, except for one, I got a pilot in every one of those towns. I've received 13, soon to be 14, I'm not counting here, somewhere else, pilots throughout New Jersey. It's reached a point for the reasons you've heard from Mr. Handley and Mr. Inglisino, that towns come to me and say, "We want to do a pilot with you," because they have determined the benefits far exceed what they believe the cons. And for the members of the public, there are pros and cons, there's no doubt about it. But when I think you understand the school-aged children scenario, understand the benefits with regard to it, including no tax appeals, I think the benefits far outweigh the cons. And then the last topic I'll cover before I answer any questions, two weeks ago and tonight, comments came about, what happens if a property fails? What does that mean? So let me just respond to that in a few different ways. Mr. Inglisino already explained that our registers are aligned in a gross revenue pilot. By the way, there's another type of pilot that we didn't pursue, that's based on percentage of construction costs. I don't advocate that for towns, and I have one of those, but I don't think you should do that. We stayed with a gross revenue pilot, which is what we wanted to do. So when you say, and I know you know this already, every dollar that I collect, you get 10% or 11%, what it might be. Let me remind you for a second, that's every dollar I collect on rent, on pet fees, on late fees, on a soda that you buy in my gym, you get X percent on every dollar, and I was already answered Mr. Mazzella's question, we are audited. By the way, we pay for the audit, we pay the administrative fee. We pay the administrative fee, two percent. You pay nothing. And I have to give you that audit annually. Towns want, in my opinion, towns now want that protection, no tax appeals, have that revenue together. So I've been around a long time. I've been around for the G F C, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, COVID, whatever happened. Yes, during those times, does our occupancy go down? Does our overall revenue go down? Yes. But unlike an office building, they may go from ninety-five percent occupied to zero, even during the worst days of COVID or better than G F C, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, occupancy went from about ninety-eight to about ninety-four. It didn't go lower than ninety-four. It never is really going to go lower than ninety-four. Why? Because unlike an industrial office user, I set my rents to market annually, so I can adjust it. So if I see something happening, I am going to lower rents. Now, you're going to get a little less revenue, but think about the opposite without a pilot. I would, Mayor, apologize, I would immediately file a tax appeal if I lost that revenue, and I would win. And I, I think the mayor did a very good job last time around, eloquently. It's unfair to me, I'm a New Jersey resident, I am an attorney, I've been around doing this for a long time, that the municipality bears the burden of all the recipients of the tax dollars. You asked the Board of Ed, would they share in a tax appeal? I assume they said no when you asked that question, because it saddles on you and no one else. The school's still going to get their money. So I believe wholeheartedly that pilots are beneficial, not just for me, and they are, but also for you for the reasons that have been described. And I, I wanted to spend a few seconds, even though it's late in the evening, explaining that as best as I can. So those are the topics I wanted to cover. Councilmen, I'm here to answer any of the questions that you and others may have.
Well, we have a development. What about the snow garbage? Can you just?
Sure. So what I've done in all my pilots, in the redevelopment agreement, I agree to take care of all those services at my cost. I have the right, by the way, to ask for reimbursement of some of those costs. I don't ask for that reimbursement.
And is that the Kelly Act?
That is the Kelly Act. And, 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 you know, I've done these pretty regularly. We put it right in the redevelopment agreement, that is for thirty years, as you've heard previously. Um, we think that because of the benefits we're getting from the town and because we want to provide services to our residents, so for example, I'm in some towns that pick up garbage once a week. That's not acceptable to me. So I'm going to pick up garbage twice a week, or sometimes I want to do more than that, I'm going to pay for that. And that's the Kelly Act, and we do other provisions, you don't, the town, I said, the town doesn't have to reimburse me for any of those Kelly Act items whatsoever, and we're going to put it right in our redevelopment agreement, so it's binding on me. If I ever sold it to someone, it would be binding on them too.
Council, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, and thank you for coming here and being with us so late. My first question in, in the two and three Avalon agreements, it says that the annual service charge start date, which is when the municipality starts collecting money, says that it's the first day of the month immediately following the substantial completion of the project. In your estimation, when, when would that be?
Am I getting approved tonight so I can answer when I can start?
Well, you have four yes votes, so.
I don't know why I have any votes, Mr. Mazzella, you may know that, but I certainly don't know that. If you're asking me for timing, well, you just heard I don't even own two campus, so I have to buy the other property.
But so then, why, why are you buying it without even knowing that you're going to get a pilot?
Well, I'm a little confused. I said I haven't bought it yet.
Well, you, you did say that you bought.
I bought three campuses, right? Why?
Before you even received a pilot.
Well, give me a few, give me a few answers. I think Mr. Inglisino covered it pretty well. I've been in front of the planning board many, many months ago. This process started, I don't know the exact month, but we were hopeful and anticipated that we could get a pilot. And as Mr. Inglisino explained a little more detail for the first time with this map that he showed, uh, let me give you a little more aspect of it. We had the opportunity to buy seven campuses. But don't think. Mr. Mazzella, let me just finish, I'm happy to answer your question, let me finish. We had the opportunity to buy seven campuses, and as Mr. Inglisino indicated, uh, my job is to find opportunities to build multifamily communities. We would love to build a multifamily community on seven campuses. But it occurred to us, after speaking to the administration, that there was a win-win opportunity for everyone involved here. So we thought it might be better to pursue a pilot, forego the opportunity. The agreement that Mr. Lavery has simply also says that I am agreeing not to pursue in perpetuity residential on seven campuses, even though, as you can see by my easement, I have pretty leverage, pretty good leverage on that property. So when we looked at it, or it was my call actually, I thought the better decision to be made for both the town and for me, once I got my amended site plan approval, was to pursue a pilot, which again, you heard me think, I think it's benefit for both of us, and forego the opportunity on seven campuses, which I think helps the town with regard to their shortfall and takes it off the picture at this point.
But you bought the property in October twenty twenty-three for thirteen million four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, correct?
I trust you looked up the deed.
I did, I did.
Okay.
So, so don't you think, you know, your words were, we were hopeful that we would get a pilot. Don't you think it stands to reason that there was a lot more than hope that motivated you to spend thirteen and a half million dollars to buy this property?
No. I could tell you, without getting.
So if you got.
Mr. Mazzella, let me finish before I start to answer, it'd be helpful to me. I could tell you that, um, I am not at all confident that without a pilot, we would move forward to two or three campuses. We could mothball three campuses, that would cause, in my opinion, Parcipity's problems with their round three. Because what happens is, you have an obligation by the time either the midpoint review, which is potentially passed for Parcipity, or when you finish round three, that fair share will come in and say, which of these projects got built, which did not get built? And there's other towns where we're actually pursuing that. So for towns that have projects that were even approved, more than even zoned, that did not get built, the obligation then becomes for a town to potentially provide a resale opportunity to find another site for zoning. So I'm not committing one way or the other tonight. I do believe that if we should be fortunate enough to get the pilot tonight, we will move forward and purchase two campus and build on both two and three campus. But if we don't get the pilot, I don't know that we would continue to purchase two, and I don't know what we would do with three campuses at this point.
Well, you're, you're a smart company, your stock share's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, I just looked it up.
It was two hundred and fifty-nine, Mr. Mazzella, but keep going.
All right, sure. So anyway, though, you mean to tell me that if we told you no, that you would not receive a pilot, the thirteen and a half million dollars that you spent on three campuses, you guys would just mothball it, walk away? Is that really how you would maximize?
Mothballing and walk away are two different things. Okay. You understand the distinction, I just wanted to.
Explain it for everybody.
Sure. Walking away means I'm never going to build the property, I may try to just monetize it or something else. Mothballing is waiting for a better day. So again, I go back to the mayor's comments. I'm, I was dismayed when the Fed did what they did back in February two thousand twenty-two and the impact of that with regard to what's happening. You've heard about the office market, let me tell you about the multifamily market. I can live, give you, and I'm not going to list them, but I know of about half a dozen projects in Morris County and Essex County that are not moving forward right now, solely because of interest rates. One of them is in Randolph, okay, I'll just give you one town, because I know who it is. And they've decided that they don't have the ability to move forward because of the status of the capital markets right now. That is a real, it's a reality that we face. So if we did mothball it, we would hope, I don't know when, it'd be a year, two, three, I live in, I work in a cyclical business. At some point, interest rates and cap rates will change, it'll be more advantageous. But, and you're going to hear from Mike Handley still, I, I think he may agree with me that based on the cost of this project, projected revenue, without a pilot, it's, I don't want to take us thunder, but it may even be negative leverage. That's how difficult this challenge is today.
Mm-hmm. When it comes to three, uh, three campuses, I'm looking in the agreement right now, uh, it's, says it's two hundred and thirty-eight unit inclusionary multifamily building. So we were given, you know, the heartwarming story that it would go to families or individuals with special needs.
Well, only some of the units.
Only some of those units.
Yeah.
So what guarantees do we have that it won't go to families who will bring, as you had said, school age children into the school districts?
Mr. Mazzella, maybe, maybe you don't understand what rights I have and what control I have, but let's break that down a little bit. With regard to affordable and special needs, I'm guaranteeing that because it's a deed restriction, each of those units. The deed restriction is thirty years, and I would tell you that under law that I was involved in in a case, it's probably perpetual. So for those units, they're always going to be affordable or special needs. If you're asking me, what can I do to guarantee, which is the word you continually use in these discussions, that I'm going to have a certain number of school age kids? I can't guarantee that, because it would be violating the Fair Housing Act to do that. The only way that you can limit school age children is you have a senior project, which under the Fair Housing Act and other provisions, is sixty-two with some exceptions to fifty-five. That is not what this town decided two or three campuses should be. You did the zoning. I didn't do the zoning. You approved the site plan. I didn't even own, I didn't even own the property then. You've made the policy decision already to make this a market rate inclusionary project. I just have the opportunity to go under contract to then ultimately hopefully build this project. But I don't build senior housing. There are other companies that do that. And by the way, senior housing market is in worse shape than the multifamily market, because they have, I'm overstating it, and I apologize for being simplistic, they have almost no funding for senior housing at this point. There's a lot of reasons why that is, but that's not what Parcipity decided should happen on two and three campuses. You have the ability to zone other sites if you want them for age restricted, and I won't be the buyer, but there may be people that would do that. That's how you would guarantee no school age children.
So we have many landlords in town who have owned their properties for decades that have received no pilots. What would you say to them that they now are asking the very fair question, why can't we get a pilot? What, what makes you so special compared to the other landlords who, for their time, have paid their taxes?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. First of all, you should never compare one project to another. Every project stands on its own. Secondly, um, and I lived in one of those communities, I, I lived in Rutgers Village, okay? I had a wonderful time for my year there. I know the owner of Rutgers Village, he has on that property, I think since the sixties or seventies, I may be off a little bit. The return that that person has received, or the family has received in those years is significant. And I don't think they're in need of financial assistance. That's one answer. Sorry? And the second answer is, they're not eligible. We, I'm sorry, I forgot your colleague's name.
Rich.
Rich. Rich just went through, so the whole group here, what the sequence and process is with regard to that. If a property is already built and stabilized, they are not, I don't like the term blight, and people don't really use the term blight, they would no longer qualify as an area need of redevelopment. That is a prerequisite to get that done. You seem to couch these things in fairness and unfairness. If that owner of Rutgers Village or something else wanted to buy another site that then qualified under the planner that you might refer to, to the planning board, they'd be eligible, you can decide if they get it or not, for a pilot. But I don't think the way you're describing it i- is the way it should be viewed at. We are in two thousand twenty-three in December. It's today's market terms and it's today's zoning. I have no idea what happened in these other apartment communities. Maybe they got extra zoning, maybe they didn't. Maybe, I know the costs were different, I know the rates were different, and I don't know your background, but I know the cap rates were different too. And cap rates drive everything about an analysis of real estate. So I don't think you could say, I don't think it's fair, you can say whatever you want, in a vacuum to say, well, they didn't get something when they built it, in my case, fifty years ago, and now you're getting something now, that's not fair. And again, I, I keep going back to what the mayor said. I think he articulated very succinctly, today is a unique situation when you have seventeen empty office buildings or eighteen, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty, that's a, that's a crisis at this point. I just gave you a list of all the towns I'm buying empty office buildings from. That's a unique situation. I would love the office market to come back. Why? Because that helps me have rents, if people want to live in suburbia, that's where I really focus my efforts. But in my opinion, I don't think that any of those people, many of them I know, think this is unfair. In fact, a lot of those owners are buying new property.
And they're going to want pilots.
They, they may, but.
Yeah.
But, but you seem to think pilots are a bad thing, I respectfully.
Well, because you represent developers, of course, that's your job. Your job is to advocate on behalf of your developed, the developed developers. That's what you're here to do. Our job is here to represent the public and defend the taxpayers who are impacted by these agreements. So of course, you're the devil's advocate and a really good devil.
I didn't call you a name, so don't call me a devil's advocate. There's fifty-six thousand or so people in Parcipity. There's clearly a hundred-plus people here and two weeks ago, and they are passionate, and I listened to them and went online, I listened to your Facebook, I tried to get as much knowledge as possible. There is a difference of opinion. It's an honest opinion. I don't call you a name, you shouldn't call me a name. I believe, whether I was on that side of the dais or on this side, I would, if I was on that side, I would understand in this particular case, on a case-by-case basis, why a pilot would be appropriate. And I think in this, respectfully, it would be appropriate in this case. And I, I was very candid with you. Not all my communities have pilots, but in other ones, I got higher density, in other ones, I did other things with regard to it. This site was already zoned. I didn't need any zoning assistance here. But sometimes you have those discussions too.
And I, I'd like to add one thing, because, uh, Councilman, you seem to continue to say you're looking out for the taxpayer, that you're the only one looking out. Well, me, me might see it differently, myself, the four council members. That doesn't mean we're not looking out for the taxpayers, and we don't get any tax money, and we don't do nothing, then we're not looking out for the taxpayer. So that's the difference. You can't keep saying that you're looking out for them, we all are. And I respect your opinion on that. That's why you can vote no tonight. It's that simple. The bottom line is, you keep hearing the forecast. Now, you, you quoted CoStar, somebody called it CoStar.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, CoStar said, there's no recovery in the office market, in fact, lenders, developers are giving back the key to the, to where they live. They're giving it back, they don't, they can't, they can't afford to stay. And this is in New Jersey. Because why? They can't even, um, reinvest, they can't, because the market's so, the rates are so high, that CoStar even says, if towns don't start doing something, you're going to see a crisis in your community that you're not going to be able to recover from. Well, we're not going to see the office market come back to twenty forty. I know one thing, I hope I'm alive by then, but I know one thing, I can't wait that long. So to sit here and say no one else is looking out for the taxpayer, I'm looking out for the taxpayer, Councilman Negus is looking out for the taxpayer, Councilman DePiero, Councilwoman Granati, Councilman Karifi are looking out for the taxpayers as well. And Councilman Mazzella, if that's how he feels, he's looking out for the taxpayer, he's also looking out for the taxpayer. But we cannot continue to say we're not, we are. Now, you've heard several things tonight with regards to you speaking to a realtor. Please send them my way. I heard at the last meeting, we had professional realtors in the audience, and the two came I heard at the last meeting, we had professional Realtors in the audience, and the two came up that were supposedly professional Realtors, well, bring some business here. Precipity's wanting for business, because if we don't do something, our competition is, guess what? Handover township, I spoke to the mayor already, farm park, Fulton Township, these are our competitors now. Why? Because they're gonna do pilot programs. Because of the market, it's market-driven. They're not doing it because they want to do it. Of course, I don't want to do pilot programs if I don't have to. The council doesn't want to do them if they don't have to. But if they don't do something, I could tell all the school board members, okay, you're getting no money. It's that simple. And then you come up here tonight and you tell me in the back, give me $25,000 per pupil. Give me 2.4 million back in lost radibles. I mean, this is what this is coming to. So let's just talk about that real quick, and I'll let you finish the rest of this meeting. Let's talk about that real quick. You heard the comment made that we have to give $25,000 per pupil, okay? Let's take a house, assess that $10,000 in taxes. Assess the $10,000. They got four school-aged children in the house. I'm gonna give you $25,000 for each student. When the taxes are $10,000, I'm gonna give you $100,000? It doesn't work that way. So it doesn't work that way. Absolutely not. It does not. So every taxpayer, you get a tax bill, right? You have kids going to school. Are you gonna give $21,000? No! It doesn't work that way, Tim, and you know it. So that being said, so that being said, when the school board wants to come up here and sit there and say, you gotta give per pupil, you're out of your mind. And the reason why is because it doesn't work that way. The system doesn't work that way. It's determined by who? The Morris County Board of Taxation. That's who decides how the taxes are split up. Now, I never said the township wasn't gonna negotiate with the school board. I didn't say that. And continuing to say our kids are gonna suffer, that's just a mantra. To make everybody feel that kids will not suffer. You have to educate them. Just like every time you come to a school board meeting, we have no choice but to educate. The state says we have to educate. But what the state doesn't do is mandate. You know where you need to go? You need to go to the legislators who create these laws. That's where you need to go. And Tim, you can grab a hammer all you want.
Please, 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 no outbursts.
So my point is this. You want the town to do the job of the school board. Okay, then maybe when your budgets come up, we'll get involved. No, we'll get involved. We'll get involved.
Mr. Barrios, please.
Please, please, keep it down.
Please.
Hey, please, enough, have some respect.
Please sit down.
Have some respect.
Please sit down. Please.
I think we should.
Enough, just sit down. Everybody else was respectful when you were talking.
Why do be quiet?
Okay, do you want to get expelled from this room? Because that's very easily accommodating you. Either you sit down, listen, and please be quiet.
I think we should end the whole discussion. We've made the point over and over again.
Yes, all points are made. Thank you. Ordinance, please, Mr. DePiero. Mr. Iglesina, would you like to speak again, or may we please close off your portion?
We don't have anything further to say, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Any additions from?
All right, ordinances.
No, no, no. There's no conversation now. You'll have an open session in a few moments with each of these ordinances.
Ordinance 2023:39. Ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris, authorizing the execution of financial agreement with the Township and Par Development Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as Block 202, Lot 3.8, in accordance with the long-term tax exemption law NJSA 48:20-1 et cec. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on December 5, 2023, and that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on December 19, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as a matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction there being published in the official newspaper according to law. This says December 19, we're gonna vote final.
That is, you are gonna be voting December 19. This is the introduction.
This is the introduction.
This is introduction.
Okay. Okay, be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction there being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
No.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Okay, we have four yeses, one no. Motion passes.
Fellow councilmen, please review the second reading and public hearing from 1 to 9.
And then we, ordinance number 10, item number 10 on page 4, ordinance 2023:26. I would like a motion to carry, please.
Motion, second.
Who made the motion? Mr. Neglia?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Neglia made the motion, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. This will be carried until the 19th for the record. Ordinance 2023:27.
Ordinance 2023:27, ordinance of the Township Precipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris, authorizing the execution of financial agreement with the Township and AR at Precipity Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as Block 737, Lot 3, in accordance with the long-term tax exemption law NJSA 48:1 et cec. The notice for ordinance 2023:27 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on November 16, 2023, and introduced at the November 9, 2023, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2023:27 be heard in their second and final reading by title only by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up, make a motion to open up the public hearing for this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Graniani.
Yes.
The floor is open for the public to speak on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak. Please state your questions, return back to your seat, and the council administration may or may not answer your questions.
My name is Hank Heller, and I want to thank you for your presentation and your explanation. You did an excellent job, sir. I wish that we'd had this explanation much earlier in your process. I think that it would have been very, very helpful if everyone could have heard, as well as each of you. I think that where we really made a mistake is, however, I don't think that you folks had gotten your financial projections on this and the entire package, so that you could study the entire situation. Instead, you've been looking at it piecemeal, and we, the public, have been, I think, abused by this, okay? I think that your process is wrong. I think that you need to have entire packages so that we can understand, in fact, that you may be doing something that's good for us, or we may disagree and tell you that we think you're doing the wrong thing. But I think that the process is very much flawed.
Anyone else like to come forward?
I truly don't enjoy coming to these meetings. But, you know, that being said, Mayor, threats by a public official is a crime in New Jersey. If they continue.
If you're gonna talk about the subject area.
You'll be served. I'm only echoing what you presented to the public.
Okay.
Okay?
Good, and I'm gonna read a text.
I'm sure, I'm sure you will. What did I say?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Which part?
Beginning.
Beginning.
I said threats by a public official.
This is about the ordinance, right?
Yeah, it's about the ordinance.
It's a public hearing about the ordinance.
So I'd like to understand how you're gonna take over the school board.
It's about the ordinance only. That's what this is about.
Okay. I'm just, we'll cite the record later on. So the developer said, there'll be 43 school-aged children. We can argue about the number, because it's hypothetical, we have no idea. But the New Jersey Department of Education says that in Precipity, it costs $21,800. And I get the mayor's point. We don't assess each family that amount per child. Single people in the town, people without children who own real estate, own property that pays taxes, all pay into the municipal tax, and school tax, fire tax, et cetera. So it's collectively providing a pool of money that educates students in Precipity, pays for fire, pays for police, et cetera. The issue is taking a commercial piece of property that's generating X amount of dollars in revenue, developing it so now that it has individuals living there who will consume the services of the township, carving out the improvements that that developer will make and only allowing, in this case, the school district, a portion of the land tax. So let's use simple numbers, right? So 43 kids, it's about a million dollars in extra cost to the town. Now, you say this won't impact the school district, but those children coming from that development, there's no tax that the school district is gonna receive, the most 21 from those 43 students, that's gonna offset in any way that million dollars of expense. It's not gonna happen. So what'll happen is the school district will have to look at its budget and make cuts. Academic programs, sports programs, music, you name it. Because, as you rightly said, we're limited to 2% cap, and we don't want to tax the taxpayers. That's not our goal.
That's Pomeroy.
Oh, only, okay, let me come back then. Let me come back, I apologize.
This is Pomeroy.
Just to be clear, we're on Pomeroy Warehouse, correct?
Correct.
That's right. We are committing ourselves to a 30-year pilot program, if you pass this, because, one, you seem to think if something doesn't get done this month or next month, the world is gonna come to an end here. I would propose, I mean, if we had nothing there for a year and something gets built in 2025 at regular market tax rates, the town's gonna come out far better than rushing into this 30-year commitment. So I would ask you to consider that. Two, there is demand for warehouses, as Councilman Musella has pointed out, as we all know. We all know that there's a problem with office space. We don't have to get a lecture on that all the time, we know it. We also know that there's demand for warehouses. A lot of towns fight against it. Precipity is in favor of warehouses in the proper place, and Pomeroy Road is the proper place. But why do we have to give them a pilot is the big question. And I would respectfully ask you to not give them a pilot and give this some time to develop. Thank you.
Nick Comiac, I have to agree with Bernie just said. And it seems a 30-year pilot for something that's in demand, these warehouses are all over the place, and corporate moguls, like, what's it, Jeff Bezos is shooting rockets into space. And you heard, his obligation is not to Precipity, it's to his $13 million investment that he will get a pilot deal and to the stockholders, to the stockholders.
It's on Pomeroy.
So, yeah, Pomeroy. There's no way in the world that a warehouse should get this pilot deal. And it seems, when they say, no tax appeal, you don't have to worry about tax appeals, well, you don't need them, because you have the pilot deal. But how do you stop the routine tax appeals that are gonna take place? So in a way, in the long term, this is gonna just accelerate a loss of revenue in this town. And sooner or later, you're gonna have to get frugal in some way. Because the corporations are dominating the, our ability to have any democracy at all for their profits. But short and simple, a warehouse at this time and place, when Amazon, the owner of Amazon is shooting rockets into space, no way. Precipity set itself up because of the highway system, and when we say overdevelopment, we mean what has already happened. And that happened because of short-term thinking, speculation, development, you made too many office spaces, and now you're stuck, and now you can't accept the fact that you have a housing responsibility. Well, maybe we should give the pilot deals for the housing, because people do afford, need affordable housing. So if you're gonna give a pilot deal, give it to a developer who wants to give you 100% affordable housing. But these corporate developers don't deserve it, and especially for the warehouse. If you're having a hard time following me, then stop and ask me a question.
All right.
No pilot deals for this warehouse. No way.
Come even on table, Nick.
Anyone else like to come up? And speak of the Pomeroy development.
I'm speaking of the Pomeroy, but just a general question regarding pilots. As I understood it, I'm a rookie on this, so we're locking into a 30-year deal that can't be, we can't make it a shorter deal, can't be a 10-year deal. And I'm just asking, instead of calling it a pilot, we could do any kind of deal we can. Why can't we do a deal for a 10-year option? We'd have the option to, a 30-year deal with an option to renew at 10 years. Gives the town some flexibility along the way. Why are we locking into a deal for 30 years?
Because that's what the statute allows you to do, and you can't deviate from it.
We don't have to do the statute. We could just do a deal or a deal with a developer.
You're not allowed to do that. For taxes, you can only do what the statutes, the state laws allow you to do. So you can't make separate deals on taxes with anybody. Unless it's approved by state.
Don't you see there's a problem with that?
I have a problem with a lot of laws that the state passes, but I'm just telling you what the law is.
So, what's that is correct, is deviation from your typical taxation formula process.
Excuse me, sir, would you please come up and speak? Thank you.
Because it's a deviation from your normal taxation process, you have to follow the statute strictly. So the statute allows a max up to 30 years. The first phase has to be a minimum of six years, no more than 15, and then varying, minimum of one year, no more than, was it eight, seven? Six, six, six thereafter. So you don't have to have a 30-year term. You have to have a minimum of, that'd be 11, I think, your term, is on the short end, six, one, one, one. Or any time in between, but you can't, you have to stay within that range. You can't do a 10-year term with a 10-year kicker down the road on different percentages.
Can you please explain that again?
Sure. So the statute.
So just so I understand, is it all or nothing? It's 30 years or nothing?
No.
Okay.
It's not 30 years or nothing on the term.
That's what we understood.
This is what, okay.
That's what we understood.
No, it's not 30 years or nothing on the term. The Long-Term Tax Exemption Act allows you up to 30 years. There's a minimum of, your first term has to be at least six years up to 15. So if you go with at least six year for the first phase, I'll use the term phase, before you ramp up to your next percentage increase, which has to be a minimum of one year or up to six years, and then one year, six year, one year, six year, as you move up to getting at.
That question was asked at the very beginning of the evening, and we were told it had to be 30 years.
Well, that was, that came out of my mouth, then I misspoke or misheard the question. That was not my intention. It's, under the statute, it's up to 30 years.
And that's what we're.
And that's, correct, up to 30 years.
Again, why are we considering a deal for 30 years? So again, why are we considering, in the corporate world, I would never do a deal for 30 years. I would do something, a renewal, something that renews for a certain period of time with the option to do something further. There is value, corporate financial theory, there is value in options. And we should have the option somewhere along the line to either stay in the deal or change the deal. And I think the town would be a lot happier if there was like some flexibility in that way.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Right, so that's what you can't do, though. Once it's set, it's set. So whatever your length, whatever the term of the agreement is, that's the term of the agreement. You cannot do what you just proposed.
That is for pilot, right?
Correct.
Okay, there's no, excuse me, there's no interaction here.
So what you proposed there is what you can't. You cannot do that. It's gotta be, once the financial agreement is set and it's adopted and it's implemented, the term is the term. All right, whatever that term is within the confines of the statute. Now, the rationale for doing a 30-year is, you heard from, on the developer's side, for stability.
Sir, this, please, there's no interaction. You've had your moments. Are you finished, sir? Giving the explanation?
Sure.
Wait, just my last question for you while you have the microphone. So would we have the ability, let's just say, we take their, what they're saying is true. Construction is high, interest rates are high, at this moment in time. That's not gonna be a permanent thing. Rates change, costs change, that's just a function of the market. What if we just said, let's give it five years?
Couldn't do five.
We couldn't do five. How about 10?
The minimum you would do, I think it's 11.
The issue is that you need to present the deal that's investable. The money has to be spent. So if the cost of construction goes down in three years, but the building's already built, you can't get a rebate for that because of the cost went down. If interest rates go down, it doesn't matter, because you've still financed at a certain rate. So while these developers are both have very large resources and are super successful, it doesn't mean that they're going to invest in deals that don't get a return for their shareholders that's marketable, or get a return that allows them to borrow sufficient money to get a return on their equity. That's an unfair request, and no one will take it. And if if these deals were done at conventional taxes, they would have insufficient returns to make the investment that they're being asked to make.
So just so I have a clear understanding, what is the shortest-term pilot that we can do?
We're not, I'm sorry, we are voting on a 30-year pilot.
Well, I'm asking, well, I know, I'm just asking for.
As a practical matter, a pilot's not very useful if it doesn't, if it can't be amortized over a period of time. You know, probably the lowest I've ever seen on a long-term pilot is 15, the longest is 30.
So like, why didn't we even try to get 15 years? It's like, all six are 30 years, the most favorable circumstances.
Again, I mean, you heard about months and months of negotiations that involved lots of considerations. The pilot and other considerations. And so, like, you can always pick apart one part of a negotiation and say, that should have been better. But that ignores the give and take of a long negotiation. And in this case, a 30-year pilot was decided on because of the other benefits that are that are being created by the various elements.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Michael Spail again. I would like to make a point.
I would like to make a point that, and I apologize, I don't remember his name, but the gentleman who just spoke wasn't involved in any, in any of the negotiations he just spoke about, as we all learned. He came here two weeks ago when all the negotiation was done, so he had zero involvement in any of that. And I wish you guys could have seen your faces from here when you found out that, no, it didn't have to be thirty years. Everybody was looking at each other, what, no, this, that, talking to the attorney, why not do what some people say or are asking for and take a breather, give it another week or two? You guys all obviously have questions, it's nearly midnight, and this is just being, it's being forced through. And I don't understand why there is such a rush on this. Another question I have, which is more related to the financial aspect, so I understand the payments are based upon revenue, right? Everybody knows these are very large corporations. My guess is that these buildings aren't gonna be their own business, they're gonna be part of the umbrella corporation. So it will be its own, its own company. So then, so then, who does the actual audit?
A third party auditor that I pay for.
Sir, could you please state your question?
I'm sorry, so my questions were, um, who does the audit? And then, when it comes to.
It was already discussed, the gentleman mentioned that they will do the audit. Continue.
Well, but do you understand why I'm asking that question? When the person, you know, who, their revenue determines what they pay, when you say they're the ones doing the audit, that's why I'm wanting to know.
It's an independent.
Who was the third party? Um, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking, but, okay, okay. But who chooses? So my questions are, one, who, who picks out, who, who decides who the CPA is that does this third port, you know, party audit? Because you wanna make sure we're getting paid what we're owed. The other thing is when they said, you know, which sounds fantastic and it's great, we're not gonna be in charge of garbage, we're not gonna be in charge of snow removal and everything. Well, anybody who runs a business knows, those are gonna all get deducted from their revenue, so we're gonna pay for it anyway. Right.
It doesn't get deducted.
It doesn't.
All right.
We're learning, well, see, this is the problem, we don't know. You're talking like we know, but we don't know. We, we're, we're all learning it right now, and I don't know if they really do know. I mean, they found out today, I heard someone today say, oh, there's new numbers, and somebody said, what? I don't have it. And they said, no, it was emailed to you today. So what they're voting on, they received today. So I understand, it's not your fault, you've, and I, I honestly, you did a great presentation, and if I was you, I would be extremely frustrated too, that they weren't given the information that they need to have the knowledge to actually properly vote, fully informed.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to get up and speak?
All right, seeing no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. DePiro, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
The floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading, any hearing held thereon now therefore be resolved, and said ordinance be passed, a final reading, and the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution for ordinance two thousand twenty-three, calling twenty-seven by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
No.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Order one, motion passes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three, calling twenty-eight. Ordinance of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills in the county of Morris, authorizing the execution of financial agreement with the township and Avalon Precipiny Two Campus Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as block two oh two, lot three point two, in accordance with the Long Term Tax Exemption Law, NJSA forty-eight, colon twenty dash one, et cetera. The notice for ordinance two thousand twenty-three, colon twenty-eight, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and introduced at the November ninth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting. Motion to accept, ordinance two thousand twenty-three, colon twenty-eight, be heard in their second and final reading by title only, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Public, public hearing, motion to open the public hearing for ordinance two thousand twenty-three, colon twenty-eight, made by myself.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only. Two, two campus.
On two campus.
Yes, this is two campus.
Before you come up to speak, you have five minutes, and if one of the representatives from the two campus would like to answer your questions, they will, or the council, they will. I ask you please to sit down after your five minutes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So, uh, I really have to get home to do my hair, because it's getting late.
Me too.
So, just, whether it's two or three campus, but any of the named, um, residential properties that are gonna be subject to pilot, I, I wanna try to state my, um, my case simply more, more for my benefit than for yours, so I can understand what the hell I'm saying. But, right now, we have properties that don't generate school age children, that are paying a certain amount of taxes, that in total, the school district gets about sixty-five percent of. With the pilot programs for re, for residential development, that goes away. So we're taking properties that don't produce school age children, we're stripping out a large portion of the taxes they're paying to the town, and, and ultimately to the school district. So the school district is now under the pilot, only eligible for taxes on, uh, the value of the land. So we're, we're increasing the cost of the school district. Again, I'll, I'll use forty-three students and a million dollars as just round numbers, but we've increased the cost of the school district of a million dollars. We've not provided another revenue source to the school district to make up for, for those students that increased enrollment. Does the council have any advice on how the school district can make up for that shortfall? We can raise taxes. If we go above two percent, uh, we have to go out for a public question. Uh, that's not usually very pretty. We can wait and do what Montville did, uh, and change all of their elected officials, including the mayor, and the school district can go out for a seventy million dollar referendum. Uh, I don't know if that passes next week. So, you, you all understand if you're a school board member or soon to be a school board member, uh, the concerns about adding, uh, students to the school district when there's no revenue source that accompanies those students. And that, that in fact is the issue. Uh, and I haven't heard how that's going to, um, be overcome. I've heard there can be just negotiations, um, but so far, nothing concrete. And if these discussions have been going on for as long as we've, you know, learned tonight they've been going on, I would have thought there would have been some negotiation with the school board, the fire district, et cetera. Now, um.
If those schoolchildren.
No, no, Michael, please, Mr. DePiro, Mr. Karifi, please, I'm sorry.
That's, it's, we're bald, that's the bald, that's the bald thing.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Please, finish the five minutes and then.
And, how much time do I have?
Two and a half minutes.
Thank you for it. Uh, so, you know, again, I, I've learned that the planning board has to, um, assess a property to determine if it's in need of redevelopment or blighted, whatever the term, you know, term is. Um, who, who points the planning board? I think it's the council and the mayor, right? So you have the entity who's in favor of pilots, and the exec, chief executive of the town is in favor of pilots, appointing, uh, appointing the entity that's going to ultimately make the decision on whether a property is gonna be pilot eligible. Um, I don't know, something a little odd with that. So Avalon Bay, great company, big company, right? It's been, it's been around for a long, long time. And I'm sorry, the fire guy left, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but there have been several fires at Avalon Bay Properties in New York and New Jersey over the last several years. And.
The gentleman.
The gentleman. The gentleman mentioned West Windsor. Um, so bear with me. So, in two thousand, two thousand and one, the majority of that property burned down, displaced five hundred residents and injured four firefighters. So I hope our town code officials are going to be monitoring the developments, so that we don't have any safety issues in Precipiny. Uh, I already think it's gonna tax our fire department, uh, District Six is my district, so I hope I don't have any emergency needs, uh, when they, when they're down at, you know, the Avalon Bay properties. So, there's a lot of concerns. I don't think you guys all know what you're, you're gonna be approving tonight, but that's neither here nor there. Um, I just asked you to reconsider.
Thirty seconds.
I, I do think the school board has to make cuts. It's gonna come back to the council and mayor. It's, it's why the genesis of those cuts had to be made. Okay, I don't wanna do that. I don't threaten. I like to have discussions. Um, I'll be on the school board again in January, I'd welcome them. But right now, I think you're, uh, you really are damaging the kids of this town. Thank you.
Yes, please do.
I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but since you took a swipe at me, I'm gonna respond a little that you don't know about, sir. I, I know, you didn't.
Okay.
Andy, let him speak, Andy.
Chaffo, he's going to be answering your question.
West Windsor, Englewood, Cleveland.
Mr. Chaffo, please.
Please, please, with the, with the comments, I mean, have some respect for the process.
Enough, enough for, oh, God.
Hope you run your meetings the same way, Andy.
Okay, Mr. Lebel, please answer it.
Absolutely. So, um, you know how those fires were started? And they're not all accurate. So the fire you referred to was not in two thousand and one, not at all. I'm trying to respond. Please let me do that.
Yeah, come on.
A tenant had a barbecue violating our rules on their balcony. You're not allowed barbecues on it. We had a shed, and they hit the barbecue in the shed, and they did it, took it to Burger and left, and it ignited. And it took down one of our twenty-five buildings. Uh, no one was injured, we replaced the building. Now, what, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I apologize. What Avalon Bay has done, because we have fires, is we are the only large multifamily company that goes beyond the code. I don't know if there's any fire officials, mayor behind me, I don't know all the people that you do here. But, we are allowed to build under NFPA thirteen R. The R is residential. That does not require us to put fire, uh, sprinkler systems, any interstitial spaces. We don't use NFPA thirteen R anymore, we only do thirteen. So we put sprinkler systems in all interstitial spaces, we use masonry firewalls, two things we're not required to do. It puts us at a competitive disadvantage financially. But Avalon Bay has decided that protect, to protect our residents, because we had some fires that we didn't cause, and no one was injured in these fires. There was one firefighter that hurt himself, he went to the hospital, was discharged, I know all the facts about this, what he's inscribing. No other multifamily developer in the state of New Jersey does what we do from a fire safety code. And where we did have a fire in Edgewater, of course, not our fault, we went to the Edgewater, and we built another project in Edgewater, since that fire. And the fire department, and I hope Precipiny Fire Department Mayor does this too, sits with us and works with us on every aspect, beyond the Uniform Construction Code requirements, we sit with them and develop a fire safety, uh, protocol that we employ throughout the entire state of New Jersey. That's what we do, because we suffered fires. And unfortunately, they do occur, we have ninety thousand apartment homes, three hundred communities, it happens sometimes. We try to do better next time.
Thank you.
So, so you know that we will do that with our fire marshal, and, because that's what we do. I mean, it's that simple.
Yep, understood, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
John Englishino on behalf of Avalon Bay, uh, in listening to Mr. Chaffo, I, I think there's, appears to me to be a fundamental misunderstanding, uh, from the school board about how pilots actually could provide a additional source of revenue for the school boards. I, I think this point is being totally missed. School boards are governed by the two percent cap. They, they can't raise revenue more than two percent per year without, as Mr. Chaffo said, they'd have to go out for referendum, there may be some special circumstances where you can seek some permission from the state, et cetera. But basically, the amount of revenue that they can generate through taxation is limited to two percent. If there's a pilot, and the municipality agrees to provide money for the schools, that's outside the cap. That is outside of the cap. So if you're concerned about schools, and the ability to raise money for schools, why in God's name would you be up here advocating against a very source of revenue, some of which could be yours? It just doesn't make any sense. I, I mean, now, by voting no, you foreclose the opportunity to even have the ability to help the schools. By voting yes, and to Mr. Hanley's point, creating more revenue, more money, then you have the ability to fix these problems. But by eliminating a source of revenue, some of which could go to the schools, then you are limiting the amount of revenues that the school can, can obtain, because you're hurting the funding for the schools by voting against a pilot, because you've limited your revenue to your two percent cap. Uh, leave it to everybody else to think whether that's a smart thing or not to do, but I, I think there's been a very fundamental misunderstanding on, on how pilots can benefit schools. I just wanted to make that point clear.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak, please?
Tim Barrios, Twenty-four Farmstead Drive. Before I get started, Madam President, I owe you an apology, I did not mean to bark, and whoever else I, uh, barked at here, I do apologize.
Accepted.
That's my, uh, Puerto Rican temper, getting the best of me. Um, I don't like to be threatened, and I'll just leave it at that. Um, pilots, yeah, there is a definite misunderstanding of pilots. And I really am too tired to go over this and over it, because it's been a long night, and I know that this is not gonna go, it's gonna be a four one against, which is fine. Mountville Township, again, as Mr. Chaffo said earlier, with a pilot program in place. Avalon Bay, beautiful, I have a nice picture of it on my phone. Seventy million dollar, uh, referendum coming on December twelfth. Okay? I can tell you why the referendum, and I'm gonna be told here, I don't know what I'm talking about, and I'm wrong, and I'm just a dumb dweeb who sits on the board. I got it. But the bottom line is, if you look at their published materials on their website, they tell you exactly why they're doing the referendum, which most likely will fail, but the referendum's going out there. So in either case, the taxpayer's going to pay the freight. That's the bottom line. Okay? And you are correct, that maybe the Board of Education doesn't have all the knowledge or vast wealth of knowledge, but our sources of information are like, for example, New Jersey school boards, who happen to publish a white paper explaining pilots and how it can affect schools. I'm sure nobody in this room reads the New Jersey school board's website or gets the information. Wait a minute, one person does. The other thing is, either way, taxpayers in this town will wind up paying the freight, whether it's twenty children, forty children, a twenty thousand dollars a head, nineteen thousand dollars a head, and, you know, we were talking about blights, you know, coming from Newark, I know a little bit about blighting. Um, it's interesting. We were talking about how we have these blighted areas, these, these areas where we have undevelopment. You know our school buildings, our fourteen facilities? We have some schools that are fifty years old? I have an excellent idea, let's blight the high school. We'll blight the high school, we'll tear it down, and we'll have Avalon Bay build us a new high school. Oh, we can't do that. Why? Because it doesn't make sense, they're not gonna make money out of the deal. Okay, come on, folks, let's get serious here. We are trying to educate children, we are trying to do the basic stuff of like reading and writing, and keeping them safe, and all those wonderful things, and feed them, and And besides, all these new additional children coming in from these developments, no matter who moves into our town, why would I, as a young couple, want to move into Parsippany, Troy Hills, if I'm thinking of having children? Ah, education, school systems. What makes town work? Education, school systems, not Avalon Bay developments. We all keep sitting there predicting the future about these homes. I know this because you're either at the beginning of your life where you're not going to have children, or you're at the end of your life where you're not going to have children. If I'm affluent and I'm in my 50s, as much as I love Parsippany, I ain't living in Parsippany in any type of development. Okay? And if we're so sure about that, then let's get the affluent people in back in Parsippany who are over 50. Okay? Most people who live in Parsippany that I know, in my little corner world, have been here a long time, and are hoping their kids pick up where they left off. So, why don't we hand them a big tax bill? My tax bill right now, I think it's like 14 grand a year. Guess what? Hasn't gone down in five years, folks. Haven't seen one decrease. Okay? Not one penny. My water bill gone up, and it's going up again. Okay? So, come on, let's get real here. We're not... We're all fighting for the same people, our taxpayers, our citizens of this town. We were all elected to hold these positions. So, instead of trying to bully everybody to get what we want, why don't we like work together? And if we can't work together, then just stay in your lane. And we'll stay in our lane, and we'll deal with it that way. Not... Doesn't make it very good for a working relationship, but I tell you right now, this is ridiculous. I mean, what I heard here tonight, it's like watching the Marx Brothers. It's like, everybody's learning stuff. Wait a minute, hold on a second. We can do 30 years? No, 11 years, 12 years, 15 years? Well, what are we talking about here? How long can this pilot be for? Well, why are we talking about 30 instead of 15? Or why are we talking about 11 instead of 15? I don't know who's on first. I don't know. Second base, whatever. Come on, guys!
Mr. Barrios, your time, Mr. Barrios.
Thank you.
Just want to let you know, you actually went two days there, Tuesday into Wednesday.
Bob Van Ezia, Parsippany. First, I want to note that some council members have expressed a dislike of pilots, but have the misconception that the courts are forcing the township's hand because of affordable housing. In fact, the governing body has no legal obligation to grant a pilot, so the threat of court action should never even enter the decision. There are many reasons why the council should vote against the two residential Campus Drive ordinances. The most important reason is that the people you represent, the taxpayers of Parsippany, seem to be unanimous in their disapproval of residential pilots. Large numbers of residents have attended the last three council meetings, being drawn out mostly because pilots were on the agenda. And many of them spoke out against pilots in no uncertain terms. A major objection expressed by the residents is that the school district receives no additional money under the pilot, but will have to pay to educate the new students coming from Campus Drive and possibly construct classroom space. Yet, under the terms of the pilot, the developer would not contribute one penny for these expenses. Ultimately, the cost of educating these new students must be absorbed by conventionally taxed properties, which includes every homeowner. From a financial standpoint, residential pilots are regarded as money-losing transactions that are not in the best interests of taxpayers. The purpose of the pilot, as I understand it, is to generate revenue from a property that is currently not generating any revenue. According to the Campus Drive pilot spreadsheet, Parsippany will receive a payment of about $1 million in year one. But the council is totally ignoring the expenditure side of the equation. In year one, the estimated fair share cost to provide municipal services is about $700,000. Educational costs for the Board of Education estimate of 164 students is about $3.5 million. So, it's going to cost Parsippany about $4 million, just so it can get $1 million in new revenue. Who does that?
The county.
It's not accomplishing the goal of gaining revenue, it's actually losing revenue. No entrepreneur would start a business, and no municipality would knowingly enter an agreement that is expected to run an annual deficit of $3 million. In my opinion, any council member who votes in favor of such a money-losing agreement is not fulfilling his or her primary obligation to represent the citizens of Parsippany. The Campus Drive pilot ordinances and any subsequent residential pilot ordinances should be rejected unanimously. Thank you.
If I may respond, Council President, local...
Please.
First of all, they'll be doing... They'll be supplying their own services, picking up their own garbage, powering their own roads, so that expense won't even exist. Mr. Liddell, Mont Liddell, said that, and obviously, nobody really heard what you said.
Kenneth Mallett, Southwood Drive. Two quick points. Number one, we've been talking about the cost of educating students. As I understand it, a number of these units, and a significant number, are going to be assisted living units for the developmentally disabled. If that's not correct, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir.
Please.
Please let him finish, and then you can come up.
Okay. My understanding was that a number of these are going to be assisted living students. Have we factored in the cost of developing... of educating those students? The only other point I would make is, when I saw the expressions on you guys' face, when you found out that these pilots could be 15 years, that told me all I needed to know as to why these should be tabled for further discussion.
If I... I'll let you go, because you're going to say the same thing I'm going to say.
So, this is not assisted living. Assisted living is a different type of housing that is deed restricted. It's generally for seniors that need... that are in a senior situation. You prefer to assisted living students. I think you're referring to special need students, or special ed students.
I'm sorry if I misspoke.
And as I explained before, but I'll say it again, in the supportive housing, there'll be no students, special need or non-special need, zero students. And that is one of the benefits that Mr. Englishino explained, and I explained. We are reducing the number of school-aged children as well, the supportive housing. They are for special needs adults. It is not... I'm sorry, I don't know your name, what this individual just described.
Thank you. The power of Congress.
If the... If the ratable chase hasn't paid off for Parsippany, and the greatest example is, we're using our water and sewer surplus for tax patches. So, the ratable chase didn't pay off for us, how can pilot deals possibly benefit the community? It's just, it's a losing proposition. And like Bob said, in the long term, it's the community that's going to lose, and the developer that's going to profit. Speaking of the sanitation, he says they're going to manage their own sanitation two days a week. So, I'd like to know, like, how much garbage? And I believe we share the same landfill, and right now, I think we're almost $2 million in our own fees because of tremendous amount of garbage. So, now, we have a pilot deal who's also going to be using the same space for our landfill. So, in the long term with that, our fees are going to increase. They're over... I think they're about $2 million now, maybe even more. And are they going to practice a strict discipline and source separation? Or are they going to be like everybody else? Everything goes wherever you feel like, and it's a minimum, which costs you even further at the landfill. You have to pay more for your tonnage for mixed garbage. So, I don't see it as a great thing, you know, adding more garbage to the landfill that we share. And in that 30-page report, the last pages, big headline, "New Jersey is in need of much improvement." And it gives examples of other states who do give pilot deals in under what circumstances. And if you look at them, like I said, especially, I don't see how these developers warrant it, and it's not... It's not going to benefit us.
Thank you, Mr. Homiak.
Nick, regardless of whether they got the pilot or not, it's going to create garbage. And the entire town gets their garbage picked up twice a week. So, it's just...
He's going to be competing for... He's going to be using our landfill.
It's not ours. It's not ours.
Okay, so I'm going to answer the one question they asked, which is somewhat relevant. We do separate. We not only separate, we have a state-of-the-art recycling center set up on all of our communities that people will either pick it up ourselves, in most cases. We bring a little truck that picks it up from the building to the separate indication. We separate all the garbage appropriate in accordance with whatever the municipal law is. We are responsible for keeping that separate at that point. I would suggest to you that we probably do a better job than general population does, because we maintain it. We have people dedicated for specifically separating that garbage. So, whatever their cost will be for that service that we're paying, we're going to minimize that cost, partly because we're paying for it, and we want to make sure it's minimized as much as we can.
Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and speak?
Hi, everyone. John Von Aiken, Elliott Road. So, you've heard from a lot of people who are very passionate about this town, love this town, think there's a lot of value in this town. Obviously, developers think there's a lot of value in this town too, because they're looking to, you know, put their properties here. Now, in my opinion, that value is worth more and doesn't require any pilot at all. You've heard opposite opinions, and I understand that. But the point I really want to get to is, you know, in a situation where so many people think that no pilot's required at all, you go through the contract, and we're taking a 10% rate on the annual gross revenue. That's the lowest the state requires... allows for these projects. On top of it, we're giving them the land tax credit. On top of that, we're making it the longest term that's available. So, what I'm getting at is, we've given them all the most generous terms possible. Maybe we should consider who we've hired to negotiate on our behalf, because we're giving away something that many of us don't think needs to be given away in the first place. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else can speak?
I have one quick question. First of all, talking about the pilot program, about the developments, and saying school-aged children, whatever, special needs. How are you defer... telling me what special needs are? Are they age-restricted? Special needs? What kind of special needs? Physically handicapped, mentally handicapped, mentally challenged, autism? There are a lot of special needs, and you're not defining that. And I'd like to know, are their parents going to be allowed to be there with a special needs child? Or is there age restriction on these special needs things? Because every child who has autism or has special needs, we educate to 21 years of age in our district. We can... Up to 21 years they can be in school. And there are many different types of special needs, so I'd like to know what you're talking about when you just say special needs.
Sure. There are no special needs children. It is only adults. They do not have children.
But they can.
Well, they are individual... They are... Let me... From what I've been told, from United Way, from ARC, and from JSST, so I'm very met with three supportive housing... I don't know if you know those organizations or not. They tell me that these are supportive housing units for special needs adults who are on... have a mental disability or physical disability. None of them, in their capacity for homes, are married. They are viewing this, and Mr. Englishino explained, these are, in this case, three-bedroom units, so there may be three adult individuals. There will be, in some cases, depending on who we hire to provide the service, they may be in the room, in the unit, excuse me, on a 24/7 basis. So, we've been told by the three organizations, we've already reached out, and starting in Princeton already, there will be... I'm not suggesting that if there's two adults that are cohabitating, I don't want to go down that road, because I'm embarrassed by it. But we've been told that there is no... There are no children contemplated. If a child was born, that person would have to relocate, because it's a three-bedroom with three adults. There's no place for a child to live. But we're envisioning, and we're just doing this for the first time in Princeton, as I said, it would only be adults, there would not be any special needs children, and that is the underserved population that we want to serve as best we can. That's the best I can answer you today.
Thank you.
So, it's in your capacity, or your physical capacity as well?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hey, it's Amy Canog again. So, I think it sounds like, you know, housing would be great. I love that there's affordable housing in there. I feel like if we table this and just like look at the negotiating a little more, I know you guys have worked really hard on this. But even for, again, the 42 projected students that have been stated will probably come from this facility, still aren't covered by the taxes that they'll pay in today's dollars. But there's inflation. 30 years, there's inflation. How are we going to cover that without raising taxes or taking away from other municipal benefits? Right? Like, how are we going to cover that? So, maybe we could go to the negotiating table and just say, hey, why don't per kid or whatever, you pay this amount, or we up the basic tax up to a million instead of the $277,000 allocated for the school district?
Sir? Sir?
No, that's from one of the... So, if you break it up, I think it's from one of the Campus Drive. It's on the Table 1. And it's only under School District, and that's the 277, I think. If it is, Palmer, I apologize, but it's in the 200s, so, is the general number. So, I'm not against it. I think that there's room for negotiation, we can make it work. I just feel like we're rushing it, we're not looking at it. Clearly, the public hasn't had a chance to really digest this, so it doesn't look good for anybody, I think, anywhere. Why don't we just look at it some more, discuss it a little more? Why don't we get bids? Like, I would never, like, just hire a contractor who just came and said, hey, you know, give me a little bit of a discount, and I'll fix your house. You know, I wouldn't do that. So, why don't we just do this like we're running our own homes, and make sure it's a good deal? Thank you.
Anyone else like to get up and speak?
See no one?
We have had a number of people present a comment that government acts as if it's an incremental cost good, and it doesn't. There's a 0% chance that this project will cost it down $4 million. You are already providing municipal service to this property, as you have been for, you know, decades. You have the same road miles, and you are performing the same duties, and changing from one use to another has basically no impact on your municipal cost. When Modera opened up, it didn't add $4 million to your budget, right? It's whether five or... You know, when you add a few hundred people to a municipality, that is not the way municipal government works. The basic infrastructure, the fire and safety that it takes is based on road miles, and you're already patrolling them. The tax collector is still going to be sitting there collecting the taxes, the clerk's still going to be the clerk, general counsel's still going to be the general counsel. And it is not... Each person is not worth a certain amount of cost to a municipality. That's not the way government operates. And frankly, it's not the way schools operate either. If you go into the $20,000 that has been quoted probably 40 or 50 times tonight, is the whole cost of running the school system. Tons of that cost is administrative. If you look down below that number, you're also given the cost of classroom instruction, which is $10,000. And moving a child or two up and down doesn't change that either. So, it shouldn't be $20,000 a child, and it's definitely not $4 million for these developments to come into this town. It's untrue. It hasn't happened anywhere else, and it hasn't happened here.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing, Mike. You know, you heard that, you know, the gentleman left. Before I can respond to him, you know, the Marx Brothers are up here and stuff like that. That's the kind of stuff that's just so rude. But that's beside the point. He's not here. I'll, you know, I'll speak with him offline with regards to that. But as our buildings go more vacant, and, you know, this ain't a threat. Everyone says it's a threat. No one's threatening. Just give me the statistics. What happens? Your sewer fees are going to go up. Your water fees are going to go up. Why? Because you're not collecting that water from those developments and from those commercial properties. So, you see how the burden, that's only shift tax-wise, it shifts on user fees as well. Okay? And sit here and think that this economy's going to turn around in two weeks. It's not going to. And I can assure you, just knowing the figures and knowing this budget as well as I do, you heard the gentleman say, one way or the other, someone's going to pay. So, I guess they want municipal government to pay and lose tax money, but we can't do that. Why? We have the police. You know, when I came back into town here, we had 81 parole police officers. And you've heard one man alluded to tonight that our police department is not doing anything. Incorrect. We are. We follow the Attorney General guidelines, but we're down. There's no doubt about it, we're down, and we have to build that back up. We didn't have a traffic division. You know, I had one person in it when I got back. One person. Supposed to have four. Our detective division was depleted. Why? Because patrol comes first. So if you sit here and say, we don't need pilots, and these companies leave, and everybody leaves, guess what? We can't police the town. We can't, because we're not gaining, generating any revenue. And then when your water rates go up, because the gentleman said, my water rates want to, I mean, my fee want to up, well, the more vacant office spaces you get, and they're a big user of water and sewer fees, it's going to be shifted and the burden's going to go to the taxpayers, like we've been saying. We all made our opinions here today, our thoughts. Um, like, like, I, I respect Mr. Mucella, uh, Councilman. If he wants to vote no, he has, that's fine. Okay? And then the Councilman, I, whether, how, whether they want to vote. But I'm, I'm not going to, you know, I get to the, you know, this is corruption at its best. Listen, there's no corruption up here. Every time I hear that, I want to grab the person and say, listen, let's get in my car the next morning and we'll go down to the prosecutor's office. You tell them what kind of corruption it is and you can talk to the prosecutor all you want. That's a term that's used when you, you can't even win the argument. Everyone's corrupt when you can't win the argument. Well, that's wrong. Nobody appears corrupt. Not one person appears corrupt. So be careful how you choose your words. And I mean that, because that's not right. Now, we have some members that came up tonight I respect very much. Mr. Clark, and you come up all the time in a respectful manner, always. Mr. Heller, in a respectful manner. But some individuals want to come and attack, or they want to say this, they want to call you corrupt. There's no room for that up here, there just isn't. Nobody's corrupt. Individuals that I ran against aren't corrupt. That ran against me. It, it, it doesn't, you, you can't use that term so lightly and think I'm, you know, you're going, you're going to get away with it, because you're not going to get away with it. I'm not going to let you get away with it, because that's wrong. For every elected official up here to use that word. So with that being said, uh, thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else come forward, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mucella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above motion, excuse me, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a he, hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:28, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Mucella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
No.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Right.
Ordinance 2023:29, order to the township of Suston Troy Hills and county of Morris, authorizing the execution of financial agreement with the township and Avalon Parsippany Three Campus Urban Renewal LLC granting a tax exemption with respect to that certain property identified as Block 202, Lot 312, in accordance with the Long-Term Tax Exemption Law, NJSA 40A:20-1 at ETSQ. The Notice of Ordinance 2023:29 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the township of Suston Troy Hills on November 16, 2023, and ordinance at November 9, 2023, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2023:29, be heard on the second and final reading by title only, by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearing, motion to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023:29 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public, uh, on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak.
I'm just kidding.
Bob's not.
All right, this will be short. I just want to disagree with.
Thirty seconds, Bob.
Bob's an headsier. I just want to disagree with the, um, cost estimate that Mr. Handley was making. Um, you know, saying that, well, it doesn't cost that much because you already have the infrastructure and so, and so on and so forth. Um, I, I, you know, I pay my taxes, I don't have any kids going to the school, but yet I have, I pay a fair share. And my fair share is 63% of whatever it is I pay. Once a thousand people move into this town, I expect them to pay their fair share. So if my fair share, you know, if a student costs $21,000, then that's what they should pay too. Even though they don't have, you know, that many kids in school. And the same thing with municipal services. I don't, you know, not everybody uses the same amount of municipal services, but you pay the same, you know, it's, it's pooled. And if they move in, a thousand people, they should pay their fair share of the municipal taxes, which is ordinarily calculated as 27% of, of whatever the, uh, you know, the, the regular assessment is. And that comes to $700,000. And that's the amount they should, that, that's their fair share. You add up their fair shares, and again, I'm pointing out, this is a money-losing proposition. You're not achieving your goal. You're losing money. You've fallen further behind.
Short, I agree with everything Bob just said. And speaking of, uh, audits, audits can be arranged how you want them. We have the gentleman, Mr. Forty-Five, right now in New York, who's undergoing scrutiny in the courts for cheating on his, uh, real estate assessments and reports. And don't think it can't happen. And like I said, in the thirty-page report, they do use the word corruption. It wasn't used here tonight. What was used tonight, the air of corruption, which is something different. And here, here's one, uh, thing that enters my head. Republican Party, Republican Party, could be any party, same party. He's going to take the money that he's going to profit, and he's going to give it to the, his party that supports real estate and pilot deals to run his candidate. So he'll take that money that he'll profit with, and he gives it to the best, uh, candidate money can buy. And there's a book about it, it's called The Best Democracy Money Can Buy. And it's all about the corrupting element that money has. And it has been spoken about here. And in the past, that word was even used in a local newspaper. And to think that it doesn't exist, that human nature, that we're all angels, we all care about each other, is just wrong. And like I said, the pilot deal is just going to take us down even further. It's short-term, and this came on too quick. And, and it's, it's the ultimate in short-term, uh, thinking and, uh, uh, fast track that we're witnessing right now with these pilot deals.
Okay, seeing no one?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Miss, uh, Mr. Mucella, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and hearing held hereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2023:29 by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
No.
Uh, Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Non-consent, non-consent agenda. Resolution Arch 2023-179, authorizing the appointment of six new police officers.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mr. Karifi, roll call Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani. Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can we also, Jamie, can we get a, a crime report?
Sure.
Um, at this point, you just review the consent agenda, and we're on approval on payroll.
Approval of payroll bills. The CFO, Leonard Ho, recommends authorization for payment, authorized payment for the December 8, 2023, regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at $1,650,000.
Excuse me, we're still going.
Payment of bills for voucher list.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Still going.
Still going. Payment of bills for voucher list 12-123 through 12-323 is $3,034,0663.35. Motion to approve the authorization for payment by myself. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call Mr. Muse, uh, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Mr. Mucella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.